That, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
I guess before I vote, I'll have to just say this as well. Whenever any, any member needs to remove themselves for whatever reason, I mean, we're not babies here, we're adults, you do address the council president to let the council president know that you need to step out. People can get ill, anything can happen. So with that said, you know, my apologies for not being here, but I did address council president on the reason why I had to leave. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, before you proceed, council president, is there any way that this?
Sofia is gonna have it.
This can be removed, the flag, council president?
We're gonna have it that now.
I can't see, can, can the flag be removed?
We're taking care of it now.
Oh, the flag?
My vote is yes to close, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
And to confirm, Councilwoman Davila did text her reasoning for leaving early, but I agree with Councilwoman Cotton, that when we're set in a meeting, there is a quorum, and we have to make sure that we stay. Five is the number to ensure that we close out our meeting. We take care of a lot of business in the city, and it's just unfortunate that we can't close our meetings because we don't have five individuals sitting here. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Well, I wasn't here last meeting, but the only thing I'm gonna say, and I repeatedly, I repeat it often, we have to carry ourselves in a professional manner here, and I don't know if it has to do with the COVID and doing this virtually, but I think we gotta go back to the way the council used to carry ourselves as a body before the COVID. That's all I have to say. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is seven in favor, two absent. The regular meeting of Tuesday, April 27, 2021, is now adjourned. Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome, sir.
Madam Clerk, normally we do the payment of bills.
Yes, sir.
I wanna take, I wanna make a recommendation. Items 20 to 37, those seem to be, you know, items that are usual within, you know, on a yearly basis. They're, they're, you know, contracts from the police department and grants. If we could put those on consent.
Are you saying 20 through 27?
Yes, on consent.
For the police department.
Council president?
Yes.
Council president, all of these items were in, in committee, correct, and discussed? So I'm in agreement with you, these are yearly?
And, and that's a good question. I'm glad you asked that question, because I was gonna address that today. Normally, the process is that before something get, although the law allows for a council member to put something on the agenda, the process is, we all agree on a, on a process as a council body, that he needs to go through committee. There are certain times that we might put something because there's an urgency of time, and we might put it on, on, you know, for discussion on the floor. But the process is to put it on committee. Lately, we've gotten away from that. So just wanna make that recommendation. But my assumption, Councilwoman Davila, is that yes, all of this went through committee. Would you say so, Councilwoman Cotton? 20 to 27. All the police items on the agenda.
All the police items.
You said what nobody hear you?
20 to 27.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I'm chair of Public Safety.
So Council Kalik, yes, they've been through committee. If you don't have an issue, we could put those on consent.
Yeah, they could go on consent.
Thank you.
I do have that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director.
27, yes, sir. Is there anything else?
We'll go there now. We're gonna take the bills list right now, Madam Clerk.
Okay, sure.
We have a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for a payment of bills in the amount of $5,703,529.55. So move.
Discussion.
Councilwoman Mendez?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, is there a second?
Second by Councilwoman Abdalizis.
Yes, second by Councilwoman Abdalizis.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So discussion, Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Council President. On payment of bill, I know we have COVID payment, we have another payment of bill on the side. On page two of the, two or three, I see a for COVID-19 payment in a total of $4,734 on the regular payment of bill. What's the answer to that?
What page? Two of three, two of three, CFO.
Two of three?
Page. What page? Page two of three. Page two of three.
That's lunch for the vaccine people that are working.
So that should not be on the, on the payment, on the COVID payment, that have to be on the regular payment of bill?
Correct.
One more question, Council President.
So there are no more questions or comments, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, President, sorry. Roll call for payment of bills in the amount of $5,703,529.55. Councilwoman Abdalizis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
No.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Included in this payment of bills is $4 million, almost $5 million of this payment of bills is for payroll to our city employees. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. President?
Vote is no.
The vote is five in favor, two against, two absent. Payment of bills in the amount of $5,703,529.55 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to make a motion for the COVID payment of bills in $33,770.93.
Do we have a second? Moved by Councilwoman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Abdalizis. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call for payment of bills in the amount of $33,770.93, Councilwoman Abdalizis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila? You said pass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila? Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Payment of bills for COVID-19 in the amount of $33,770.93 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we have a presentation from the, on behalf of the administration for the analysis requested for the sewer fees.
Council President? Good evening and welcome back.
Welcome, Mayor.
First, would like to start by thanking the members of the municipal council who unanimously, well, all of them, members of the municipal council who approved the appointment of our community development director, Barbara McLennan, who's definitely earned that opportunity to continue to serve in that capacity. Also wanna thank the members of the municipal council who voted to approve all the bond ordinances. Thank you for prioritizing parks. Thank you for prioritizing our main library on Broadway. Thank you for prioritizing resurfacing roads, repairing sewers, and prioritizing a common agenda. See, we can find common ground, contrary to what people may think. And so that is a pivot point. Hopefully, we can find common ground on this matter. We promised that we would have a presentation for you, and there was a review that was done by Andy Cricken from Moonshot Missions. Thank you, Andy, for joining us. And it is an alternative analysis, and it's a thorough review of what we promised we'd give to you. And we ask that you approached us with an open mind, and know that it's a question of equity and equality. Equality is everyone's treated the same. For his equity, it's all a matter of fairness. So having said that, I'm gonna turn it over to Andy Cricken, and he can proceed with the presentation. Welcome to Patterson, Andy. Thank you. Can we get Andy a microphone, please? Oh, he does, okay.
I'll try to speak loud, too. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Council President, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Cotton. It's you again, Councilwoman Cotton, and I, we're planning together, we worked on the water last year.
Yes.
Good to see you again.
That's true.
And, anyway, thanks very much. I'm here to have a presentation regarding analysis of Patterson's alternative sewer rates. My background is in wastewater. I worked in Camden, Camden, Jersey, as the executive director, chief engineer of the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority for 35 years. And Camden County Utilities Authority is the Camden, which is one of the Passaic Valley Sewer Corporation. During my time as first deputy director, then executive director, I went through 24 different rate hearings. Some of them were issues that our city has its own issues.
One second, Council President. I'm getting texts from the community that they can't hear him.
You have to, you have to speak into the mic. I don't think the mic is working. Can you, can you, maybe, yes, you're gonna have to go. No, you're gonna have to use the microphone behind you.
Here we go.
It's working, it's working.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Much better. Thank you. Should I start over? I mean, real quick, I'll just say, again, thanks, Mayor, Council President, Councilwomen, and Councilwomen. My, my background prior to becoming a consultant was working for 35 years at the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, which is a regional wastewater utility analogous to Passaic Valley Sewer Corporation. And in my time as deputy director, and also then executive director, I went through 24 different rate hearings. So I'm very familiar with, with rates for sewer, you know, usage. And also served on the board of the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, the National Association for Wastewater Utilities like Passaic Valley and Camden County MUA, and so have that familiarity as well. I also serve as the chair of the Water Committee for the New Jersey Environmental Justice Advisory Council. So environmental justice is something that's very important to me. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, in general, Patterson's situation, as I understand it, is that you have, first of all, in order to be self-liquidating, you needed to, you know, come up with $4.7 million of additional revenues. You need to grow your revenue pie in order to become self-liquidating and be able to pay for your costs. And then you wanted to divide that pie up as equitably as possible, as fairly as possible. So that was the challenge. When I was in Camden, we also, you know, sought to do the same thing. It's, it's a common practice for any water or sewer utilities. You, you want to, you know, optimize the revenue pie, make it as, as small as possible so that everybody benefits, and then divide the pie up as fairly as possible. That is really, you know, common standard practice in the water and wastewater utility world. As I said, I, I served as deputy and then executive director for a wastewater utility for, you know, over 30 years. And that is a standard practice in the, in the industry. In Camden, one of the things that we did is we sought to reduce our revenue pie so significantly that we were able to achieve an equity for Camden residents and actually cut their rate. And the reason we were able to do that is because they hosted the wastewater treatment plant the way Newark hosts the Passaic Valley plant, and so they got, Camden got to host community benefit. But the reason that nobody complained about it, I mean, a few people paid for the suburbs, not many, even though Camden's rates were cut by 40%, is because we were able to reduce the rates for everybody by shrinking the revenue pie, by being more cost efficient, by getting funding. And so the first thing I'm gonna talk about is how to reduce the pie. Now, I will say that the other thing that helped me is when I had maybe 10 complaints from suburban communities, why is Camden getting this, this benefit and others are not, I had equity on my side because Camden was hosting the plant. And so my, my advice in general, as a, as a former utility manager for many years, is to look for opportunities to reduce your revenue requirements as much as possible, and then seek a fair and equitable way of dividing the pie. When you do that, you know, no one, no one wants to pay a rate, but at least you have equity and fairness on your side. And you can, you can support what you're doing because what you're doing is fair and equitable. So, so here, first, I mean, we'll talk about dividing the pie, but also I just wanna make some, quick, take a few minutes just to talk about how Patterson has the opportunity to shrink the pie, because if you can reduce your overall costs and your overall revenue requirements, you can therefore, you know, reduce rates, or, or reduce rates or at least reduce the amount of rate increases for every citizen, and then divide the pie. So the first thing is, and I think there's a consensus, that the volumetric billing for commercial, industrial, and, you know, nonprofit should remain the same based on, on a volume basis. The discussion here, from equity standpoint, is what to do with residential. So, next, please. Second is to treat your tributary customers, I think it's 19,000 gallons or so from external cities. You, you should treat them the same as your residential and just, you know, bill them in the same manner. Next, please. Then, the other thing that I strongly recommend is to implement operational efficiencies. Are there ways to reduce your non-revenue water? Is there, are there ways to reduce the cost of your sewer system and your drinking water system? I, I mean, when I was working at the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, in the span of three years, we were able to reduce our operating cost by 25% through optimizing performance, you know, capital performance, and getting funding from the, the New Jersey I-Bank, which I know Patterson has used, low-cost loans that are able, enable you to reduce your operating cost, but then the debt service you pay back is at a much lower rate. And so when I started as the deputy director in Camden in 1996, the rate was $337 per household per, per year. And when I left in 2020, last year, it was $352. So it only went up 4% total in 24 years through optimizing efficiency. So it's really critical that you can look for opportunities to reduce the cost of your own system, and also look, seek, you know, and hope that Passaic Valley Sewer Corporation, which would also look for efficiencies itself, so it could reduce it, the share of its, its cost to Patterson. Next slide? The other thing is, as I mentioned, applying for water infrastructure funding. Now, the I-Bank has the program where you can get, you know, 30-year loan for less than 1%. So if you, for example, were to upgrade pumping stations so that you lowered your electricity costs by more than the annual debt service of the, of the replacement, you could actually have more cash in hand, because your annual loan payment, your mortgage on, on that improvement would be less than the operational savings. More importantly, you probably have all heard that President Biden, Senator Booker, and others are putting forth a water infrastructure bill. We expect to have a significant amount of federal funds and state funds for, for new water infrastructure that will be grants. So therefore, you don't even have to pay the loan back. So, so it's really critical that Patterson poise itself to look for this funding, to reduce your operational cost, so that the total amount of revenue that you need for your water and sewer system can be reduced, so that everybody have a smaller pie to be divided up. Next, please. The other thing, number six, is to reduce your long-term control plan requirements. The mayor had asked me to look at Patterson's long-term CSO control plan, and I also looked at Jersey Cities and Bayonne's and Newark's, and it appears that there's an opportunity to reduce the cost of that plan by, you know, tens of millions of dollars, which would reduce Patterson's future requirements for capital needs. So, you know, keep your eye on the ball with that, and I'll, I'll be happy to work with the city to help them achieve that. As I mentioned, I, I serve on the New Jersey Environmental Justice Advisory Council, and Patterson is considered to be an environmental justice community, so that is part of my, my role as part of the E-JAC. The next thing I would recommend very strongly is that you increase the sewer connection fee. You have a hookup fee for new connections. And, and again, I worked for the Camden County MUA for over 30 years. The sewer connection fee is, it has to be calculated on the basis of state statute. In other words, you either charge the prescribed fee or nothing. You can't decide what your fee will be. There's no op, there's only two options. The, the amount that your, that the statute requires or nothing. And from what my quick look at it, it appears that you're undercharging your connection fee, your connection, your hookup fee for more hookup. What is the current fee? With the statute, the statute doesn't say what the fee will be. The statute tells, gives you a formula, how to calculate it. For each city is different. So, and the way it's, the formula, the formula is very, is very straightforward. Basically, is the amount of debt service that the, the residents of Patterson have paid over time divided by the number of users. So the idea is, the principle behind it is that if you're a new person coming into Patterson, and you take advantage of the sewer system that everyone's been paying for, for all these years, you know, the sewer bill has two components, the, the operating costs, you know, and also pay, payment of the debt service on the capital. So, so new, new people are getting the benefit of the sewer system that all the previous residents have paid. This is true for any city, any community across the country. So the idea of a connection fee is to catch people, the new, the new customer up, and they pay a portion of the debt service that the previous owners, the previous residents have paid over time. And there's a formula that has to be calculated.
I, I understand the concept, but, but it's also, I don't agree 100% because it's like, it's like saying to, to a new developer, let's say I wanna build a house.
Right.
You're gonna start charging me additional tax because the roads were paved 10 years ago?
It's a, it's a one-time payment.
I understand, but, but, but the debt service is already included in the bill also, right? The overall expense of the utility?
Debt service moving forward, not the past.
Understood, understood. But the situation that we have right now before us is that the administration could not basically shift all the debt service that was associated with the sewer, only a portion of it. Not all of it was, was put into the utility, is basically what I'm saying. So we have all debt service from previous sewer improvements that were not shifted to the utility.
Remain with the city proper?
Yes, remain, yes, remain with the tax base.
Got it.
So I just wanna point that out to you. That's what we were told by the administration.
I believe we, I believe we shifted most of it.
No, we were told, and, and we had other, in finance, we had this conversation before you took, before you took the CFO position, Javier. We were told by the previous CFO that there were some debt service associated with sewer improvements that were not moved.
We shifted.
And, and you, and you were there, Madam BA?
Yeah, Council President, I don't think it was debt service that wasn't shifted. It was some indirect costs were not shifted. She, we did the primary cost, the direct cost, and the debt service were all included.
We, we're gonna leave it at that, but the conversation that we had for over two years was that not all the debt service from the previous years was shifted. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Council.
Let me ask you one more question before you proceed.
Yes.
Do Passaic Valley Sewer Commission charge a connection fee to developers?
They do.
So, can you explain that to, to us? Because we're gonna charge one, and they're gonna charge the other.
Oh, that's easy to explain.
Yes, please, please.
Because there's, there's, okay, so if you're building a home in Patterson, or in Camden where I used to work, so let's say, for example, if you build a home in Patterson. So the person flushes the toilet or uses the shower, and then the sewage goes through Patterson's sewer system, which has a debt service associated with it, and then it goes to the Passaic Valley Sewer Treatment Plant, which also has a debt service associated with it. So Passaic Valley can only calculate the connection fee, just like Camden County MUA used to, based on the debt service that it charged for its capital improvements, the sewage treatment plant, and the collection, so, so basically Patterson charges for the debt service of its system, PBSC for its system. That's why, that's why, and same with Camden, same with Milsons County and Perth Amboy, it's the same formula. So independent of how much debt service was transferred over, the point is?
Will you, will you let you continue? You know, I just had that question. I wanted to jump in, that way I don't have to ask the question later.
Thank you.
But you could, you could continue. Let's, let's allow him to.
Yeah, the thing is, Council President, with all your respect, you know, you asked a question regarding the charge of the, of the meter, right, correct? That's the one that you asked.
The connection, connecting to.
Connecting, yes, correct.
New connection.
And, 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 and he jumped from Camden, from another city. Let's speak about Patterson, okay? And this is what I have noticed, and this is the concern of some of my constituents that comes in, especially those that are, have multi-level dwelling, multi-dwelling properties here. They have, they have pay for a new connection plus a new meter. It costs them $3,000, $4,000, whatever it costs them, okay? And their concern is that they paying monthly a meter charge. It's like renting the meter.
Councilman?
To them.
If you don't mind, could we write down all the questions that we have? And then, and then we ask the question, please?
Yeah, no, what happened is I'm, I'm following the leader, so you're the president, you're interrupting.
But I, I wanted to jump in.
Okay.
Let's just leave, because now you have, now you have, it's not just you. You have other council members now that wanna jump in also and entertain this. This could turn to a half an hour conversation. Please proceed.
Thank you, Council President. So, so my, my point is that independent of how much debt service has been transferred over, whatever that number is, that's how you calculate the, the connection fee for new customers. People that don't live in Patterson now, but wanna move in, or a new commercial, a new store, there's a hookup fee, and that would add additional revenue to Patterson, to shrink your pie, the total amount of revenue that you have to, to charge to your residential customers by getting more revenue in from this other, this other source, your connection fee. Next, please. The other thing is, is the stormwater fee, and I just wanna briefly describe this. Up until 2019, New Jersey cities were not allowed to charge a stormwater fee. But if you, if you live in a combined sewer community like Patterson, you have to understand that about 35 to 40% of the sewage that's generated in Patterson over an average year comes from impervious surface, because basically the, the rain hits the, the parking lot or the, or the driveway or the, or the road, it can't, goes into the combined sewer, and then is mixed with sewage, and when you mix a gallon of sewage with a gallon of rainwater, you have two gallons of sewage. So that sewage has to be pumped, it's same, the same electric cost to pump it, the same treatment once it gets to the sewage treatment plant. So basically, about 40% of your annual sewage generated comes from these impervious surfaces. But nobody's paying for that. But if nobody pays for it, then everyone pays for it. So Mr. Jones and Mrs. Smith, whether you live in a single-family home or a multifamily home, they're paying for the parking lots and the, of, of, you know, of supermarkets or parking garages. So they're paying for that sewage that's generated from impervious surface, because nobody's paying for it. So therefore, everyone's paying for it. And that's most unjust to low-income people when, when rates go up. And so if you were to charge a connection fee, oh, sorry, a stormwater fee based on impervious surface for just large areas, not, doesn't have to be for every driveway or, or, but for large parking areas, you would generate about 30 to 40% more revenue than you're currently earning right now, which means you could shrink the total amount of revenue you need for the rest of your bills, and for the rest of your customers, I should say. So, so that was what I'm saying. For example, in Camden, when I did work there, we were able to cut the rate for some people, but nobody complained, because we were able to cut the rate for everybody by shrinking the overall pie. And so increasing your connection fee in order to, you know, for new customers coming in would increase your revenue, but also adding an impervious surface fee for large areas, not single-family homes, not driveways, but parking lots, you know, that generate about 30 to 40% of your sewage costs, you could reduce your revenue requirements for everybody else. Next slide, please. So basically, that is how you could shrink your pie. Those are some examples, there are others, but those are the key ways. Next, please. There, there, okay, so now, we're talking about dividing the pie. The whole conversation so far is how to shrink your overall revenue pie. You do have options, just as every city does, and there are many that have taken advantage of such, such options. But now, how to divide that pie fairly? One way is flat rates, the other way is consumption rates based on volume, and then there are the hybrid rates, and you can just scroll down if you would. So, just keep going if you would, please. So, thank you. So basically, the flat rate is what you're, is what you used to have. You went to, you know, you hired Patterson, hired Raftellus a couple of years ago to look at, you know, a more equitable way to, well, first of all, how to deal with this $4.7 million shortfall that you had to make up, that you had to increase your revenue pie. And then because of that, the question was how to divide it fairly. So the question is, was, should it, would it be based on volume, based on flat, or some combination, some, you know, mixed rate or hybrid approach? I will say, and I know there are differing opinions of this, I have no skin in the game, honestly. I'm, as I say, I used to work in a wastewater utility for many years. It is more fair and more equitable to charge on the basis of usage. If you go to a pizzeria, and one person buys one slice, and another person buys three slices, the person who buys the three slices pays three times as much, because they, or if you go to a grocery store and you, you buy 10 packages or something, or 100, you're gonna pay per package. And so, you know, most, I mean, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the American Water Works Association have all said that it is fair to pay for what you use, that there's no way around that. But with that said, you know, you still have the option to choose something different than a volumetric rate. I mean, so flat rates, next slide, please. You know, flat rates are, they say unfair, and volumetric rates are fair. But you could also choose, please keep going. Thanks, that's good. So, oh, oh, could you back up? I'm sorry, I went too far. There, that's perfect. So to the, in the, in the right, the, the left corner there, the northwest corner, I guess, that's the flat rate, that if you, if you went to a flat, that's what would be charged. Over to the right is the current rate that Raftellus recommended. And, you know, down where the arrow is pointing is, is a compromise between the current rate, the Raftellus rate schedule, the, the flat rate, which has been suggested by some on the council, and the arrow is pointing to a compromise. And the reason I, I suggest that is because, you know, again, you have a certain amount of revenue you have to collect. If you can shrink that amount of revenue through some of the things I already spoke about, like a connection fee, a right-sizeing the connection fee, or charging an impervious surface fee, then you can reduce the amount of revenue you need total. But until you do that, if you, if you lower the rates for some people, you will raise the rates for others. You need to. the rates for others, you need a fixed amount of money. And so, so in some cases, though, you know, someone gets their rate reduced, that they're winners, if they, if they, if their rates go up, they're obviously unhappy, you can't please everyone, what is a fair approach? I mean, I think the fairest approach truly is a volumetric rate for people paying for what they use. It also encourages water consumption, you know, conservation, which is a good thing as well. But I know there's a lot of opposition to that, and rates have gone up quite a bit for some users, like Councilman Vella's mentioned. So perhaps a compromise between the flat rate, which is really not fair to people who live by themselves, for example, like a person who lives by themselves, should they really pay as much as a person who, a family of 10? Probably not. So a hybrid approach is what is recommended here, somewhere which is not as, as extreme as the volumetric rate, but certainly much more fair than the flat rate. Next slide, please. So here is, here is a chart for what the one-family home would look like, there's, you can see, thanks, the current rate is 224, the flat rate would be 358, and the hybrid in between would be about 275, so people would pay, so one-family homes, they would go up by more than the Raftellus approach or current bill, which is 224, but not by as much as the 358, so that is a compromise. I mean, I do think for as many people in the multifamily homes who would see their rates go down if you went back to flat, you'd have many people who live by themselves, one-family homes, who would say, why are my rates now going up from 224 to 358? You can't please everyone, the only way to please everyone is to reduce your, is to get more revenue and be able to lower the rates for everybody, you need to do things that'll take some time before you can do that. So right now, if you raise the rates for some people, or, I mean, lower the rates for some people, you'll have to raise the rates for others. So people who live by, in a one-family home are bound to not think it's fair that their rates would go up from 224 to 358. But one way to achieve some equity for the multifamily homes is this hybrid-tiered approach that is recommended here, which their rate would only go from 224 to 275, and the multifamily homes would not, would go down, but not by as much as they would under the flat rate. Could you go to the?
Councilwoman Davila.
Answer, currently, we're at the flat?
You're at the, the current billing, 224.
I'm sorry, I'm looking, you know what it is, these?
Yeah, the plastic.
This is bad, no, 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 where it is, I can't see.
So, so the current, for a one-family home, I'm gonna go to Molly's family home in a second, but for the one-family home, the current billing is 224. Right, currently, the person, the single-family home pays 224, if you go to the flat rate, that 224 will go up to 358, which is like a 70% increase.
Yeah, please, don't I attack my council president, Davila, please? You got everybody all over you.
You can continue, Andy, I think she just.
Okay, thank you. So currently, for a single-family home, it's. Right, thanks. So it varies, obviously, as much as by gallon, as you have the CCF, is the volumetric usage, that's all the way to the left. But basically, so if you have a, let's say, start, the starting point would be 224 for the current billing, if you use 25 CCS, then it would, then it would go up to 277, the flat rate would have it go up to 358. So, so the hybrid tier is in between, 306, so at least you're getting some, some sense of equity that a person uses less flow, either through their own, you know, conservation measures, or because less people live there, they would pay less. You still need to, to gain more revenue, but at least it wouldn't be as much as the flat rate of 358.
Council President? Council President, what's, what's the $300 meter on the right side? Is that a fee that everyone pays?
The Raftellus meter.
To the far right.
So that's a different scenario that we're proposing, that the current, the current proposal is 224 for the flat rate, so that would be 250 for a meter size, 275 for a meter size, and 300 for a meter size.
Wait up, wait up, wait up, wait up, all right.
So the three on the right.
So you have four options for us.
Five.
So we have the current billing that they're getting billed right now.
It's 224 for a flat meter size plus volume.
Say it again, I can't hear you.
224 for a flat meter size plus volume, that's currently right now.
So right now, if I own a one-family home, it, my current billing at 25 CCF is 277.99.
Right now is 224.
Where do you see that?
Look.
Hold on a minute, council members, council members, are we almost finished with the presentation?
He's talking about.
Because we could always go back to the council, are we almost finished with the presentation? Well, you finish first, and then we go back to asking, because this is, this is the questions that we're gonna ask, then you could go first, councilman.
But Council President, the next three slides are all speaking about a chart, if we don't understand what the chart is, that's the next three slides. So let them explain the chart, that's all I'm asking.
That's what I'm saying, let them explain.
Well, they did, we, we don't, I don't know, they didn't talk about the 300 meter, and the discrepancies are wrong, I'm not asking questions, if you're gonna present me a one-family home, a two-family home, a three-family home, I need to know how to read.
So the way, the way we currently charge right now is based on, forget the families right now.
Okay.
We charge based on meter size. It's 224, 224 for 5/8 meter.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter if you're one, two, or three, or four.
Okay.
We're based on the meter size, most residential's are 5/8s, so you've got a flat rate of 224 plus the volume. So.
So this chart has just shown us the flat rate for the meter size without volume?
This chart is showing five different methods that are not currently billed right now, that this chart.
So, so Councilman, this is what we're doing, the reason we hired this company is so we could have, you know, some of us didn't feel comfortable with what was going on, we rely upon Passaic Valley Water Commission's numbers, they're giving us five different options for us to pick. The administration most likely is gonna recommend one, we as a council could go with another one. So that's, that's where we are right now. You could proceed.
Thank you, Council President. So basically, the rest of the slides that you have, they show for one-family home, two-family home, as the councilman indicated, so the bottom line is that if you stay with where you're at, and then went to the flat fee, people in a one-family home would see the rates go up, whereas people with multifamily would see the rates go down. So the question, you know, and then if you chose a hybrid approach, you could at least reduce the amount that would go up for the single, in other words, rather, you'd meet somewhere in the middle, rather than the single-family home, seeing the rates go up from 224 or 278 to 358, you could moderate that, and the rate for the single-family homes would not go up by as much if you chose this hybrid approach. So that's really, you really have three options, leave it as is, which was the original Raftellus, go to a flat rate, or somewhere in the middle, and you could choose, you know, anywhere in the middle, but the idea is, if you go with the flat rate, then what'll happen is that single-family homes will see the rates go up by quite a lot, and multi-families will see the rates go down, the hybrid approach at least moderates the amount that the single-family homeowner would see a rate increase, because you will see a lot of people certainly unhappy with their rates going up, and like I said, when I was in Camden, I was able to explain that because I had an equity argument, it's hard to explain the equity, that your rate should go up when you're using less water, and that's just my, my personal opinion, but yes, my presentation is finished. Basically, the recommendation is to choose a compromise approach, the flat rate is too severe on single-family homes, if the current rate, volume only, is, seems to be too high for multifamily, then at least pick something in the middle that would, would at least reduce the amount of increase to single-family homes, because if you do go with the flat rate, you will see as many people upset with the rates going up, and there would be no rationale for it. Thank you, Council, Council President, Councilmen and women, I appreciate your time.
So, so thank you very much, I just want to say a few things. We noticed that ever since we started this conversation, the administration often talks about equity. When this sewer utility was created, was not to create equity, it was to basically, basically, separate, create balance, separate the sewer function from the budget, right? That's basically what it was, we created a utility so it could be self-sustained, so now the burden that we were not covering through the sewer fees was being allocated now among all property owners, not just taxpayers, which is, you know, school districts, counties, churches, non-for-profits, they were not paying their fair share of sewer. Now, if we want to talk about equity, and I wasn't gonna take this route, but the way it was presented is that, oh, we want to make sure that the one-families are paying less. If that was the intent, then the $6 million that we removed from the budget, they should have, they should have saw a tax decrease, not a tax increase. So all we did, so, so basically, what is your name again? Andy, so basically, when you created the utility, what we did was, we removed $6 million from the budget, and we put it in the, in the utility. That means if, and I'm just throwing a number, if a homeowner was paying an additional $30 in tax, putting it on the sewer, they should have only paid 20, because now the, some of the burden was gonna be put into non-for-profits, in an ideal situation, in an ideal world.
Right, but Council President, we know that because of transitional aid, that decreases, so it's not, you're comparing apples to oranges.
Madam BA, it's not apple to oranges, I'm telling you, in an ideal, I understand, yes, please, and the next time I ask for the floor, Councilman Jackson, yes, next time she asks for the floor. Madam BA, in an ideal situation, in a perfect world, without a city, without transitional aid, that's what should have happened, right? You remove the money from the budget, that means your levy goes down by $6 million in an ideal situation, given that there's no increases in taxes, that year, your tax, your tax levy should have gone down $6 million, and you'll put it on the sewer fees, right? Whatever that is, you allocate an amount more properties now, your base is bigger. And that's not what, you know, and we often talk about, you know, equity. Now, the situation that we have here, and a great example, and I didn't want to bring this up, because somehow it's not as relevant, because they're an industrial property, but I see Councilman Morris here, St. Joe's is a great example, because of Passaic Valley Water Commission, the city now owes a lot of money to St. Joe's, because they were overbilled, millions of dollars that were overbilled, because of the volume being used by, because of the meter readings, basically. This is happening to a lot of homeowners too. And we cannot depend, look, if we make errors, then it's gonna be on us, right? The errors are gonna be on us, then we could fix. But when you depend on Passaic Valley Water Commission, a lot of times, they have a lot of estimates at year-end, a lot of times, you know, I heard from some people that the new bill that was sent out was based on the old bill, I guess you'll make an adjustment later on when you get the reading, but they still got the same bill as last year. All I want to say is, from the beginning, before we even contemplated, and he's here, before we even contemplated doing volume, I argue for months, I said, look, let's just leave the flat rate the way it is, and allocate, you know, do a percentage increase throughout, because you pass a comment that the one-family is gonna see an increase, there's a lot of one-family that saw a bigger increase, they're probably gonna see a decrease with this flat rate, because some of them, yes, some of them did not just get a $224 bill, because they exceeded the 24,000 gallon, or whatever the amount is that we set. So not every, every one-family home got a 224 bill, $224 bill, some of them even saw a $1,000 bill, just so you know, Andy. Andy, we will have a flat rate, just like we had before, when we had the $6 million difference, right? We had a flat rate that did not make, did not cover all the costs. Councilman Colicke one time stated that, at one time, the administration wanted to raise $3 million, and correct me if I'm wrong, $3 million, I think it was, and they increased everyone's property, sent a supplemental bill.
$60.
For $60, and generated $3, $3 million.
Well, Council President, that there, that was residential, it was different for industrial and commercial, and it was a little bit of a different scale, and that was a one-time, and we couldn't use that same formula to do a permanent improvement.
Understood.
I just want that fact there.
Just ask for the floor. I, please, yes, we still generated $3 million, we sent a homeowner, well, we sent our property owners a bill for $60, right? I'm not using that figure to say that if we billed them a 120, we would have generated the $6 million, that's not what I'm stating, I know you saw it that way. So all I'm saying is, we want to simplify, we're the ones that get the calls, we're the ones that hears of people coming here and being sent to Passaic Valley Water Commission, then Passaic Valley Water Commission send them back here, and then six months later, after we think that the situation was resolved, they still calling us, calling us, and this is creating a big problem. I think the simplest way to do is to do a flat rate, just like I told the CFO, I don't know if you guys ever made those calls to those towns to see what was, what was their average sewer fee, something that I did when I did the presentation 13 years ago, we were very low, even if we, if we leave it flat the way it was, and didn't increase evenly between, among all the residuals, we still would have paid way less than every other town in Passaic County. And just so you know, not every other town used volume to calculate their sewer fee, I mean, their sewer fees.
Council President.
And my recommendation to my council colleagues, the simplest way to do this, we already had a trial dealing with Passaic Valley Water Commission, not all the water goes in the sewer, we keep saying this for years, I just don't see the relevancy, you know, if you have a nice property that, and you like to maintain your lawn, you shouldn't have to think twice before you turn on your water, you're already paying a water fee to Passaic Valley Water Commission, now you're gonna be billed based on that consumption of the water, that you're already paying, for one thing, and the interesting thing is that we have a combined water system, when it rains, the water goes into a sewer, when it snows, the water goes into a sewer. So all I want to say is my recommendation as the Finance Chair, is that, is the same recommendation that I had two years ago, that we leave the flat rates, at least I know what my residents are gonna be paying. The 224 doesn't guarantee that your residents are gonna be paying the 224, it doesn't guarantee that, it's all on water consumption.
Council President.
So, Councilwoman De La Ceez, I know you had the floor before, you finish?
I had the floor, we waited.
So, so I'm gonna let.
I had the floor way before.
Okay, I'm gonna let Councilman Mendez, Velez, you want the floor, Councilwomen? Councilwoman Cotton? You want the floor? Councilman Jackson, we're gonna go in that order.
Thank, thank you, Council President, and Mr. Andy, welcome to Patterson, and I'm very glad that you took, you know, Camden out, you know, and focused into Patterson, and I just want to share this with you, you might don't know this, but since this utility was created, it's been a nightmare for homeowners and Pattersonians, we've been getting increased tremendously, of some, in some cases, 300%, more than the 224 that you have in this presentation, I guarantee you that, and I know a lot of the council members, they could definitely speak about that. What I'm expecting to get from this presentation by having you here in the city of Patterson is that, to make sure that we clarify and you present a clear option to our homeowners, what's gonna be the bill, what the bill's gonna look like, I know you're presenting the flat rate that you say that is 224, but in a lot of the cases, a lot of the homeowners, they got a bill way more than the 224, you have a flat rate of 358, 40, and you, and you have a hybrid of 275.
Use your mic, sir.
Please.
Yes, if you look on the page with the arrow, that is what the, you know, I mean, ideally.
So, so.
I believe it should be based.
Councilman.
On volume.
Sure.
But I understand the concern about a flat rate, and so this is a proposed compromise, which is between a flat rate and strictly volumetric, and it's, it's.
So, Andy, could you state to the public, before you continue, could you state to the public the amounts that you're contemplating, the administration suggesting the increase from 224 to what?
So the fixed rate portion would be, for one, one, you know, one-family home would be, it would be $275, for two, it'd be 425, three, it'd be 625, and four, it'd be 700, whereas on the flat rate, it's 358, 681, 969, and 1292.
So Mr. Andy, so your recommendation on the flat, on the flat rate on this arrow is that from the 225 that you mentioned on the other area, going up to 275, and on a single-family?
So there, there are five options, when you look at this page, Councilman Mendez?
Yes, I'm here, I'm on that page.
So the flat rate, the flat rate for a one-family home would be 358.
So the.
For a two-family home would be 681, that's one option. For a three-family home would be 969, for a four-family home, 1,292. The hybrid, that's the second option, the hybrid would be, for a one-family home, it would be a fixed rate of 275 plus volume. The volume right now is.
Plus volume.
Plus volume, correct, correct, and the volume would be 33%.
33% of what?
What was the joke?
So that, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, I just, I'm gonna finish with my topic, Councilwoman, but that's, that was the direction that I was going, that can you explain to the public what is the difference between? Can you explain to the public what is the difference between the fixed rate and the value? And you already say that on a hybrid, there's going to be a $275 plus 33% based on the value.
So, the page after, when you go to one-family home, if you use 25 CCF, your bill is $306.50. It's the third column, hybrid tier. If you use under 25 gallons, your bill is $275. If you use over 50, your bill is $338. And again, as the CCF go up, your bill keeps going up. So the more you use, your bill keeps going up, the less you use...
You're in that page, Andy, right? Got it. Okay, so let me just say this, to allow my colleague to participate also in the meeting. I understand that on a flat rate, you're planning also, you're presenting an increase on a flat rate also as well. And that's something that I have a problem with, I have a problem with that. I will allow all my colleague to comment on this. But since this utility was created, it was a nightmare. Single-family, they got a bill way higher, more than $224. So the hybrid, which is $275 plus 33, we don't want a, we don't want to build our Patersonia based on usage. That's totally, that's a no-no. My discussion is going to be based on the increase that you tried to put into the flat fee. That's what I problem. I do agree with Council President. I'm expecting to make sure that our homeowner get a flat fee when it comes to the sewer bill. But I don't agree with the increase that you're presenting in this presentation. So I will leave it at that. I know that all the council member has the floor, but that's my take on this presentation. Definitely don't agree with this increase that you presented here.
Council President. Use your microphone, sir.
The current, if you look at, say, the one-family home, so the current billing would be $224 plus gallonage. The flat rate would be $358 throughout, so the hybrid would be somewhere in between. If the council chooses that...
Andy, the hybrid is $275. $224 is what we had last year. What is being proposed, recommended by the administration, is $275.
Right.
The flat is $358 for one family.
Right.
And we'll continue that discussion. Councilman Velez have the floor.
Thank you. So, sorry I came in late, I didn't hear your introduction. You represent the Moonshot Mission?
Yes, sir.
So you put all this together for us?
From the business administrator and the CFO.
So you took data from the business administrator, and who else?
And the CFO.
You had the chance to read the newspaper for your data?
Read the newspaper?
Yeah. Oh, well, the audibles regarding the sewer.
Oh, I did read them, actually.
You took the data from the residents of Patterson, too? Their complaints and the uncomfort, the situation, you didn't took in consideration that?
I did, and having experience with, in working in Camden for so many years, I know that...
Working where?
In Camden for many years. That when you increase the rates for some people and lower the rates for others, you make some people happy and some people unhappy. Ultimately, you have to decide what is fair. And I agree with what the Council President said. When you created the sewer utility, the goal was to try to make it self-liquidating, independent of equity. But equity is always a desirable thing to seek. And so I think the administration did do the right thing in trying to not only self-liquidate, but also find a fair solution. So the question really is, is what is most fair? And it seems to me, and I know the Environmental Protection Agency and the American Water Works Association do agree that it is fair to bill on the basis of consumption versus...
I didn't want to interrupt you, sir. Once again, you compare Camden with Patterson. Camden was taken over by the state, so it was not, now it's coming up because the state billed him a lot. But fortunately, we don't have that bill. We had to make sure the revenue comes in a different way. So every time you talk about other cities, other states, to try to pitch something to us of your analysts and your review of this, you know, I want to stay in Patterson.
Absolutely, and equity is fair no matter where you are.
First of all, you used a lot, and the time I heard you speaking, you heard, I heard from you saying this was created to create revenues for the city of Patterson. We often say that nothing is created here in the city of Patterson to create revenues hurting the taxpayers or those individuals that are trying to make a living in the city of Patterson, and they get less to their pocket, and everything goes to, as a form of tax or as a form of revenue to the city. They don't see no benefit on that, especially when it comes up to service. They don't see the coming back. Now, who decided to put that blue arrow there?
Sorry?
Who decided to put that blue arrow there?
That's our recommendation.
Yeah, that was your recommendation. It's like saying, okay, you guys want that one, instead of going to the... Yeah, recommendation.
But based on, but I agree with them.
All right, so, you know, I see, correct. I see that you have here sidehouse one, two, three, and four.
Yes.
Right? And all the analysis here is side one, two, three, and four. If you took the recommendation of demonstration and you looked at your geographic of Patterson, especially in my ward, I don't have one, two, three, and four. I have dwelling buildings, a lot. I have commercial buildings, a lot, you know. And based on what I see here, it all depends. Every ward has their own structure. You know, first ward is all different, second ward, second ward is all different, third, based on the property they have. So, in other words, you know, I don't see no commercial component in this.
Because commercial, we propose to leave the same, which is already volumetric. We're only looking at residential.
What, when I see, when I see one, two, three, four families, okay, I understand. We got one and two, three, four families. We don't have a lot of four-family houses in the fifth ward, but we have multi-dwelling buildings. We're talking about 32, 42 apartments. So if you go to look at that, where's the rate, you know, where's the, where the analysis at? We cannot look at just one-family house and...
Those are industrials, those are...
So where they fall? If it's industrial, if it's commercial, where we fall? Because I want to see where we at, and who, you know, we have to see the whole picture.
The commercial, the industrial, and the non-for-profit billing wouldn't change.
Use the microphone.
Can you hear me?
Now it's on.
The commercial, the industrial, and the non-for-profit wouldn't change. For commercial, right now, we collect about $5 million. For industrial and non-for-profit, we collect $3 million. The only thing we're proposing to change is the residential billing.
So basically, you need $19 million total. $8 million of it, as Mr. Silva indicated, is collected from commercial, industrial, and nonprofit. We're proposing that stay exactly the same as it is. We're only looking at the $11 million that you need to collect from your residential customers. And the question is, what is the fairest way to do it? I mean, because if, so basically, you have to come up with $11 million. So if you charge some people more, and some people, and then some, you know, if some people less, then some people have to pay more. There's, because you still have to come up with $11 million at the end. So if you think that some of people are charging, being charged too much, and you reduce their rates, and to balance it out to the $11 million you need, other people's rates will have to go up because you still need the same amount of revenue at the end of the day. And so I will say that the most equitable thing is to charge it based on volume. I know there's, I've heard about the point of view from a flat fee. So what the administration is recommending, I think, which would be at least more fair than a flat rate, would be this hybrid rate, which would at least cushion the blow for those who would see their rates go up otherwise.
So, in other words, fixed rate could be intentionally to raise it every year or every month or whatever, right?
So, Councilman, the rate will be almost like the levy. The same way we have to vote on a levy on a yearly basis, or if we give them the authority, because legally, a utility is only a utility if it's self-sustained. That means that the administration on a yearly basis have to adjust the billing in order to make it self-sustained. So I just want to point that out. Two, Andy, I want to ask you a question. When I did this analysis, it was too long, you know, so many years, it was 13 years ago. The question I have, based on the last statement that Councilmember Velez made, isn't there a municipal portion that we build the industrials? Because you have a direct billing from Passaic Valley Sewer Commission that's billed, that we collect, but that they build these industrials directly. Is there a portion that we build the industrials also? Do you apply the same increase that you applying? Because that's what we did when, you had a whole different council here, and I did this analysis. We apply a percentage increase evenly to generate a certain amount of money. The comment that you just made is that the industrial portion did not change. I don't think that's right. Like, we cannot change the Passaic Valley Sewer Commission's portion. But if we're charging the industrial an increased amount, we increasing the base, or not the base, depends on what we choose, right? If the commercial are going to see an increase, then the industrial should see the same percentage increase? Well, that's not the comment that you passed, the statement that you passed... No, no, but what I'm, but what I'm saying is, no, no, the volumetric is going to change. But there, hear me out. I ask you questions, and you say yes. What does the commercial bill comprise of, just to make it more simple?
Use your microphone, because it's available.
Meter size, meter size billing, meter size for billing and volume.
And that comes from Passaic Valley Sewer Commission, right?
Passaic Valley Water.
Sewer.
Water. For commercial. Now, there are about 30 properties that are industrial. That, there, we use the Passaic Valley Water charge.
You're going to have to use your microphone because we got to give the benefit to the residents, and they cannot hear you right now. Bring the mic closer to you.
All right, can you hear me now?
If now, you're going to have to use the other mic. You got to speak louder.
Okay, so, the industrial is, there's about 30 properties that are industrial. We get a direct bill from Passaic Valley Sewer. We charge that bill to them. We use Passaic Valley Water and a meter charge. So all three go into the industrial.
But before we did the volume billing, that it was all flat, before we did volume for residential, we didn't use Passaic Valley, did we always use Passaic Valley Water for the municipal portion?
Yes.
Yes.
So we need to increase...
The only thing we didn't use is the...
So we need to increase that rate for the municipal portion that we use from Passaic Valley Water Commission. That's the right thing to do, because if we move $6 million, if we move $6 million from the budget, and we put it now in the sewer fees, the intent was for everyone to absorb the burden. That was the intent. The intent was not, you know, we talk about equity often, the intent was for everyone to absorb that, you know, charge because they were already paying it through taxes.
You increased it by doing the meter charge. So now they're paying a meter charge that they weren't paying before. And most of those are big, so most of them are paying $10,000 over.
Let's just, let's just make sure that we only not, that we're not just passing the burden on a yearly basis, that those numbers need to be adjusted. Because if we just continue to adjust the residential, year after year, let's say two years from now, the billing, now the expenses for the sewer utility is $21 million, right? We got to make sure that we increase all the rates, so the nonprofits, the industrials, everyone.
I agree.
Andy, please, yes.
Thank you, Council President. One thing I would say, though, is, please don't forget that stormwater fee. That 40% of the flow that's generated in your city over a year because of the rain is no one's paying for, so everyone's, let me just finish. If you could, remember, it was $8 million for the commercial, $11 million needed for the residential. Imagine if that $11 million could be reduced by 30%, so you only needed $7 or $8 million instead.
Is that included in this presentation?
At the beginning, yes.
No, but it's not included in this, in these numbers. So the reason I'm telling you, this is a good conversation for next year. We don't have to, we'll do it this year if we're going to do it. But this would take place and affect the billing for next year, not for this year.
Well, I guess, that's fair, but all I want to say is, is please keep that in mind because, I mean, this disagreement among the different sides would be a lot easier if we were talking about having to raise $7 or $8 million versus $11. You know what I'm saying?
I'm in agreement with you. The only issue is that we need to get a list of the properties that will be affected.
Yeah.
We cannot just say open properties or parking lots. Because parking lots, that means the parking authority would have to pay, which is a good thing. I'm not opposed to it. But before having the conversation, you need to provide a list of properties
Yes.
that will be affected. And I'm in agreement with you. If, if we review this list of properties, I'm sure it's going to be beneficial to the residents.
Yep.
But we don't have that list, but we don't have that list right now. We don't know what it looks like. So that's a conversation for another time. But I'm in agreement with you. That could actually help the residents, you know, the residents.
Thank you, Council President. The last thing I'll just say about that is that, however this comes out, whichever, whatever you decide, whether it's the flat rate, staying with the volumetric rate, or somewhere in between, ultimately, perhaps a year from now, the residents will have a significant benefit. It's around the corner because there's an opportunity to reduce the total amount of revenue you need by such a great amount of money that everyone would be better off, no matter what you decide.
And that's the goal. The goal is not to put the burden on the residents, is to put it on the other properties that are not, non-taxpaying properties. Shift the burden evenly. Councilman, you haven't finished yet?
No, no, I haven't finished yet, but can you...
You haven't?
No, you cut me off.
Councilman, but let's give the opportunity also to the other councilmembers.
Come on, Council President, let's be fair. Around, let's be fair. I don't want to, I don't want to start a thing with...
You want to...
But you stated, you stated something that creates a little bit of commotion to my heart. The last statement that you said, "Let's make sure we put the burden to who?"
We spread the burden evenly, not just to the residents. So if there is a mechanism, because we have, what is the term used? We have a combined sewer system. That means, you know, rainwater goes in the sewer, snow water. So what he's suggesting, is this being used in other places?
Yes.
So any, so any, any potential idea that would take the burden away from our, you know, taxpaying base, we have to look into it. That's all I said. I'm not saying we're going to do it. They need to do the presentation at a different time. That's it, Councilman.
Because let me just, let me just say this, and I will finish. There's a lot of multi-dwelling building, residential building in the fifth ward that, who is paying the bill, is the tenant. They got separate meters, and they paying the bill. So when we say, "Let's split the burden," you know, the right facts. So the right fact is, if I have a building with 35 apartment, and I have 35 meters, you know, they paying the bills. It's not really the landlord, you know, it's... So that's why every ward is different. And when they say something, so I had to look into every part of it, from will benefit the residents, this one-family house, up to the multi-dwelling building. So I had to look into that balance to see where we go to shift the burden. We cannot be unfair in that, that's why. Okay, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, Andy, yes, we was on a conference, not a conference, Zoom meeting, talking about CSO, I mean, I've been talking about CSO for the last 10 years. You know, our sewer system is breaking down badly. We're in the same boat as Newark and Jersey City. Somewhere along the line, we have to try to separate them, and that's about getting money, going with the long-term plan, and working with cities like Newark and Jersey City. But I just want to say that to everyone watching, this is like kicking the can down the road. It had to come to a stop. I have seen in the last eight years I've been here, how much money we have been spending on sewer repairs. I mean, we're even bonding money to do sewer repairs. Now, and when you look at it, I think that, to me, volume, I have a two-family, and it's three people in my house. But the house next to me is a two-family, and it's 15 people in that house. The house on the other side of me is a two-family. So you're saying, and what I find that what this will do, if you go back to flat rate, that it would just let those people who are converting illegally and putting a lot of people in the houses to pay the same rate that I pay, and they got 30 people, and I got three. So I'm saying, somewhere along the line, volume has to come in. And I can give you an example. My water bill three-quarters ago was $195. There was a leak in my basement from my boiler. So once I fixed that leak, now my $195 quarter bill went down to $103. Because even though you might think it's small, but as long as that thing is running, and it's running, and it's running, then you're going to pay. But, and I remember, I've been a homeowner for 37 years, and I can remember that we hadn't paid no increase in over 20 years. And I knew what the bill was coming in, sitting on the city council for Passaic Valley Sewer. It wasn't covering enough to cover. You want to need enough to cover, but you still got to look into, and I want to say to you out there, we don't want to keep bonding money to fix our sewers. We want to, we don't want to keep putting the bill... We want to, we don't want to keep, um, putting the bill on the taxpayers too when we have to plug it in with the budget. We still gotta put that in there. So, you need to look at, and I said before in the meeting that I helped fifty people by getting the correct rate. And I would say to people sometimes, make sure you check your, just check your lines in your house, in your basement, to your boilers, to your hot water tank, um, making sure your toilet's not running. You have the piece in there that it doesn't do that. But what this would do, I see is that they would still completely just keep converting illegal apartments, basements, attics. Uh, if you go with a house with eighteen and you got another house that got five, uh, they're paying the same rate and it really can't be that. And I think that it would stop some of the conversion, I mean, illegal. Because now people will say, we have all these people in this house. Um, sometimes you can see it, sometimes you can't see it. What I can tell most of the time, and I'm gonna be done, um, you can tell how many people live in a house by looking at the garbage when the mayor comes collect. When you got a two-family home and you got five garbage cans full of garbage, that means a lot of people is living in there. Uh, and I don't know, I mean, they could be family members, but still and all, you have to really take a look at it, um, of volume versus flat rate, um, to see, and we gotta stop borrowing money to fix our sewer. Every time we're opening up a road, let's, they're separating the lines now. We're separating them. Uh, and that's what we have to do. Every time we open up something, and I have about, and I said it before, I got two million dollars worth of sewer work that gotta be done just in the ward that I represent, that they've been complaining. People have been calling and calling about trying to, and I said it to the mayor. So, this, to me, is the can was kicked for a long time with a bunch of different mayors. They gotta stop somewhere because we gotta address the issue that's happening now and to Passaic Valley Sewer. You know, I know what they bill us and what we collect. From the water, the water thing is wrong, you know, correct it. So, I, I said, we, if we're gonna look at flat, you gotta make it fair. But I can't pay the same amount as a two-family homeowner and I got three and then my home next to me got fifteen and you want me to pay the same. I mean, you gotta be fair by overall, it'll stop illegal conversions, it'll stop it. Because then you know it's more people in that house than what your house is registered for. So, you know, it's gotta be fair all the way around. So, thank you for that, Council President. Oh, he left?
Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you. So, therefore, Councilwoman Cotton, it's imperative for the other agencies within the city to do enforcement to make sure there's no illegal basements, illegal attic apartments. If we're not doing that type of enforcement, then you see those five garbage cans out there. But where it becomes level is when you gotta fill that pool in the backyard. That, that, uh, that, and or, another example where you might have a two-family, but because you need to fill your pool, you have a three-quarter inch line or a one-inch line and somebody has a half-inch line. Now, just based on the simplistic fact that you have a larger line, it doesn't indicate whether or not you have more volume. You're now paying more to a sewer, to a sewer bill, which has nothing to do with how much water that they're processing in the plant. Now, with that being said, with that being said, I just, I have a couple of questions. I'm a bit curious. You, you made a statement saying that forty percent of the flow in which is being treated is from the storm. How is that, how has that been calculated?
Uh, what I said was that, that in other cities, that on average in combined sewer communities, so Wilmington, Delaware was forty-three percent, Camden City was thirty-five percent. With Patterson, I estimated roughly, there was about forty, forty percent based on your total dry weather. The way to do it basically is you estimate the flow, dry, it depends on the year and how much rain there is in a year.
Correct.
But the point is, is that on average for combined sewer communities across the country, it's about thirty-five to forty-five percent on an average rain year. Because, because what happens is there's so much, so much stormwater that the flow can go up by five to ten times on that one day, even though it only rains, let's say, one out of every eight days. But on those, that one day, the flow could go up by five to ten times. So, when you add it all up over a year and look at, you know, on an average year, it's about thirty-five to forty-five percent.
Can you help me out, do me a favor? Because we've been going at it for quite some time. I think residents are getting a bit bored with the conversation. Make the answers very quick and short.
Sure.
So, when you say that the way in which the calculation is done, there is no calculation, it was done by an average? A guesstimate?
Well, each year, it depends on how much rain there is.
Understood. So, is it a guesstimate or is it?
One year it might be thirty-five percent, another year it might be forty-five percent, depending how much it rains, that's right.
But how do we know that? What the percentage is?
Oh, because you...
Because that same year, that same year, you could have a lot of trauma in, in some of these locations that utilizes more water. So, how do we know that thirty-five percent, regardless of the rainfall? We still don't know because we don't know the other volume. How are you calculating the percentage of what rainfall is versus what actual flow is?
To do it for Patterson or for any city, what you, in the case of Patterson, what you would do is you'd go to the Passaic Valley Sewer Corporation. They have a pump station that meters Patterson's flow every single day and you would add up all the dry weather flow and you'd add up all the wet weather days and you would then, you would be able to see what the dry weather flow was and you would, you know, when it's not raining, it would be pretty consistent.
Still not accurate, it's still an average, it's still an average. Because you still, there's still variables that you have to deal with. Once again, if there's, uh, say the pool goes down, we have to dump, empty the pool a couple of times. There's many variables. But my point is that there is no, there is no, there has not been a precise way. It's the same thing that I've said to the company that comes in here year after year to calculate what our violations are when we have a, an overflow. And they, they made a guesstimate and they say they take a national average. When we're paying nineteen million dollars, I think it warrants at least an effort to put in place some type of technology to at least let us know, you know what? The alarm went off on Pier number two, uh, Sewer number fifty-seven. We have, and this tells you, you don't, you don't have to estimate or average things in two thousand twenty-one. There's detection devices that we still have failed to put in place.
That's expensive.
Now, the last thing, it's expensive, but we're paying out nineteen million dollars in which we raised over, because our bill has essentially been eighteen, not nineteen. Eighteen million dollars and we raised close to twenty-two million dollars. So, we overshot that. So, therefore, the calculations in which we should be asking or burdening our taxpayers with was inaccurate. Now, the other thing is this. At nineteen thousand, what your estimate's saying, we, 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 our expected bill would be nineteen thousand dollars a year and eight million, I'm sorry, nineteen million dollars. And eight million dollars being the portion that's already being earmarked and collected by a commercial, that leaves them at forty-two percent, forty-two point one percent, something like that. How is that calculation done?
Well, the eight million is based on the, that's what you're currently paying them now. That's, oh, you're charging.
That's what they're paying us.
Right, eight million.
Correct, we're billing them forty-two percent. But how are we determining that there, the amount of volume being utilized by the commercial is only forty-two percent?
Well, let me back up. The total was nineteen million when you were doing it by volume, volume, everybody by volume, which is what you're doing now. So, based on volume, the, the, the commercial and industrial and nonprofit are eight million and the residential add up to eleven million based on volume.
How are we determining that the commercial is using forty-two percent, eight million dollars? How has it been determined that eight million dollars of use is coming from commercial?
It's based on, based on the total volume of the entire town.
It's not, it's not the meter.
No, no, the, the, those industrials have meters. Am I correct? Yeah, they have meters. They all have meters, correct.
Listen, they have water meters, but we're being billed.
No, no, they have sewer meters.
Sewer meters?
Yeah.
The buildings have sewer.
For the industrial, for the industrials.
Industrial has a sewer meter on the bill, on the building. I'm sorry?
For industries that have like a New Jersey pollution discharge permit, it's required to have a meter.
Okay, I, I need to see, I need to see something like that. I've never, and, and I've done, I've been in, I've, I've never seen a sewer meter. Where's the sewer meter? Who, who comes around to read, how do they read sewer meters? And who comes around to read sewer meters?
Well, for example, the Passaic Valley Sewer Treatment Plant, the outfall, right? They, they have, there's a meter, they, the operators then have to read the meter.
They read inflow and at their plant.
And outflow, and they have to.
They read the flow at their plant. You're, the statement that was just made is that a building, like, for example, this building has a water meter as well as a sewer meter.
This is not an industrial.
I'm just using it as an example. It can be, pick an industrial building. The hospital, you're telling me the hospital has a sewer meter? Okay. It, Council, Mr. Morris, is there any way I could get a tour? Because I, I've never seen a sewer meter. I would love to be educated and see what a sewer meter looks like. So, okay, last, a couple more questions. So, the, the, the formula in which it was used to calculate the difference, the differential between commercial and residential, you're saying is from their, the commercial flow. And you're telling me that every, every commercial building has a sewer meter?
No. So, the commercial billing is five million. The industrial and the nonprofit billing is three million.
You just can't randomly select what the billing is without understanding how the calculation works.
They're based on water meters. Most of them are based on water meters, Passaic Valley water meters. Based on their usage.
Based on usage?
Yes.
But, but for example, I have, I have a one-inch line and my neighbor may have a three-quarter inch line. I'm paying more.
For commercials, yes.
But it doesn't mean that I'm utilizing more water.
Well, you have a hotel that has a ten-inch line. They're paying more based on the flat fee than a smaller commercial.
Why would someone have to pay extra for a service that they're not utilizing?
Because in that, in that scenario.
We're paying a processing plant, plant. Our bill is what it is to process our water. It is not just randomly selected because you have a bigger meter, I'm gonna charge you more.
Well, in that scenario, the bigger you are, the more water you need, the more water you're gonna use. So, the bigger meter you need.
That's not the case, that's not the case.
For commercials, I would say it is the case.
But we're talking about residents that have come forward.
Well, no, that's why, that's why we agree, we're gonna change residential. We're gonna change the residential billing. We totally agree on that. Now, you brought up commercials, we're talking about commercials.
We're three years later and it took the council to rescind this order in order to do that while residents have been getting hit. I'm sorry?
Year and a half.
Okay, a year and a half, year and a half. It's been, when, what year was this approved?
I think it's been like a year and a half. He's probably correct because it took a while, you know, for them to put the presentation for the discussion. So, the discussion is probably, you're correct. The discussion has been, it was a while back, but it's been, the utility was created a year and a half. The utility.
So, at what rate, um, per volume are we charged from Passaic Valley Sewer?
What do you mean?
It has to, but it has to be a calculated rate. You have to say, if you, last year, we, we processed one hundred thousand gallons. What is the rate of processing?
For commercial and for industrial, we charge two-point-one-five-nine-four.
Commercial and industrial is two-point-five, what?
Two-point-one-five-nine-four.
Two-point-one-five?
Nine-four.
Nine-four.
That's the rate.
And residential?
Residential's two-point-one-five-nine-four. It's the same. Right now, the way we bill, it's the same for everybody. Yes, correct, it's based on volume.
And, excuse me, Council President. And for that.
Go ahead, Madam B.
And for that with residential, for commercial, we start billing on their first gallon of water usage. Uh, for residential, we don't start billing until thirty-three CCF or after twenty-five thousand gallons of water usage.
So, can I ask you a question? I already asked Councilman if he could allow me. What was last year's total budget for the utility? Was it nineteen million? Last year, last year.
Last year's eighteen.
Eighteen. And what was the commercial portion? Commercial and?
Four-point-seven, four-point-eight.
Four-point-seven, now. What is the projected budget for this year, based on this billing that you presented here?
Nineteen.
Nineteen? So, it went up a million dollars?
Yeah.
What is the billing for commercial for this year?
Five million.
So, it went up?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. You could continue, Councilwoman Jackson.
Last question. So, um, the, what was the average of volume treated the last, however many years you have? You have a five-year projection, a three-year projection. What was the, what was the average volume that was treated?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
There's a rate of two-point-one-five, two-point-five-nine-four, correct?
That's the water usage.
Usage?
Yes.
So, what was the volume?
What was the, of overall city? Yeah, I, I don't have the answer.
How do you not have an idea? You're being billed, that's like saying, if I go to the quarry and I say, give me two tons of...
I would have to look, I, yeah.
Of course it could be, it's supposed to be calculated. But if you go, if I go to the water company and, and I say, give me two gallons of water, or a tile company, they say I charge two dollars a square foot.
For residential.
I'm gonna know, well, give me a thousand square feet.
For residential, the average was about three million the last two years for commercial.
Three million what?
I'm not sure. The average usage was three million.
Three million what?
Uh, three million CCS.
CCS?
Yes.
Residential?
For residential only.
For residential?
Only.
And how, and how are you telling me what residential's portion was?
Excuse me?
How are you telling me what residential's portion was?
Because we, we get, we get a volume reading from Passaic Valley Water.
Okay, so, once again, right? You have people who have irrigation systems. You have people who have swimming pools or, you know, um, who, for various reasons, and or you have rainwater that's falling, right? So, you can't, I didn't ask how much water was consumed from Passaic Valley Water. I asked you how much water was processed. We, we, we don't pay, we don't pay a bill, you don't go pay a company because you say, oh, I brought this much food, so this is how much stuff made it to my toilet. Some of my family members might have been visiting somebody else's house. So, we, we talking about what are we paying for? How can you pay a bill and you don't even know what we're being billed for? There has to be an average of, of water that's being processed. And then, then the formula for, with the average, the yearly average formula that he wants to put in place because we don't have a detection system, comes into play. But you still have to know what is the total amount of water that's being processed at the plant. Because remember, Passaic Valley Sewer Commission, Patterson is not the only municipality that they're servicing. So, are we, are we now relying on them to tell us, well, you know what? We process five hundred million gallons and we estimate Patterson to be this, based on your water bill?
I can answer your question, Councilman. So, basically, there are, there are three components to Patterson's sewage generation, the water process that you're talking about sewage. There's three components. There's residential, there's commercial and industrial, and then there's stormwater on a, on a wet weather day because you have a combined sewer system. It's standard practice across the industry nationally, everywhere, that for commercial and industrial, you know, large industrial, you would have a separate sewer meter that you would measure exactly the water in and sewage out for like a factory, those kinds of things. But for everything else, commercial, residential, et cetera, it's understood that it'd be so expensive to put in a, and then to have a sewer meter in every single sewer connection and have, then have to read that meter as well, that it is national standard practice in the sewer industry to estimate that approximately eighty-five percent of the water in goes out as sewage, on average. Because it's more cost-effective to average it out that way than to have an individual sewer meter on normal residential properties, normal commercial properties. It's only for things like hospitals, factories, where the water usage would be so large where it makes sense to have a sewer meter. So, that is standard practice. And then for this, to measure the effect of the stormwater, what you would do, what everyone does in the industry is, you would take Passaic Valley Sewer's reading for Patterson, average what it is on a dry weather day, because someday people flush the toilet four times, someday they flush it five times. So, it, it varies on a, even on dry weather days. But you would have a dry weather average and then you would look at the, and you would total that on the dry weather days and you'd look at the, the total flow received from Patterson by Passaic Valley each year and the difference would be the stormwater that went into the combined sewer system. And that's what you'd base the bill on. And that is how you, you bill sewage in the industry.
Your means, number four.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mintz?
So, um, I have a question and a recommendation. So, I asked for this, but I don't see it attached. So, to Madam B, there's five different recommendations that are outlined here. Um, I remember when we went over, uh, in previous conversations with the sewer repeal, that we had twenty-six residential addresses that outlined what the variations were. Can we have that attached to each of these different recommendations? Um, sample addresses that shows what is the, what, how the impact or what this recommendation will do for our residential customers? Because I don't see that attached. Cuz I don't see that attached. I think that will paint a greater picture. I did, uh, make that recommendation. I think it would have made, would have helped this discussion tremendously, but I asked for it, um, previously. But can we just add...
I mean, that's what we tried to do here, without actually naming an address, but just saying, on this one-family home, for example, showing the CCF on the side. This is a user who only uses, you know, doesn't even hit that threshold of twenty-five thousand gallons. That's what it looks like.
Okay.
Because we don't know necessarily what the house, who's inside the house. We can't sort of compare. We would just be taking addresses, and they would fall somewhere on this chart with their usage. But it's, it's similar. That's why we showed how it'd be broken out by usage.
Okay, since, since you said you did it, how many houses are represented by this number?
So, you could see that on the first, the, the slide with the blue arrow. It shows the parcels. So, one-family homes, there's seven-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-five. Two families, seven-thousand-nine-hundred-sixteen.
How much usage are in that seven thousand?
Well, it, it depends, like it...
Okay, so I'll make my recommendation again. I would like to have samples of different residential properties that are impacted. Usage varies by residential property. There are five recommendations before us. That's why I ask questions. I'm giving a recommendation that will assist.
But Councilwoman, uh...
This, Madam B A.
These are examples, so...
Madam B A, Madam B A, I just would like to see some samples. That's it. Some samples, random samples of different addresses. Maybe this person has used it more. This person, I mean, you've done it all in the past, so this is nothing new. I don't know why it's always a combative discussion when I ask. But I'm just making a recommendation or an ask, which will help us make a more sound, fiscal, fiscally sound decision. That's a recommendation. Here's a question, um, and I think, uh, Councilman Jackson hit it on the head. We had some incidents, uh, Mr. Andy, uh, where we had residents that lived in a one-family home. But based on the piping size, they were being built as though they lived in a commercial building. So, which of these five recommendations will resolve that, if any? Do we have one of these recommendations that will resolve those residents? See, that, to me, that was a, a internal issue. We were sending residents to the Water Commission, which we're sending them back to us, and those residents still have those issues today. So, where is that rectified in what I see before me?
They owe it. Yes. So, so the, the flat rate would be a flat rate, right, based on family homes. The hybrid rate now is a flat charge based on family homes. So, there's no meter charge. Meters included.
But you talked about the size of the piping, that's why I'm asking. You mentioned that.
Only for commercial and industrial.
Only commercial, okay, so now that will resolve that, will identify what is...
That would be totally resolved.
Um, also, have we scrubbed this, scrubbed to ensure that what should be, um, identified as a home is a home, and is not commercial? Have we scrubbed our system to do that?
Yes.
And we don't have any issues?
No.
Okay. Um, Council President.
So, so, so this is what, this is what we have before us. The recommendation from the administration is to do two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Flat, right? Plus, is there an amount that they need to exceed in order for the volume to kick in?
Over twenty-five thousand gallons.
Okay, so the same thing they had before. But from, it's going up to two-seventy-five now, from two-twenty-four. That's the recommendation from the administration. Now, the other option that we have is flat, right? Which is three-hundred-and-fifty-eight for a one-family. When you do the difference between the two-seventy-five and the three-fifty-eight, it's eighty-three dollars. When you do that, um, per month, it's less than seven dollars. Now, you're paying less than seven dollars a month, but there's not gonna be an instance. Some of you that are watching probably didn't have an, an issue this year. Your bill was probably two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. That doesn't mean that in the future, if we leave it the way it is hybrid right now, and for whatever reason, you have to consume additional water, uh, that doesn't mean, uh, that your bill's gonna be two-hundred-and-twenty-four. Now, the flat rate guarantees that when you do your budget at home, you're gonna pay what we told you you're gonna pay. So, the difference is eighty-three dollars a year for a one-family home, from what is being recommended from the administration, for a one-family. Now...
Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President.
Wait, I haven't finished. So, um, so just like I stated before, like I said from the beginning, as an elected official, I like to basically take ownership for things that I do. Take responsibility for what I do. Um, when we created the utility, it was a lot of uncertainty, cuz when you're dealing with volume in a city this big, this is a very diverse city. We have too many type of properties here. Uh, we have a lot of people, it's, it's very, this, this city's populated tremendously. Um, and I knew it was gonna be a lot of issues. We have, uh, Passaic Valley Water Commission. Uh, a lot of times, the bills are based on an estimate. We had, we have many situations where we got in calls from people, uh, because they had some discrepancies in their billing. We even had a situation, and I bring it back again, a great example is the hospital, right? When this was sold to us, the sales pitch was that St. Joe's was gonna pick up a big burden of the six million dollars. Tremendous, a, a, a big portion of the six million dollars. He ended up now that the rest of the city, that, that's, the, the burden that they were gonna pick up, he actually went the other way. We actually owed them like one-point-eight million dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong. How much do we owe St. Joe's?
One-point-eight.
One-point-eight. How much was their billing last year?
Somewhere around three-fifty for the year.
So, they might not pay sewer fees for the next few years. And I'm being generous, right? Um, they're not gonna pay sewer fees for a while. Nothing against St. Joe's, you know? We love St. Joe's, they serve us well. I'm just giving you an example how...
Did you take your treatment there?
Their plan never goes according to...
Did you take your treatment there? Did you go to the hospital?
Hospital's great. I love St. Joe's. Um, let me just make that, make that public. Now, I just wanted to use them as an example. Um, I also read a, a newspaper article another time, that there was a, a laundromat that was gonna take us to court, I think it was. It was, the bill was like five-hundred-something thousand dollars, uh, their sewer bill. Aside from the water bill, the sewer bill was five-hundred-something thousand dollars. Uh, and I wanna say something that council, and it's not to correct one of my colleagues, but I often hear that, oh, you know, we're not gonna be able to fix our sewer. Who said that? Like, we didn't have a utility before. We always bond for the sewer. Yes, we don't update all our sewer, because we, we can't, we do not, we cannot afford that. But we have been, you know, bonding almost four million dollars on a yearly basis for sewer. So, sewer utility, volume, flat, whatever you wanna call it, we have a responsibility to at least repair the sewer. So, that's not gonna stop regardless of how we vote on this. So, the whole, oh, we kicking the can down the road, it doesn't make, no, doesn't, doesn't apply. Because the sewer, listen, the sewer utility, we created the utility. That doesn't mean that we're gonna borrow a hundred million dollars to fix all our sewer. Then, your, your, your sewer bill's probably gonna be as much as your tax bill, if you think about it. So, we're not, we're not looking to do that here.
Council President?
My recommendation is that, that we go with the flat. At least I know what my residents will be paying, and that's just my recommendation. Um, Councilman Adelisiis?
Thank you, Council President. Um, so I have a few questions in, for our consultant and our CFO. So, we stated currently, we're not changing the commercial and not-for-profit billing formula, right? That generates eight million dollars, correct?
Yes.
And to the residents, and this is where I look at it, right? So, we have an eleven-million-dollar bill, and how we're gonna slice up this bill, who pays what, and who pays their fair share, whatever formula that we pick, and whatever beliefs that council members have on what's equitable and what's fair. At the end of the day, I wanna look at the commercial and nonprofit. Now, the nonprofit doesn't, they don't pay taxes. So, how could we increase that amount? So, instead of it being eleven-eight, maybe be twelve-seven? So, the residential component will be less of a bill?
Yes.
So, how could we, how, how, why don't we look at that, and how could we do that?
One, one very easy way to do that is to charge a fee for impervious surface, because these large parking areas, the, the issue is, is that thirty, and, and it is an estimate, cuz every year is different, every city's different. The rain year is different every year. On average, thirty to forty to forty-five percent of the flow that comes through a combined sewer system comes from impervious surface. So, that is, so you could be reducing that eleven-million-dollar pie that you have to divide up fairly, however you all decide, to eight, seven, or eight.
So, now, if we were to do that, how long would that take for us to adopt that?
Probably about six months to, to study it out.
To study it out.
Based on the city of Philadelphia, what they did, Wilmington, Chester.
So, what, what, that's where I would like to look at, right? And then I know, we talk about, I, I, Council President, this is, you heard, I, I've been quiet, I've been listening. I nourished myself and broke my fast, so now I'm, I'm, I'm ready, and I got my notes. So, that's what's gonna solve this problem. At the end of the day, we have entities that do not pay taxes, that are paying less than our, our taxpayers. And sometimes you ask, do we take a bite out of the apple and do it right? Get a full bite, get, get, get everything the right way, get it done, instead of coming back here and trying to revamp? Cuz we did that, right? We, we did it a year and a half ago. We heard the residents, the, the council members heard their complaints, and we're back at it to revise it. But when we revise it, do we wanna do it right and make sure that the burden falls on the commercial properties? And that's to my council colleagues. We could always say, we're gonna look into it, but I think we should come out one shot and, and, and go there. Besides the per, impervious coverage, uh, what's the formula we use for commercial? Can't we increase that rate? Whatever the flat rate they, they may have, could we increase it more currently now? What, what's the formula that we bill them right now? So, I have the formula for the homes, right? We have a flat rate, then we have the, the CCF, and how much? What is it for commercial and nonprofits?
You could try to charge more per, if you're, since you're leaving it volumetric, you could try to charge more per gallon, but then that would also affect the residential as well. By the way, if I just could step back, I couldn't agree with more, more with what you just said, that if you could shrink that pie, I would leave it the way it is, frankly, exactly the way it is. Figure out how to shrink the pie, come back in six months, and then do the whole thing, whichever way, that would, but I couldn't agree with you more, but...
That, that, that's my, 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 um, and that, that's what I would wanna do. That, but I'm, I'm only one council member here. Sometimes, and I say, like, slow, let's slow down, and, and let's really eat, move the, shift the burden to the commercial nonprofits. And, and, but if we don't do that, cuz I know the council wants to take action, which we already are in, in our billing cycle, um, and, and Mr. CFO, if I'm not mistaken, we're on a calendar year now, correct? So, if we did this study, didn't change anything, cuz we're already halfway through. They're paying on the current formula, right?
Right.
So, if we were to go down to November-ish, December, and then start next year, January, does that fit our, our, our billing system?
Well, it would have to, we would change the whole billing next year.
For, for, for January?
Correct.
So, council colleagues, I know there's some things, so, so council colleagues, we're already mid-year on a, on our current system. Our consultant says we could shift the burden to our commercial nonprofits, where, come back November with their study on how we could shift the burden, and then bill the residents come January. And every resident will probably see a decrease. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, to residents of the city of Patterson, right now, we have an eleven-million-dollar bill on our hands. My goal, my suggestion would be, do the study, shift that eleven-million dollars to the commercial nonprofits who...
Council President?
Do not pay taxes. Council President, I have the floor right now, and I've stayed patient.
I, I understand, they asked for the floor after you finished. They're just asking.
All right, thank you. Where we shift the burden to the, to the nonprofits, what we have in front of us right now doesn't really solve anything. I'm looking at the formula, right? And, and, and to my colleagues, whatever route we did two years ago, some people got an increase, some people got a decrease, right? We switched to a flat rate, I'm gonna have half of the people that had an in, decrease, they're gonna get an increase. And then the same people that didn't call us last year are gonna call us this year. So, whatever way you put it, someone's getting an increase. E, e, unless we shrink the residential component. And Andy, you're correct. So, what I'm trying to say is, we, we did this already. We did this two years ago. We changed the formula, we had eleven-million-dollar pie, we used volume. The people that used the most volume got an increase. The people that used the less volume got a decrease. Now, we're reevaluating it. The people that use a lot of water are gonna get a decrease. The people that don't use that much get an increase. So, be ready, because when you got concerns now, the other half of the spectrum in your wards and in the city are gonna call you, cuz they're gonna get an increase. The only way we can fix this is to get our nonprofits and our commercial bases to take the burden. A nineteen-million-dollar bill, let them take twelve-million dollars, and let the residents take seven, seven million dollars.
Council President?
They don't pay taxes.
Council President?
They don't, uh, uh, to wrap up, as many of my colleagues said, and, and I, I, I actually timed some council members today that spoke, and like I said, I have my, my, my food. Um, this is something that I take very, very serious, cuz, because in my ward, there's gonna be many people, are gonna increase. And lastly, to the administration, and I agree with my council colleagues, when we shift fees, right, when we create fees, there has to be something in the tax levy that decreases the taxes. I know, we're gonna say DCA, but that's the whole point of shifting and, and putting fees on nonprofits, so that it eases the burden on taxpayers. So, my recommendation, council colleagues, is, we're already six months in, we're already build people based on the current thing. We're already six months in, let's do it right. Let's get the commercial properties and the nonprofits to pay most of the burden, shrink the residential component, and ease everyone's burden. Every taxpayer residential property. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
So, hold on a minute.
Good.
I haven't given the floor to anyone yet. Let me just say something real quick, and then I'll give the floor. Uh, many of you have asked for the floor. First of all, this is the first time in my life that I've seen anyone putting increases expenses, right? If you think about it, we moved six million dollars from the budget, right? Six million dollars from the budget, and we put it in the sewer. But then some people's bills went down. Never seen that before. It's like increasing the tax levy for the city. If the tax levy is a hundred million dollars, you were billing twenty thousand people for that hundred million dollars. Now, your tax levy is a hundred and six million. Let's say the assessment for none of the properties changed. I just don't see how some property owners will see a decrease in their taxes, right? Remember, we created a utility, we had a shortfall of six million dollars. So, in theory, Councilman Adelisiis, yes, that took place, but I would not let, that's why the council as a body took an action to dissolve this utility before, but we, because we couldn't take it anymore. When a resident comes here worried that their bill went from two-hundred-something dollars to thousands of dollars, and the issue was not addressed right away, I have an issue. I would not go this whole year again, again. I would not have this administration laugh at us again. I would not go this whole year again, leaving the same rate we had previously. Yes, I, I'm in agreement with you. We could do this, this to take the burden away from the, from the homeowners, but that would be for the next billing year. This one, we still could make an adjustment to some of the billing, cuz some people got the same bills that they got last year. Some people's bills were based on estimates, until they get the, the water reading from, from the water utility. So, we didn't go through all this hassle of driving to the state, getting all these phone calls from friends of friends that we have, getting all these phone calls from, from residents with concerns. We do this whole show, and my intent was, my intent was to get them to do what we're doing right now. Hire a consultant to analyze the billing. That's all I wanted. Not, not, not politics involved. I just wanted for them to present a possible solution. Now, my council colleague, and, and, and yourself, Andy, made a great suggestion, right? One is the, give me the terminology again. Yes. And Councilman, uh... Okay, good. And, yes, and then Councilman Adelisiis suggested right now that we shift the burden to the, uh, non-paying, uh, the, the non-taxpaying properties. Correct.
Council President?
But I would not, I would not wait another year. I would not wait another year, waiting for them to do another study, in order for us to entertain this again. Uh, there, there is no way.
Council President?
There's no way.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Um, we have, we have, we have Councilman Jackson.
Again?
He asked me before you did, Councilman. Uh, you have Councilman Mendez and Councilman Velez.
Thank you, Council President. We'll try to be brief, as brief as possible. It's a pleasure to have, uh, my former colleague, Councilman Morris, in the, in the building, because I'm sure you can recall the fuss, the extreme fuss I made when the Falls project was being done, and the, the attempt to build a city, one million... and the, the attempt to build a city, one million dollars for lead paint, uh, abatement. And also, what I argued for was, in, in, in a, an audit, a billing audit, of why we are being billed so much. You can't have people, um, turn around, tell the city, something's gonna cost ten million dollars, and it only costs them five hundred thousand dollars in materials. But with that being said, we have to make sure, the way we protect our, our voters, our, our residents, is by making sure we scrub the professionals that come to do business, whether it's contractors and things of that nature. So, relative to connection fee, this entity, Passaic Valley Sewer, bills everyone. If you want to go and do an addition, you have to pay them a connection fee, which is, which is, it will, they do nothing additional for you, they don't render any additional services. You have to pay for the upgrade in the line. If you buy a property that was under, uh, the, uh, the, the RAP, under the RAP program, which was a vacant and abandoned homes, you have to pay a reconnection fee. So every person that goes into the building department to pull a permit, they have to pay a subsequent fee to the sewer, uh, the sewer collection, uh, utility. And that fee, that fee is millions and millions of dollars. Next, if I am your steward, if we all go, I like using analogies, because our residents can, uh, uh, can understand analogies. Council members, we, we, we should make sure that if we're gonna do that, we should call a recess, so that the residents can have an opportunity to focus in on, on one specific thing. If, if we all go to a, a game together, and I volunteer to go to concession stand for everybody at the game, it's not my job to try to make money off of each person that I'm going to buy a soda for. We're not here looking to see how we can raise revenue for the city, additional revenue off the taxpayers. We do that all the time. We do that by sending inspectors for street cleaning, we do that by sending additional, well, outside municipalities do that on us by border patrolling, they hang their cops on the, on the borders of our communities. And everybody here knows that all the surrounding municipalities make a substantial amount of money for their regular budget off ticketing the residents of Patterson. But yet, we don't advocate for that, we don't advocate against that. Now, sir, I respect and appreciate the presentation for the most part, but I'm gonna say two things. First of all, the pervious surfaces, several years back, there was a law passed that anytime there's an addition done on any property, any site, that, that reduces the amount of permeable surfaces, you must account for that water how? How? How do you account for that water? When you reduce the size of your permeable surface, how do you count, account for the water?
If you reduce the amount of impervious, reduce the amount of the impervious surface, then more of the rainwater will soak into your property.
No.
Into the groundwater, into the ground.
If you reduce the amount of impervious so, surfaces, then less rainwater will soak into your property. And if you reduce that amount, if you expand a building to take up more space, that was dirt or grass.
Then more stormwater goes into the sewer.
No, sir, because I'm asking you a specific question. It is now the DCA guidelines, and it's been that way for well over ten years, that if you reduce the amount of impervious surfaces, you must acc, account for that rainwater on your property. You must put an underground tank on your property, just like Super Super put five, fif, uh, five hundred gallon tanks under their property. So now, just to insinuate that we're going to take residents and, or industrials, and tell them, if they reduce the amount of impervious surfaces, we're gonna charge you more, that's inaccurate. You cannot do that, because they already have to account for it. It's a law. All you gotta do is ca, call Jerry LaBose or the building subco official, and he'll tell you, i- if you go down to do an addition to a property, and/or if you tur, take a grass plane and put a building on it, you have to account for that rainwater, you cannot put it into the sewer system. It must remain on your property, and the way it does is you put tanks underground, that's the law. So, just the fact that you are a professional, a sewer utility consultant, and you don't even know that, and you don't know that there is no such thing of a sewer meter, that concerns me. That concerns me, because we're now telling residents, there is no such thing. I confirmed it, I text multiple industrial building owners and, I'm sorry?
There are sewer meters, sir.
Okay, if you can show me one building in this, in this entire city, I will support whatever the mayor is looking for. There is no such thing, no such thing. I just text owners of multiple supply houses, plumbing, major supply houses, Wellington Plumbing Supply, who, who, all they do is supply sewer, you, piping and plumbing for all kinds of conci, situations. There is no such thing of a sewer bill, a sewer meter that's on your property. The way they calculate it is based on your water consumption.
Can, can we call, can we call, can we call tomorrow, can we call Passaic Valley Sewer Commission tomorrow, right? That's the best entity to call.
Correct.
And just get the information, but that doesn't change what we have before us though.
Let's ask them for their meter reading department and see how they go out, cause the Passaic Valley Water Commission, they have electronic reader meters, they come by your house, boop, they can tell how much you use. So, they're, they're trying to insinuate that there's a, a meter that calculates the amount of toilet paper, paper towels, brush, everything that goes through your...
That's not what I'm saying, sir.
So, so, ho, hold on a minute, so, so Councilman, regar, regardless, no, but regardless...
Misunderstanding.
Regardless, Councilman, Councilman, hold on a minute.
You said industrial buildings have, have a meter on it, what, explain to me what...
Some do, a factory, for example, would have a, a meter on their, on their, on their effluent coming out of their, their system. Every wastewater treatment plant has a meter, every pumping station has a meter.
Lastly, we should just do a small inquiry, right? I, I, I can help lead it. We should put together a, a small group of council people, and let's do a tour. Let's go to the hospital, I'm sure Councilman Morris would love to give us a tour and show us their sewer meter. Um, we can go to the, the, the dye factory, right over here on, on Patterson Street, we can go to, that's an industrial building. Let's go visit them and see where their sewer meter is. And once we see that there is no such thing as a sewer meter, what should we think of this report?
But, but Councilman, none of, none of the rates that they're showing us, the, the bills that are being sent based on those meters is from Passaic Valley Sewer Commission. He's not, he's not producing any, any of his billing, he's not being produced...
I'm not disputing that, Council President. What I'm disputing is the fact that we pay professionals to come here and give us misguided information.
But, but before we go there...
This is a detriment, we're making detrimental financial decisions for our community, and they're giving us information that's...
But before we say that he's wrong, this is, this is what I recall. Thirteen years ago, I remember that the, the Passaic Valley Sewer Commission breaks it down by solid, am I correct? Um, they break it down in different, cause they have a processing plant.
In their plant.
Yes, but listen, regardless if they have a meter or not, Passaic Valley Sewer Commission uses a mechanism to build them. Via, it, it could be a meter or whatever they use, they have a mechanism to bill, it's called direct billing. It's not calculated by them, it's calculated by Passaic Valley Sewer Commission.
He gave us the rate.
I understand it's a meter, but I don't wanna prolong the conversation.
The rate is two point one five nine four, they gave us the rate, we know there's a rate. But my question to him was, how is it calculated?
And he's telling you, and, and Councilman, he's telling you that there is? So you can, we cannot say that he's wrong, because you, you know, I know you spoke to someone. The best thing to do, and, and myself, when I asked thirteen years ago, and I call, I made a lot of phone calls, I was told that there is a meter, cause I asked the same question as you. I said, how are they calculating this? Doesn't make sense to me, they told me they have a meter.
Can I just wrap up?
Cheers, please, thank you.
Let me wrap up. I'm a different kind of a person. Um, I should've been born in Missouri for the show me state, because I want you to show me why you're billing me this. Don't tell me, this is what it is, no. And when I know that there is nothing that exists, that is a, that's a fallacy that we should not allow the residents to take punishment for. We have to hold the professionals accountable to the information that they give us. For this gentleman to say that we should bill parking gar, uh, uh, garages or buildings that take over. So for everyone who doesn't understand this, and I, I happen to know, my major was engineering in college, so I know what permeable surfaces are and impervious, pervious surfaces are. If you take a grassland and you put cement on it, and you do that in an entire city, now all that water that's normally absorbed on that lot can no longer absorb there, cause the cement is there, or the building is there, or whatever is there. So that water now goes into the street, and then goes into the sewer. And that is what accounted for the years ago, when your, our sewers would begin to get overloaded. So what the federal government did, they put a provision within the, the, the UCC code, and requires you, if you're doing an expansion, or you're doing a, a new build, whatever you're doing, you must keep your rainwater on your property. So, to say that, it's opening up, it's, it's, it's leaving room for the municipality to receive another lawsuit. And what's gonna happen is, we'll put something in place that won't work. So, Council President, I'll, I'll let, rest it there. Hopefully that was an educational moment that everybody could benefit from, and, uh, uh, I agree fully. We need to return this thing back to a flat rate to protect the voters, to protect the residents, the taxpayers who are being burdened by this while we're, we're, and the last thing I'll say, it's very detrimental, uh, Mr. CFO, to the municipality to talk about fee shifting, or, or shifting the burden. If you're gonna shift the burden to me for something that I'm not utilizing, I can always put forward, bring forward an argument that I'm carrying an unnecessary burden for other people who are utilizing more. Unless we're gonna have a sustainable or a justifiable rate calculation to say, nonprofits, this is your rate and this is why. You just can't just arbitrarily say, we're gonna shift the burden to someone else. Uh, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council. So, so Councilmembers, um, hold on a minute, it is, it is almost nine o'clock. Let's try to make it brief, and let's try to do a recommendation of what we want.
Sure.
Because we could speak for ten hours, and maybe twenty. We have so many issues this year with the sewer that we could speak all day.
Can you leave a, leave a recommendation after me?
No, no, but Councilman Mendez, then Councilman Velez, and then Councilman Colley.
I definitely will be brief. I'll be, you know, I, I think that a, a minute will be more than enough, and I will, you know, yield my time to Councilman Velez, and that they addition a minute, but let me just say this, I mean, uh, it's very concerning, this presentation, I was expecting for something different, but before my recommendation, because let me just say this, I mean, it'll be a joke for us to put all of this together and now finding a solution, uh, to our resident. For the last two years, it's been a nightmare for our resident. They've been billed with bills that represent almost three hundred percent increase on the sewer bill. That's what's going on with this community, this is an emergency. And that's the reason why I voted against this all, you know, since the beginning. And I was not, I wasn't sitting here when I came into the public portion, I recommend the administration to look into this, to fix the problem. Two years later, they hire you as a professional to fix it, we gotta deal with, with what we have. Before my recommendation, I just had a question. The surrounding municipality that are connected with our sewer, how much are they paying? What are they paying?
I understand, I understand, there's only nineteen thousand gallons out of the total flow, so I think it's relatively low, but the recommendation is to, is to charge them the same as the residents in Patterson are paying.
There's all the municipality connected. How much are they paying, and how are you calculating that? That, that's a question that I have.
Uh, they're paying about a hundred thousand, somewhere around, it's not much.
I know, it's, it's not much, and it's unfair that it's a lot more for our Patersonians that are paying the sewer right now. The, our surrounding municipality that are using the same sewer service that the Patersonians, the taxpayers are using, they not paying their fair share, share. And that, and that's, and, and that, that's a disgrace. Now, uh, Council President, unfortunately, we cannot allow this, uh, the resident of the city of Patterson getting bills, receiving the same bills that they're getting with, with this increase. I definitely agree with, uh, the flat rate, until they come back, or we find a way to, 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 to make it better. But, but we cannot continue billing our residents with what we're doing right now, we, we just cannot.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Velez?
Yeah, I just wanna set the record clear is that we, the council, did not create him into a sewer utility. We, the council, did not create it. It was the administration that created the sewer utility and brought us to us, and we approved something that they decorated so beautiful, that at the end of the road, two years after, it creates a lot of problems, and then they shifted to us to make sure that we corrected. Now, you're in front of us, and, um, and some of those questions have been only guessing. Okay, I guessed this, I guessed that. When the taxpayers and the individuals of City Patterson had to pay their bill, they not guessing how much they had to pay. They are seeing the bill, they had to go and pay it, if not, they get a, a lien in their, in the property. So that's, that's not guessing for us, uh, and for the taxpayers. The administration is here. You know, often I speak about creating revenues that alleviate the taxpayer of the city of Patterson, especially when this sewer utility was created. Now, it's a little bit disturbing for me when I hear people saying, let's shift it to the commercial portion, down the road, and let's... Let's, let's shift it down the road to the commercial property, et cetera, et cetera. And, and, and when I hear those statements, you know, you know, I have to think, are you aware that we have a lot of barber shop that own businesses here? We have a lot of restaurants that own businesses, they have their own business, they don't rent, they are owners. We have, um, commercial stores that...
Sir, may I correct?
Uh, sir, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me finish. Now you put the word correct, so probably you're coming to correct me. But when I talk about commercial, we had to think that we have commercial individuals, uh, owners that live in Patterson, sleep in Patterson, wake up in Patterson, and they have to pay their taxes in Patterson. So that's why, in, in form or shape, we have to protect from the homeowners, from one family, all the way down to the commercial part of it, that a lot of those individuals resides in Patterson, live in Patterson, live and have business in Patterson. So, you know, I don't agree to shift the real revenues that the city have to look for, instead of going to the taxpayers in every form or shape. And, and that's really disrespectful. If I'm gonna sit here, if I'm gonna sit here looking for how going to, uh, balance the budget, or making sure the burden that goes, uh, only to, uh, the conflicts of the city, and not looking for the real revenues that alleviate and covered by, say, self-sustained, the sewer, the tax base, and we don't depend from the state, we have to look something that really benefit, um, all the way around. So, um, and I agree with Councilwoman Cotton, when she said that we just passing the, the bucket down, right? Right, can down the road, and, and in one part, if you cannot do it this way, so let's put it to the commercial part, and we passing the bucket.
That's not what I said, sir, the point I was making was that, was that...
But I agreed on something that, um, and, and, and this is one of the things I could agree is, that, um, is the option number one that you, we have here, not the arrow one, the arrow one is, this is what I want, but the one that has a, a, a flat rate. And I agree that will be beneficial, not, not only for, for those one family house, it will be beneficial to all the one across the board, that's how I see it.
Thank you, I, 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 hold on, let's hold on a minute. Uh, I'm gonna let, Andy, you know, there's a lot of com, uh, statements that were passed, which I don't agree with them, but they gotta come from your mouth. I, I, just clarify a few things that, that have been said.
Thank you, Council President.
And thank you for your patience.
I do wanna clarify, but I didn't say that the burden should be shifted, you, you know, uh, wantonly from residential to commercial. The point I was making was that if you had a, a city like Patterson with a combined sewer system, that you have impervious surface, which is usually parking lots, so I'm not talking about a barber shop, I'm talking about the same, someone has a large parking lot, the parking authority, the parking garage, a shopping mall, a large parking lot.
School district, school district.
School district. All these impervious surfaces are generating sewage, the same as flushing the toilet, but nobody's paying for it, so that means that everybody's paying for it. So all I'm saying is, is that that's the part you should look at, not...
And you could, can you explain where the water goes when it hits grass?
It sinks into the ground.
Yeah, explain that in the record.
Councilman, please ask for the floor, please.
The, the point is, is that when you pave something over, before you paved it over, the suit, the, the rain would just soak into the ground, and you don't have to, it just goes into the ground, it doesn't become sewage. But if it hits a parking area, a parking lot, um, a driveway, et cetera, it, it becomes, it goes into the sewer system and mixes with the sewage, and you have more sewage.
So, Andy, this is, this is what I'm gonna say, Andy. I, I appreciate the work that you did, right? I, I like what I see, I like the suggestions that you're making, that means we're gonna, you know, we promised the residents that this will get better. Uh, you were not involved in the previous, you know, uh, analysis that was done. Um, I don't think the intent was to reduce a two-family home to two twenty-four in the past. That was never the intent, because we, what we did in the old billing was, we made, depending on meter size, some properties, some two-family... on meter size, some properties, some two-families were paying two-twenty-four, you know, up to twenty-five thousand gallons. A three-family, depending on meter size, could have been paying two-twenty-four, depending on water consumption also. So, you have actually, so the, the, those that exceeded their twenty-five thousand dollar ga, uh, usage, actually got clever. We see people paying thousands. You have, one time you have Commissioner Earl Carr here, come in with a ridiculous bill. You had a lot of people with, you know, huge bills. I just don't understand, once you, once you reduce the bill to someone, someone else picks it up. That's what happens. But I like the recommendation from Councilman Abdalaziz. We need to find a way to switch the burden somehow responsibly, switch the burden, because nonprofits, nothing against them, they, they provide a valuable service to the community, but they don't pay taxes, and we provide all the services that we provide, we provide them with all the services that we provide to the, you know, tax-paying properties. You know, we collect their garbage, we collect, uh, we, we basically provide all the services. And I think they should pay more into the fees than, than, than they're currently paying. And that's just my opinion. I also recommend, um, the flat rate. I want the administration to take Councilman Abdalaziz's recommendation, and come back with, not, not for this year, for this year, we're gonna do the flat fee if we pass it as a council. We're gonna entertain it in the next meeting. But in January, we should be working on the, the, the other measures, yes, the other measures, to also entertain it this year, so it could take effect on January of next year. So, we're gonna entertain the flat rates for this year. Council President. And for... Councilwoman Cotton, we, we have spoke about this now for almost three hours. Yeah, so...
Is that, is that the consensus?
So, let, let's just wrap it up. The last speaker's gonna be, the last speaker is gonna be, and also, Andy, I appreciate you coming from, like, you have like a two-hour drive, and I wanna apologize to the people that have been waiting here to speak, you usually speak at eight o'clock, but I couldn't also cut Andy off halfway, let the public speak, and then him going, driving home at twelve o'clock at night, we can't do that.
That's okay, we stay here till one o'clock.
No, 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 no. Councilwoman Memes, you have the floor.
Um, just a que, just a question, there were several recommendations made on tonight. So, I'm all for looking at alternative solutions, right? Councilmembers have made recommendations or requests. How long would that take to look into those things? Will it take six months, or can you provide that data? Because some of it is just, you know, it's systemic, it's, it's data, so it should not take that long to say, here's that recommendation. So, Councilman Abdalaziz gave a recommendation, Councilman Jackson, different ones here, we gave different things that we recommended. If we say, this is what's being presented, but what do those other alternatives look like? How long will that take?
Uh, well, I, I think you had asked Councilwoman Memes for some, you know, some sample, you know, the twenty-six...
That's, that's easy, that's, yeah, that could be done by...
As far as doing the impervious surface, there's two things that we could do. One is, we could very quickly, probably within a couple of weeks, give you examples of what other cities have done, so you have an example. But to do it here in Patterson specifically, someone would have to go out, maybe the city with some, you know, to, to measure, you know, to, to know how much impervious surface, you know, each of the, how, you know, how much of the parking area is, so it would require, you know, some time to go and measure it, you know, so you would, you would need, that would be something that I would recommend having, like, you know, the Public Works Department do, rather than paying a consultant to do it, to actually measure the, the amount of impervious surfaces, and then it'd be relatively simple, once that was collected, to figure out what the cost would be.
Uh, Council...
So, uh...
DBW is too basic for measuring a parking lot.
Well, facilities should have stuff like that, if they don't, I mean, it still would...
You could gather the data, and then, once you had the data, calculating it, once the data was gathered, wouldn't take very long at all, maybe, I don't know, three to four weeks, tops, but, but it might take time to, to either find the data or collect it from the impervious surfaces.
So, the reason why I'm asking, because I'm not saying, "Not flat, yes, flat," I'm just saying, in the times past, the presentations that were presented to us were glorious, but we found out that they were not in the favor of the residents. We all saw that, that's why it went to the repeal situation here. So, we wanna make sure that what is being presented before us is facts. There, there's no in-between later on, "Well, I didn't say that, we didn't know that." So, that's why when it comes to presentations, you may not have thought of it, but sometime coming to the council, councilmembers may have different thoughts or recommendations, and then we take those into consideration, and then we say, "Here are all the considerations, this is what it looks like." Because guess what? We sat here when those residents flooded this microphone, when their bills went up from maybe four hundred dollars to eleven hundred dollars. We had, we, we were given samples of that situation, right? Residents call us, they, they Facebook, they do everything, right? So, we wanna make sure that what is presented, every option, is before us, so when we go to vote, we're voting responsibly, because we've been in this situation, as you said, for a while, right, CFO? It's been a year and a half, we went through this process, and we gotta find a resolve. But I don't wanna find a resolve without having everything on the table. We need to see these recommendations, what do they look like? It may work, it may not work, but we should do that. I, I'm one councilperson, others may feel differently, they may say, "Well, I'll go with it now, and wait six months later," but I just have a fear that what's being presented, I'm telling you, we're gonna have an issue. And then we're gonna say, "Well, why we gotta wait six months?" Because that's the process. So, I just wanna make sure we have everything we need, the data, the information is accurate. So, when we make a decision, we don't have this, this chambers flooded with residents who are like very surprised by their bill, because that has happened, and they are currently facing it right now. So, that, that's my recommendation, and I'm, I'm gonna stick with it. If they make a decision, then I'm one councilmember.
Thank you. And, and Council President, I just have a quick question for, for a point of clarity to our constituent home. I'm looking at the, at one family, the flat rate is three fifty-eight forty, correct? So, that means that, um, we're gonna divide the three fifty-eight forty into four, which is a four-quarter, correct? Total eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents per quarter. That's what a single family will be paying if we stay with a flat, correct? Now, let me go with a two-family, just, uh, just for the viewer at home, the flat rate for a single family is six hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents, correct? And, uh, for a two-family, to apologize. So, six eighty-one, sixty, divided by four-quarter, is a hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents per quarter, for, for, for two-family, right? And that's just for the viewer at home, and the three families is six, uh, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, correct?
Yes.
Correct. So, nine sixty-nine, with sixty cents, divided by four-quarter, it will be two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents for a three-family.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Cas, Council President, I have a question for you, and I got a question for you, Council President, I just...
You have a question for me?
Yes.
Yes, what's the question?
Everything has a dominant effect in the city of Patterson, you know, and, and, and my colleague, and you, you said that you praised the recommendation of Abdalaziz. I recall that when Abdalaziz was campaigning, he was talking about being sustainable in sewer, and, you know, and all that stuff. Now, where we at right now, he supported this from the beginning, way before being a council. Now, Council, Council President, you know, the statement about shifting the burden to the commercial, just get ready, if you're gonna be happy, Al, and you're gonna be happy, Council President, that if we paying for a haircut, fifteen dollars is gonna be twenty dollars, for a coffee, four dollars is gonna be two dollars...
That's your question?
Hold on, no, no.
Ask the question.
My question is...
You're making a statement.
Hold on, for be able to, to do this question, I have to elaborate why I'm coming from. If you're telling me to shift the burden to the commercial, and I'm talking about barber shop, restaurants, uh, people that, uh, have business in Patterson, so get ready, if you happy, if the business owner be... Administration's in charge to make sure that we don't create burdens to our taxpayer. So, now, we, the council, are recommended to shift it to the commercial, when we defend, we, we defend the small businesses in the city of Patterson, restaurant, barber shop, they live in Patterson. So, if you happy with that, let's pay more for the haircut, let's pay more for our rents.
Councilman, can you give me the opportunity now?
So, it has a dominant effect, when we are saying that we are shifting it to the commercial...
Councilman, you're, you're repeating the same thing, you said the same thing like five times, right? And we understand what you said.
And I gotta repeat it every time, because you shifted it to the commercial.
Councilman, Councilman, hear us out for a minute. You're only picking what you wanna hear, and you wanna create a story, or you wanna create something that was never said. What we said was, and Andy's right here...
Oh, look at him.
What we said is, and, and I'm not gonna repeat what Councilman Abdalaziz said, what we're looking to do is, when we first created the utility, was, so some of the burden, right, a lot of the burden was gonna be shifted to entities that were not paying taxes, right? We were paying six million dollars in sewer fees that was included in the tax bill. By creating a utility, we were gonna shift it. What was said, and what was recommended by Andy, is that it might be another mechanism that we could use, where we could shift some of the nineteen million dollars that we need to collect, we might be able to collect some from those surfaces that are not being, that are not being charged, because Passaic Valley Sewer Commission charges, believe it or not, for all the water that goes through the sewer.
Yes.
Correct? So, I don't wanna hear tomorrow, people viewing this meeting, that Councilman Rivera and Councilman Abdalaziz are not pro-business, because that's not what I said. What, I'm just looking for solutions, I'm not the councilmember here, I've been here for three years, I'm not the one to just complain. Every time I complain, I offer a solution. You have a lot of councilmembers, and if it doesn't apply to you, don't get offended. You have a lot of councilmembers that like to complain year after year after year, but they can never present a solution, and I didn't say any names, so I don't wanna hear any response. So, if it doesn't apply to you, if the shoe doesn't fit, don't respond, please. So, Councilman, um, Velez, I could appreciate, because I'm the first one to fight for the, for the business owners every time there's an issue, but don't try to turn this into a political thing now. All we trying to do is address the issue. For the time being, my recommendation is just mine, and I heard some of the colleagues, we're gonna entertain the flat, because what took place this past year is, a two-family rate actually went down to two-twenty-four, the beginning number. I've never seen that before. It went down to two hundred and twenty-four dollars, when they were paying four-twenty-six for many years. Even when Councilman Morris was here, they were paying four-twenty-six, and this administration brought it down to two-twenty-four. Now, Andy, I wanna ask you a question, for those viewers at home, a simple question. I'm gonna play dumb right now. If you have to raise, Andy, nineteen million dollars, and you, and you now have about seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen properties, starting their billing at two-twenty-four when they were paying four-twenty-six, those were the two-family homes, they were paying, pay attention, four-twenty-six, before we created the utility. The administration made most of them, depending on meter size, started at two-twenty-four. That means, any of those properties that did not exceed the twenty-five thousand dollar, I mean, twenty-five thousand gallon, they will only pay two-twenty-four. Andy, let me ask you a question. If a thousand of those properties didn't exceed the twenty-five thousand gallon, who will pick up the burden of the difference?
The other property.
The others, right? And this is what we're having right here. I'm not here to increase residents' fees, I'm here to try to make sure that when you put your budget together at home, you know that that's gonna be your budget. You, if you budget two-twenty-four, and your bill comes from fifteen hundred, then you have an issue. Also, those that didn't see an increase, because their bill was actually two-twenty-four, that doesn't mean that in the upcoming years, the bill could not be higher, because if they exceed the twenty-five thousand, uh, gallon, their bill will go up tremendously. And this is what I'm trying to avoid. Now, once again, I entertain the flat rate, but I, I'm gonna ask this administration, please, entertain what Councilman Abdalaziz recommended, and what Andy recommended, presented to us, and maybe the recommendation from Abdalaziz and Andy, we will be able to even reduce, maybe, right? Reduce the rates for the residential in the next, uh, next January.
Can I just, Council President, thank you, just one thing on that.
I think, Councilman, go ahead.
There were very, it was very rare that there were two-family homes that did not have volume usage that was more in line with what they paid prior. Very, very rare.
Well, we just wanna be very factual about that. No, no, that's fine, and I wanna be factual, but you know what's, you know what's, let me, let me just say something. You could be factual without presenting that information to us, but in, in, in a previous meeting, I'm not saying you're wrong, but in a previous meeting, the CFO picked the street himself to make the point, and a lot of those two families, actually, you saw the numbers, some of them went down, actually.
Some of them did go down, but again, we had, the whole system had, was...
I, I understand, but listen, we don't have to discuss what took place before, Madam BA.
I, I know, I agree, but I just wanted to, Councilman Velez, earlier, and I've been trying to just say this, I know he, he was focusing earlier on that idea that this, the one with the blue arrow was what the administration wanted, that, what, the blue arrow is more the compromise solution, and I know there's been lots of conversation about that, that you're pitting the blue arrow versus the flat, but really, the Raftella's report is the, and what Andy had said from the beginning, was the, the usage one, and that's, that's the equity one. We, we feel the blue, the arrow, the hybrid is the compromise. I just wanted to be clear.
Three, three years later, we still saying that the... But that's besides the point. The nine members feel differently than two people, or three from the administration. Councilman Abdalaziz.
Thank you, Council President.
And then we're gonna, and then we're gonna wrap it up, we're gonna thank Andy for the presentation, and we're gonna have the public portion, no more discussions after that, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, so I, I'm gonna wrap it up very brief. My name was called, and my recommendation was put out there. So, to my colleague from the fifth ward, let me explain to you, when you talk about commercial and nonprofits, absolutely, the nonprofits should be paying their fair share. One-point-something billion dollars of property that's tax-exempt, and that the burden falls on the taxpayers, and asking them to pick up a sewer bill, absolutely, that should be done for the residents of the city of Patterson. And when we talk about, um, impervious coverage, name me a barber shop that has a fifty-car parking lot? Name me a park, name, name, I don't know what barber shop you go to that has fifty-car parking. Andy, I'm not trying to be sarcastic here, I wanna explain what the res, what this means to residents. When the rain falls on your front lawn, the water goes into groundwater. I'll give a little sign, I'm not a, I'm not a science teacher, but I think I learned something in Patterson Public School System, right? The water goes into groundwater, we don't get charged for that water. And Councilman the fifth ward, you got many parking lots in your ward, many parking garages, and I'm gonna use a nonprofit like the NJCDC, right? Right on Spruce Street, they have a big strip of a parking, the water on Route Nineteen hits the grass, goes into groundwater. When the water hits that parking lot, that water goes right into the sewer, we get charged for it, and the, and the nonprofits, and the people that have these big parking lots do not pay...
They own, they own many buildings, too.
I didn't wanna go there. So, when we hear that you're gonna pay sixteen dollars for a Big Mac, that, that's absolutely false, let's not scare the residents, it scare people that that's what's gonna happen. I don't, like I said, I don't know, a bodega, a mom-and-pop store, a barber shop that has a fifty-car parking, uh, uh, parking lot, or driveway, so this doesn't affect the small business owners, this affects the industry that have most of the land, the nonprofits that have most of the land, the schools, St. Joe's, I know we have the tax credit, Councilman Morris, I know you guys have a lot of parking lot space, but this is a way to get them to pay a little bit more. So, this is going out throughout the whole state, this is, this is something, I think the legislature just passed not too long ago, because I follow, right, Andy, this, twenty nineteen, the legislature down in Trenton did this, for cities to take the burden off of their residents. And Councilman Velez, you're absolutely right, you could say that over and over again. Councilman Al Abdalaziz is gonna fight for the residents non-stop, and make sure that the burden's off of their plate and everyone else's. Thank you, Council President.
That's real political.
Thank you, Councilman.
That's real political.
Andy, thank you very much for your presentation, hopefully, you know, I appreciate what you did tonight, hopefully you could, the administration could take the recommendation from the council, and let's continue to work for the benefit of the residents, right?
And Council President, thank you for affording this opportunity to present these alternatives, I asked all councilmembers to analyze it thoroughly, I know for some of you, this may be the first time we're presenting this via PowerPoint, so the responsible thing to do is to make sure that you've taken into consideration every scenario comparison that has been compiled in Andy's very thorough review.
So, tha, thank you for entertaining, thank you for hiring Andy, and then, you know, hopefully, we could make some changes, and next year, we could always, you know, make some further reductions. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Now, we're gonna, we're gonna, thank you, thank you, Andy. We're gonna open the, the public portion at this time, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President, at this time, the public portion is, is now open, we have four speakers, the first speaker is Mr. Coleman. Mr. Coleman, please state your name and address for the record.
How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
Four speakers, Mr. Coleman, I don't think he's here, I haven't seen him.
Could we go to the next speaker?
Okay, next speaker is Ms. Maria Rodriguez.
Hi, good evening.
Hold on, hold on, let me turn the mic for you. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I know that this doesn't pertain to what's happening tonight. I did miss the meeting that happened yesterday regarding a 16 to 17 apartment building that they're trying to build in front of my house, which is in Patterson on Atlantic Street. And as a concerned citizen, it's a residential. Uh, most of the houses there all have driveways. There's hardly no parking space in the streets. There's about six to seven, uh, handicap zones. And for them to try and actually try and approve something like this on a residential street, where there's, first of all, garbage is, is horrible. Being picked up whenever you call and complain. TVs always left in front of our streets, who, other people just come and dump them, especially across the street where this parking lot is, or is a, it was a residential. And the city doesn't even pick it up. On top of that, recycling is horrible. I mean, so can you imagine a 16-apartment building in front of my house, the magnitude of garbage? Where are people even going to park? So, for the administration, I don't even know if it's been approved or not to approve something like this and not even listen to what the residents want to say. I think it's very bad, very bad.
What is the address?
I'm sorry?
St. Joseph Atlantic Street.
The address is, my address is 165 Atlantic Street in Patterson.
Once, the project 168 Atlantic Street.
The property that they're trying to build is actually three, three, actually, three lots together. It was a one-family home there. And now, they're trying to build a 16 to sorry, 17 apartments there.
What board is that?
On top of that, they're even requesting that they're even going to need 16 parking space from the street. There isn't none.
What board is entertaining that, Council President? No board, boards, zoning, no planning, which one? I know it's in the second word. Who was, who's entertaining, the board, what board?
Planning.
Oh, planning board.
Planning.
Do you, you, do you address, did they send you a letter?
I just got the letter on Saturday, and the meeting was, I got the letter Saturday, and the board meeting was Monday.
Councilman, um, let, this letter finish, and then we could ask, we could put it to the side and ask whatever questions we need to ask.
What about she want to put it on the record?
She's putting whatever she needs to put on the record right now, Councilman.
And what about we want to put something on the record?
Councilman, please, we never do this. I, I apologize.
That's okay, that's fine.
Some council members have been here for years, and they understand the protocol, but they just want to change it. I apologize.
No problem.
Please continue. Madam Clerk, could you allow her more time, please?
Yes, I had stopped her time, Council President.
Thank you.
My concern is, on top of that, is it's a, it's a small, one-way street going down. I have buses going down through there. I mean, what are they going to put? They're going to put a bus stop eventually in our street? I mean, I think it's just so unfair. I could see building a two-family home, maybe even three apartments, but 16 to 17? No parking underneath. They're actually trying to build a gym underneath the apartment building, a laundry facility. I mean, imagine all that garbage. Our garbage is enough. Imagine a 16 to 17 apartment. It's just so unfair. I think it's just, I think that they should even have another meeting where concerned citizens can actually come and go against it. I'm against it, I'm, I'm really, I, I pay taxes. I pay a lot of that tax. I have a two-family home. You know, it's, I think it's just for the administration to actually even think about approving something, I think this is just wrong, completely wrong.
Thank you, we'll address it after all the speakers speak. I think there's two more speakers.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, um, you're done, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker is Ramon Ruiz. Ramon?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Ramon Ruiz. Uh, I live at 199 Richmond Avenue, Patterson, Hillcrest Section, they call it. Uh, I'm just going to reach a couple of things off the list fast, because I don't want to waste, uh, take up anybody's time. My concerns is recycling, what she said. Uh, it's not like in the past, they used to pick it up on time. I understand, and I don't know, I heard that maybe a lot of these people who pick up recycling got sick because of the COVID, which we're dealing with. But is there other people that pick up recycling to replace those that do, that can't make it to work? Because it's ridiculous, like for two, between two and four weeks, recycling is not picked up, and then you're building more recycling, and then you're going to use your garbage cans to pile up more recycling. And then, that's one problem, which she brought up across, people leaving, probably dumping like TVs or so, across, probably they, they had it in front of their house, and then they dump it across the street, like in empty lots or whatever. I see that every day when I walk, when I go to work. I see garbage all over the place, and many streets is not picked up. Uh, on Levine Street, I noticed, they're building these huge, uh, apartment buildings. I understand, across the street from now in the corner of Levine and Main Street, there's a big lot, but when you pass by, you see all the garbage on the side. So, why is it that these people, just like also, in front of certain blocks, there's so much garbage in the street, and it's not cleaned up? So, it makes the city look dirty, which is a big concern of mine, you know? Some areas, everybody, like Hillcrest, everybody cleans up, you don't see that much garbage. But these places where there are like a lot of commercials, and also like bodegas and other stores, you see all this garbage. People should, maybe it's just a message to them, clean your property, instead of all that garbage builder. Can you imagine if you picked up all that garbage from all that whole area, how much it's probably going to be? Probably in the tons. But it sits there. And what does it do? A lot of that garbage goes into the sewer, blocks the sewer, and the streets get flooded. Uh, another thing, uh, this, this morning, my wife complained to me about, um, on Hillcrest, these kids with ATVs and all that, popping willies going all the way around. Called the Patterson Police, they didn't respond. They said, we'll send somebody, we'll send somebody. There were times I used to oversee a police car roaming around. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that these kids that drive these ATVs or whatever, they're not registered. Can you imagine popping willies going across and going in in front of somebody's car, somebody getting hurt? What are they going to do? Probably take off. Because you have no way to identify who owns that ATV or whatever. This is not good. So, hopefully, you can get more police doing rounds and stuff to try to catch these people, take them off the street. But I've seen this in New York City. It's bad. You're talking about 30, 20, 50 kids and motorcycles. And what happens when they hit somebody, they start fighting, they beat them. They come and hurt people, and they just take off. Takes a long time to catch up to them. That's one of my biggest concerns about City of Patterson, what I just said to you. I want to thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, former Councilman Morris.
All rise.
He'll, seen now, moved close.
It's so nice to see you, Councilman Morris.
It's good to be seen. I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to see you, each of you in action this evening, and it brings back some fond memories. I wasn't going to speak at the public portion, but I do have a comment with regard to the sewer taxes. Um, and in a rare occasion, I have to agree somewhat with, uh, Councilman Jackson with regard to impervious coverage. Most new developments, um, typically, zoning requires 80% of impervious coverage, which means the structure should take about 8% of the property, leave 20% for stormwater runoff. All right. They have to do those calculations to make sure that they're compliant with that requirement. So, if you're going to assess them a fee with regards to runoff, right? You may be opening yourself up for some litigation, because unless you can prove they are actually adding additional runoff in which they had already are compliant with regard to the, the calculation. So, it's just some food for thought. For instance, St. Joseph's was mentioned. St. Joseph's does have very large park instructions and so forth, but they were also required to put in retaining pits for that stormwater runoff. So, that's all I would like to share with my esteemed colleagues. I still consider each and every one of you colleagues, and continue doing the people's work. Thank you.
Round of applause for.
I look like the same suit you had on the last time you was here.
Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Actually, it's not the same one, though.
Mr. President, there's no other speaker on the public portion.
Move to close.
Council President. Moved by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to close the public portion. Councilman Abdalisi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
I can't just give a quick yes on this one, Madam Clerk. I, I will be as brief as possible. So, to the resident, your concerns are heard. You're absolutely right. So, with regard to enforcement, you know, I, I urge you to lean on the body that is responsible for enforcement. The, this administration reduced the force in our Community Improvements Department, which reduced the amount of, of accountable representatives for the administration to go out and write summances for those violations that you're talking about. And yes, please urge your residents to come forward and, and demand what you guys expect. It's unfortunate that all of this stuff is being forced on people who've been here for multiple, multiple, multiple decades, multiple years, who have been carrying the burden, paying these taxes. It's not fair. So, um, you know, you have my full support. Please keep me posted on how things go. You guys should be informed formally, and beware of the adjournment, because what they normally do is adjourn the meeting the second go-around. You don't have to send out those, uh, those petitions to, to let you know when the meetings are, are. And, you know, a lot of, sometimes, we, we forget. So, relative to Councilman, um, uh, uh, Morris's comment, I, 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 you know, enjoy the opportunity to be able to, uh, to, you know, bring some, shed some light on, and then have it reinforced by yourself. So, I want to try that once more. Um, Councilman of the Sixth, just regarded, uh, spoke about a, a, the inability of a barber shop being impacted by those presumed assessed fees. Well, if you have a barber shop that happens to be in a large supermarket complex, and they have triple-net fees associated with their rental, that means their triple-net would be impacted by an additional service fee. So, Councilman Velez, to your point, yes, a barber shop would in fact have increases in their rent because their triple-net, which the councilman should understand what triple-net is, especially being in the sixth with all that commercial development going on, the triple-net would increase their, their burden to the, uh, tax burden to the city. So, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Khalid?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I, uh, I vote, um, Ms. Rodriguez, um, the project for 164, 168 Atlantic Street, you was in the planning board last night, actually, and I just got the message that it was passed. And a lot of the, yes, it was passed. And the board, there's so much that the council member we could do. The planning board is, uh, is, all of the commissioners are appointed by the administration, by the mayor. They are the one who approve or disapprove of these projects. Uh, that's one thing. Another thing, I just, uh, receiving text messages, the most of the residents in that area did not get the notices. Um, Council President just received that, um, uh, text message as well. I would like the BA and the administration to please, uh, loo, look into it, please. And my vote is yes to, uh, close the public portion.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good to see you, Councilman Morris.
Councilman Mendez?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, um, before my vote, definitely, it's great to see my Councilman Morris in, in the room tonight. Um, tried to keep up, you know, with your tie, you know, the color, you know? The combination, you know, we always competing. I don't have anybody else to compete, you know? Council President, I was expecting Council President to be, you know, more. And Councilman Velez, he's, he's getting, he's getting in there. But, but, but nevertheless, let me get into, into, into all serious note. It's good to see you. I, I really want to take the time to thank you for what St. Joseph's Hospital has been doing in terms of the vaccination. I received a phone call from you, and I had the opportunity to, um, send a lot of Patersonians to the St. Joseph's Hospital. You have a great staff there, and it was incredible. Over close to 500 people, I sent as many people, and they definitely took care, they got vaccinated. So, I really want to thank you and put it, and put that on record. Um, in another note, going into the sewer, um, discussion that we have, I think that, I, I was a little bit confused because I hear the BA and some of the council members talking about that some of the two-family has a reduction. I was like, I would like to see those bills, because I, I was getting phone calls left and right. I never see a two-family getting a decrease on the sewer bill under the new formula. I never, and I would like to see it on, at this time. And let me just say this, the only reason why I'm inclining to support the fixed rate is because I know that a single family, it will pay every quarter $89.60. If they receive a bill for $100, it's, it's, it's incorrect, and they will have the right to fight. That's the only reason why I will go for the flat rate for now. I was not impressed with the presentation. It was a lot of misinformation on the presentation, and it have to be corrected. Definitely have to be corrected. He was inaccurate in a lot of the things. And it, and it's a shame that we have the homeowner, the taxpayer of the City of Patterson waiting for two years for us to receive misinformation and not getting prepared. And when I ask about the amount of money that our neighboring town are paying, I was expecting to get a solid number, because I know that they're not paying the fair share. And at the same time, we have our homeowner getting hit with, uh, incre- incredible, uh, bill that reflect over 100% increase in a single family, two-family, three-family, and proving a wrong on that. So, that's the only reason why I'm going to say that we have to go for the flat and, and get it, get an analysis to correct the problem, because I also don't agree that we have to just build the commercial , um, just to pass the burden on that. It have to be an analysis, and it have to be, and the number have to make sense. Now, um, to the administration, to the chair, to Madam BA, Now to the administration, to the chair, to Madam BA. Yesterday, we have our third ward town hall meeting. And I really want to thank all the third ward resident for participating on that. It was incredible, the amount of people that we have. And the recycling issues, it was one of the hottest topic after public safety. But BA, we have to stop giving the excuse to our taxpayer that we don't have enough manpower, that we got five people, six, seven people sick. Listen, we know this. People have the right to take vacation. People get sick. Now, the administration responsibility is to come up with a plan, with that idea. And this time that we're leaving, we have to start ticking outside the box. Now, we have Harris Val, who is here in the room. My recommendation for the administration is to start looking for a staffing company. A lot of the entity, even doctor's office, when they need an assistant, they call the staffing agency and they get any staff that they want to replace the other person. So my formal request with administration to fix the problem of the recycling is to do the homework, do the work and bring a staffing company who's going to be able to replace the staff that we need to provide the service that our resident are paying for. That's my request. And that will stop the excuses that we have that, oh, we missing five staff. We missing seven. And that's something definitely doable. That we don't need to work with any additional compensation, just the time that they work for the city until we get those permanent employee back on track. So that's my recommendation to fix the problem with the recycling that we have. That is not only in the third ward, it's city-wise. The city is filthy. People, they taking the recycling out and they have to put it back in. And by, to all the residents, if they don't pick up your recycling today, which is Tuesday, you have to leave it outside because the responsibility and what they have to do is that, by the next day, I'm wrapping up. I'm wrapping up.
Thank you.
This is a very hot topic. So just for the viewer and the people that, you know, for the speaker, if they don't pick up your recycling today, leave it outside because they have to go out the very next day and pick that up. The route has to start when they finish. So just to let you know and all the viewer, because I know there's a lot of concern and it's been months with the same situation. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Before we continue, Madam Clerk, so are you setting up the two minutes?
I am just doing it now.
Thank you, thank you very much.
No, put it after, put it after I finish.
Okay, okay. Council members, let's not be childish, right? We know what we have, our, I just got to laugh. We know we have two minutes while we voting. It doesn't matter if Madam Clerk forgot to set up the two minutes or not. Now you're going to say Councilman Mendez spoke for three or four minutes? I want three or four minutes? No, that wasn't the intent. It was just an oversight. You have two minutes. Please, let's continue. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mendez, your turn.
Council President, we went off for three hours. There's no time limit, but nevertheless, I don't want to digress. To the residents that have come out on tonight, first of all, I always appreciate when our residents come out to speak on behalf of the concerns. When you talk about the trash, the recycling, the ATV. Someone just called me today, they are very scared that someone is going to get hurt very badly. We have streets that are newly paved. So on East 26th Street, between 7th and 8th Ave, someone called me to come and see the ATVs that are going through that street where they have markings and wheelies. You can see the marking on the new pavement of the streets where they are up and down. They're in East Side Park. They're having like a big party in East Side Park. They're just out there and then they drive off, helmets, no helmets. And it's a very scary situation. So to our administration, please, let's look into the concerns of these residents. I heard the situation of what happened. And I always tell people, go to the meetings. Go to the meetings when they're approving these properties on these residential areas. Go to the meetings. If it doesn't get resolved at that point, you can always take them to court. It's not final because it's approved by the board. You can take them to court and you can fight it in court because there are linear laws in place that speak to what should be in that particular area. If it's zoned at R1, whatever zone. And based on that, the judge will look into the districting of the area. He will look into what's on the block and they can rule in your favor. So just because it's approved does not mean it is final. I was on the board, I know the law. So make sure you check into that. That's something, and get your residents on the block. Knock on their doors, give them some flyers, get them on board. And then you do, court is virtual, so you can do that as well. Also, tonight, we did, had a discussion about the sewer. So I hope and pray that those recommendations that I made are adhered to, that we can get that information before we take a vote so that every council member, you know, the things that we requested, that they are absolutely before each and every one of the council members. That is not just what a few are saying, but we need to look into every person. Madam BA? Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you so much. My vote is maybe. No, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. It was a joke when they say put the time after Mendez. So Councilman Jackson, thank you for highlighting what I meant to say about the commercial part. You know, I hope my colleague from the sixth ward understand that, you know, we all depend, the condition out there depends on those individuals that really live in the city of Patterson and want to do business in the city of Patterson. You know, the resident from Atlantic Street is correct. She took that line from me regarding the legal part. Talk to your attorneys, get together the neighbor, one or two, it's not enough. All of them in the same block, I guess they will agree of your objection. And it's not final, you know, they could bring it back to the board. Especially if there was a lot of variances in the situation that probably was not justified. And there was no participation from the public or objectors. So you could look into that venue before they start digging unless they dig out tomorrow. Regarding the motorcycle, listen, I think Councilman Jackson being so vocal, all of us being vocal with the police regarding the motorcycles and the kids riding up and down the street and making this turbo noise and going even against the sidewalk, against the traffic and on top of the sidewalk. Rixing their own life. And the first thing they come back to us is, turn to general guidelines. They cannot even chase them. The other day, I put a picture and I find it to put it now, you know, to make sure. But in other countries that are limited in resources, you had to see how many tow trucks they have. Councilman Rivera could testify this. In Dominican Republic, I met tow twenty, thirty every day from the roads. And you don't see the cops jumping on them, throwing shooting at them or whatever. They just stopping in the road and they don't have the paperwork, they tow them. That's a good sound. But last but not least, I just want to clarify something. Councilman Mendez, I wish you could read the tag on my suits. But I've been dressing well way before sitting in the council. I don't have to compete with no one how I dress because I look, anyway, I look better. Thank you, Councilman Mendez. I know you're trying to mitigate me because I was born first as a politician, but that's okay. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. President?
So, once again, I hear the public's concern pertaining to the recycling. My colleagues already gave a recommendation. I hear your concerns pertaining to the development in your area. I'm sure that something could be done about it. Just got to, you know, get the assistance, speak to administration. We already asked them to look into it. I don't agree with some of the comments passed about inaccurate information. You might not be happy with some of the things in the presentation. But remember, we, some of us took an action not long ago where we voted to dissolve the whole utility. And it passed with almost unanimous votes. Only like two, two people probably voted against doing, taking that measure. So it did pass. And at least, you know, I was one of the ones that actually proposed it. But the intent was for the administration to act. And I'm happy that they did, you know, it goes a long way, your action. We're here to work together. But when we hear the outcry from the residents and no action is taken, then we got to take drastic measures. Some people at the state was viewing me as, you know, someone that was doing, taking an action that was not beneficial to the city financially. But I knew for sure it was beneficial to the residents, to their needs. The administration presented one time some properties, you know, two family used to pay 426 before. We started at 224. And if, for whatever reason, let's say an apartment was empty or maybe only two people, one person lived in the second floor and maybe two lived in the, you know, first floor or three. Or let's just say that they don't consume too much water. That means that property will see a decrease of almost $200. Now, the rest of the residents will pick it up. So we cannot have the fluctuation. You have, and I don't mean to be repetitious, you cannot have a safe valley water commission billing also. Our billing cannot depend on their billing. They already have shown that they have too many mistakes. And we cannot afford this. You know, even if it's 10% of the bills that are incorrect. 10% out of 20,000 plus properties, that's about 2,000 properties. And I'm just throwing a percentage. I'm not saying those are the numbers. I'm, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction. We are going to continue to work on it to see if we could reduce the bills further. But I think the way to go is to do the flat rate. And we're going to move it along for next meeting and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is nine in favor, none against. The public portion is now approved.
Council President? Council President, if I can quickly just say something for the record, for Madam Clerk and for the BA. It's my understanding, I heard Ms. Rodriguez say that she received the notice on Saturday. So I don't know who is supposed to send those notices out. I don't think it's our clerk. I think it's the board secretary. So Madam Clerk, to the BA as well, that they need to do a better job with sending notifications so that way they can have more presence.
The board secretary doesn't.
Council President?
Listen, we already spoke about this, hold on a minute. We already spoke about this. We already made it clear that even some people didn't get it. I got text messages here from people that didn't get the notice. Some of them get it late, some of them didn't get it. I don't want to, I want to entertain the items on the agenda. Let's not continue to entertain this. Let's just not, please.
Council President, very quickly, I don't want to entertain it. What I would like to do is put a request through the chair to Corporation Council to give us a report on the timestamped information of when those notices were sent out and to whom they were sent out, if that's possible.
Thank you.
We should be accountable to the residents' concerns. And if the resident is saying they was not properly noticed, that puts the municipality in a vulnerable position. Lastly, very quickly, I don't think it is proper that we should be influencing the residents or encouraging the residents to have to go out, hire an attorney, take on additional burden, that we have the capacity to make sure that their best interests are being taken care of. So if we can get that report, please, with regard to this property and if there's any information that you need, Corporation Council, I'll make sure we supply it so we can see if they were noticed properly.
Good point, Councilman. We're going to entertain Health and Human Services, eighteen and twenty. Council President?
Yes.
I recommend. Eighteen and nineteen go to consent. So eighteen and nineteen go on consent. If there's no questions?
No.
Let's do, Madam Clerk, let's do public works.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Sure. Council President, on DPW, all the twenty-eight, twenty-nine went through the committee. Thirty, they all could go on consent. I have no problem with that.
So twenty-eight and twenty-nine on consent?
Council President?
Hold on a minute.
This is pertaining to.
I'm going to give you the floor. Which recommendation you made?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, they could go on consent.
Okay. Hold on a minute, let's not go there yet. Councilman Davila? While you look, if you're not ready yet, just make a comment.
No, 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 I'm looking.
No, make a comment to save time, to save time.
I'm part of the committee as well, but I know that I had recommended for an item to come back to the workshop.
So which item?
Which was the fifteen, the fifteen-minute parking, right?
That's on first reading.
That will be an ordinance.
Okay, no, 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 I just want, that's part of DPW. I want to just say that, you know, I'm okay with moving forward because I know one of the questions was that it was a driveway and it isn't.
We're going to entertain that one later. That's a first reading ordinance.
I understand, Council President, but it's part of DPW. We have the director here, we should address all of them.
I understand. But right now, we call for twenty-eight to thirty. If we could continue to discuss DPW, but right now his recommendation, right now, his recommendation is twenty-eight through thirty. So let's take care of those first and we could discuss the others. I have a question with number twenty-eight.
Yes.
This is the same thing again, right? We basically exceeded the contract amount? And we're coming back to re, it's a confirm, yeah, rectifying the contract?
Yeah, this is, we have a memo in your packet to go along with the resolution. What happened was we needed some vehicles fixed. We went out to bid for the contract. No one bid it on the first round. We went back out. There were some discrepancies with the bids. Nobody bid it. It went about like four times to go out to bid. Finally, we got a contractor now after all this time.
But I think it was my understanding that if you go to bid twice and nobody bids, I think that the purchasing agents could try to negotiate. Am I incorrect? Do you want to come over, please? Thank you, Harry.
Good evening, Council President, Council members.
Good evening.
You're correct. Purchasing law allow that. After two intense, two bids, regardless of the results, we can negotiate. In this particular case, it started with the whole city, then became the police department and DPW, and then became only DPW fleet. So it wasn't a constant bid. I cannot negotiate based on.
Two different bids.
So you're correct. They start to call for that, but in this particular case, we can.
So, yeah, this time you couldn't do it because the bid changed.
Exactly.
Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you, the director also. So we're going to put those on consent. So twenty-eight through thirty on consent.
Correct.
We also, let's go to the, let's entertain the first reading ordinances that are also DPW. That way we don't. So we have, Madam Clerk, I believe it's number?
Number five.
Five through?
Yeah, for first reading, five through seven.
Five through seven.
Council President?
For public works.
I have a question on number six.
So Councilman Davila?
I actually would like to table this one, put it back. I, if you go down Eleventh Ave, you have twenty-seven, you have twenty-six, you have thirty, like you're going to be. Twenty-six, twenty-eight and thirty. I come down that route every day, okay? And I don't see why we should have a stop sign in every other block.
Council President?
Councilman Mendez, hold on a minute. So.
A four-way stop at that, I'm sorry.
So remember, Council members. We had this discussion all the time because we're nine of us, right? We're not all going to agree on where stop signs should be. The question that I asked previously is, did our traffic engineer look into this one?
Yes.
Council President?
So that's key. And I'm not just speaking right now, Councilman Mendez. But there was one part that a lot of people felt the same way and they have work wonders, which is Trenton Ave. A lot of people said that Trenton Ave, you cannot have stop signs for many years. Councilman Abdelizgi insisted and people are loving it. I'm used to them. They're great. People not speeding. So just because we have gotten used to certain streets, listen, a traffic engineer looked into it?
I know, but I want to see what the traffic engineer said about it.
Okay, so Councilman Mendez, I want your input.
Yes, Council President, thank you. And I know the director is going to speak after. I just want to say this. This four-way stop sign on Eleventh Avenue and East thirty, just based, it's been recommended by the traffic engineer based on the incredible amount of accident that has been going out in that corner for years. The resident of that area, they've been crying for years for the four-way stop sign on that location and we finally going to get it done. Even the house on the corner going down Eleventh Avenue and East thirty, they spent an incredible amount of money putting a fence, putting metal in front of their, in front of their property because they take that fence, they destroy that fence every other week with the amount of accident that is happening. And also, in Eleventh Avenue, I'm looking forward for more protection on Eleventh Avenue by the twenty-five speed limit on the area because it's so unacceptable what has been going on in that section. We have a school twenty sits right down to the next block and people speeding like there's no control. But specifically on Eleventh Avenue and East thirty, the amount of accident, it's just been out of control. Every week, I would receive phone calls and the resident of that area, they crying for that.
First reading, Council President? So we're going to move the three items to first reading, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes.
And those items are going, is that it for public works?
Um.
Is that it for public works?
That's my understanding.
So Council President, and I know we're at a workshop, Director, please. I cannot, I'll be doing a disservice to the residents of my ward and probably the whole city if I don't bring this up. If I could, please, it is a public works item. It's about recycling. This is the first public meeting that we've had when it comes to recycling. Last week and the weeks prior, and I want to put a solution on the record, at least for what I've stated, and I'm going to do it. I spoke to the BA, spoke to the mayor, and I think I've had a conversation with director, but I want to address it here, Council President. It is a discussion item. The recycling has been, and it's across all, I just saw the email that Phyllis sent us, said with all these complaints that the city clerk's office received. So Council President, the recycling is something that needs to be done. My solution is, you cannot continue. I remember the last budget cycle and I've read the Facebook comments. I don't comment on Facebook. This council funded everything. This council funded the full-time employees. We bought the new trucks, right? I remember somebody from the machine put a picture of a great new truck. We did our part and it's still not working. At the end of the day, we need to hold someone accountable. And I'll be the first to say, you know what, maybe we should privatize. Maybe we should privatize recycling. If we can't handle it and people are calling now, maybe they should, we could go a different route. And I know some of my council colleagues, that's not a decision you guys may want to make. I've already put something on the floor, Council President, to the administration. If this council wants to see how privatization works, I will gladly recommend that the sixth ward utilize private recycling and it could be the pilot program for our recycling pickup and we'll see how it works.
So, okay. Council President? Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. So Council members, this is, you know, he took the opportunity because the director's here. We're not going to engage into that discussion. Council Abdelizgi wanted to put that on the record. You stated that you already.
I'll put on the record, Council President, at next workshop, I'll put it on the agenda.
You stated that you already spoke to the BA about this. So Council members, let's just leave it at that and continue. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. We have an opportunity. If you don't agree with the statement that he made, whenever the administration in workshop proposes anything, we as a council, we have the discussion at that time. But we're not going to have a discussion right now about that.
Thank you, Council President. No, Council President, thank you for giving. Thank you, Council President, thank you for giving the floor, I just want to let the council know.
Thank you, Councilman, please.
I'm gonna, it is a workshop, so I could've put it on the agenda, it could've been an item. So I will put it on the next workshop for a discussion.
Thank you, sir. This is what we're gonna do right now, we're gonna entertain item number thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Council President, can you put number nine on regular? Can you put number nine on regular?
We're not gonna go there now, we wanna give, we wanna do number thirty-two.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, before we go to thirty-two, five, six, and seven, we're keeping those free?
Yes, we're good with those, five, six, seven.
Five, six, and seven, okay, thank you.
That's Jonathan White.
And you know what, you added, before we get to thirty-two, let's do the number nine on regular, that's an appointment of a constable.
Number nine on regular.
Then let's do thirty-two, and then we go back to the others, let's do number thirty-two right now.
Number nine, okay, number thirty-two, I think we just have a draft.
So, Councilman Mendez, you wanna entertain the discussion on that?
Sure, and I'm gonna ask Councilman Morris to assist. So, item number nine is an ordinance.
Okay, okay, council colleagues, let's be more respectful here, please.
So, this, we have been a part of a collaborative initiative, Healing Collective, is doing work in the community to try to assist victims of trauma through senseless, through gun violence, and it's added in the wording stabbing victims as well. What this new ordinance is doing, which we've had ordinances in the past that have set aside, this new ordinance, what it does is it says, if someone's coming in, a new developer or any developer coming in, and they have a property that exceeds $200,000, that based on the amount of units, that they set aside one apartment or two, depending on the size, for these victims of these traumatic experiences. I have to commend Councilman Morris for actually writing, and then I had to work on it, so we actually worked together on this item. And I think legal, because I was saying, where is it, where is it, it needs to be so the council members can see it. But the sponsors on this item is myself, Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman Cotton, and I also wanna change it to make Councilwoman Velez a sponsor instead of a co-sponsor. This is something that is definitely needed for people, one of the issues that they're finding, and the hospital was on, Habitat for Humanity was on, a various hosts of people were on this call, and one of the issues is that they don't have a place to live. And so, if it's something that we can do here on the council, where it pushes the administration to make sure they enforce this ordinance, I think it's a great step in the right direction for those individuals and their Patterson residents. So we wanna definitely make sure, Councilwoman Cotton or Davila, or Councilwoman Davila or Councilwoman Velez, or any council member, if you have any questions, I'll open the floor, Council President.
Councilwoman Mendez, if we can have Councilman Morris, I would really like for him to come and just address the council on this initiative that, you know, he worked at, as you expressed, that hero, and being part of that Healing Collective, you know, this is something that truly, you know, I agreed when Councilman Morris first spoke to me about, you had not written it yet, but the concept of it, I was like right on. And definitely, I think the council needs to truly be aware of what this means, you know, in this, you know, I know that some may say, well, why are you gonna, you know, make a developer that's coming here wanting to invest their money, why are you gonna put stipulations? But, you know, Councilman Morris' idea was, well, if you're asking us for a twenty-year abatement, right, tax abatement, then maybe it's something that the administration, when they're doing this, you know, they can, they can apply it. So, Councilman Morris, if you could, I really would want you to just address how this truly came about.
And just to add, Council, just quickly, this was vetted through Economic Development, Councilman, it was sent out to all the people on the committee, Councilman Velez and myself were there, and it also was discussed in finance. So I don't want it to be that it was just placed here, this was properly vetted through committee.
So, council members, you can step up, Councilman, but before, while he's walking to the podium.
Don't talk about yourself.
We would like, we would like to look into the legality of this, though, to see if this has teeth. It's a great idea, but we just gotta make sure that it's doable, because usually, public funding come with guidelines and what they use and limitations are.
We did, we went through legal.
No, 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 no. Corporation Council, could you please, before Councilman Morris comes up to the plate, I'm sure he has done some research, but I wanna hear from you, have you done your research for this?
Thank you, Council President, I will say that, you know, I'm a big fan of the Patterson Healing Collective, I think they do great work, and it's indispensable to our community in bringing down the violence. With that being said, Councilwoman Mims did send this for our review. We did a preliminary review, but it was subject to further review once we got the funding part, you know, figured out. This was just the framework to allow and permit the robust discussion that it needs. And once the funding part is figured out, and it's signed off on by the requisite department head or funding entity, then we will do another final review, and hopefully just make minor amendments to reflect that, and it'll be good to go. So, that's where this stands right now. We did review it, Councilwoman Mims did bring this to my attention, I think on my first day, and she's been putting a lot of intention behind it, and we've done everything we can to get it this far, but there does remain those two steps that need to be completed.
So, let me, I, this will be our first disagreement, Corporation Council. So when this was first written, and Councilman Morris can attest, as well as Councilman Velez can attest to it, it was first written stating that it would be home funds or CDBG funds. We had a great dialogue with Director Barbara, who said that there are HUD guidelines, we cannot do that. So in that, there was an email trail, which I have, and I'll send a copy to everyone, that said the wording should be adjusted, the Corporation Council's purview, instead of saying directly through anything collected to HUD, that it would be local municipal funding. That's what it was, and it was changed to reflect that. We had our meeting, Director Powell said it was good to go, and we're here now. So, I mean, I understand that you have to allocate, that's your responsibility as an administration, but it doesn't mean that it stops what we do here to say to the administration that there needs to be set aside. So I just wanna put that on the record, Councilman Velez is here, he can validate that, but we definitely wanna hear from Councilman Morris.
There's no disagreement, Councilwoman Mims, we're on the same page.
I just wanna put it on the record.
All right, let's hear for Councilman Morris, and then we could continue our discussion, Councilman Morris.
Thank you, Council President, and first of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Mims, Councilwoman Davila, and all my other esteemed colleagues for supporting this particular ordinance. I think what is critically important to understand here is that Patterson being a diverse community, a diverse city, and when I talk about diversity, I'm not only talking about, you know, race and ethnicity, I'm talking about all classes of people, disabled people, mentally challenged folks, and those victims of trauma, particularly trauma that's associated with gun violence and penetrating wounds. But it may surprise some of you to learn that this particular class of people are discriminated against when it comes to housing by the virtue of simply being associated with a violent event, for no other reasons. Not an inability to pay their rent, not that they won't be good tenants, but they just happen to be in the wrong place at the wrong time. And I think it's in the best interest of this community that we don't continue their suffering. This ordinance was modeled after another ordinance that I wrote when I was on the council, the Project Labor Agreement ordinance. And if you recall, in that ordinance, what we said, that Pattersonians had a right to participate in the economic development of the city by being employed. So the language of that order specified that if developers were using public money, public funds, that 25% of those available construction jobs had to go to locally trained apprentices, all right? And we know that if they were locally trained, they were more than less likely to be Patterson residents, who had opportunities for those careers. This does the same thing, but it simply says that if you're a developer, and you want the city of Patterson to extend you the largesse of providing funding to support your project, a portion of that project, depending on size, needs to be dedicated to these victims of traumatic violence. We're not saying to give them the apartments for free, we're just saying, give them an opportunity to rent, and not discriminate against them. Now, you do have a choice, you can choose not to participate, but if you choose not to participate, there's a clause within the ordinance that says that you have to provide an equivalent amount of rent to a nonprofit agency that's designated by the mayor and this council, so they can use that money to support these victims, whether it be through rent subsidies or the like. We have current laws on the book, some of them are state enabling legislation, which provides a lot of support, financial support for developers. You can tie to that. You want a twenty-year tax abatement? All right, sure, we'll give you a twenty-year tax abatement, but depending on the amount of units, you're going to set aside some of those units for this population. It could be tied to anything. I'm not talking about private developers who are coming in with their own equity. I'm talking about those developers who have their hand out, all right? If you wanna extend your hand for our help, you're gonna have to help us too. This goes a long way into doing that, and I would encourage my colleagues to seriously consider this ordinance, because it does what you were elected to do, to take care of your constituency, all your constituency. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. My concern is, the way it's written right now, I don't see too many instances where we basically give any developer $200,000 from city funds, and that's my concern. So I don't know, you know, we could pass an ordinance, I'm sure this could be tweaked, you know, some other council members have suggested, maybe put in a stipulation that the developer that doesn't basically agree, or if they wanna entertain an abatement or a pilot, that they have to comply with, you know, what we're asking. But I don't, I wanna ask, and maybe yourself, Councilman, maybe yourself, we're here for many years. I don't see many times where we have given actually city dollars to developers, $200,000, city dollars.
So when the ordinance makes reference to $200,000, that's the equivalent of value of whatever you may provide to the developer. So if that tax abatement is worth $200,000 or more, this ordinance kicks in. If that pilot is worth $200,000 or more, this ordinance kicks in.
I wanted to be clarified, though, because I don't want it to be interpreted, because here it says, and I understand what you're saying, right? We're providing value, right, we're giving them a tax break of more than $200,000. But here it basically states who accept city funding in excess of $200,000, right? It's all how you interpret it.
Right, that may be a remnant from when the ordinance was specific to community development block grant funding, you know, because that was actual dollars, all right? So when the ordinance was adjusted to remove that particular clause because of the prohibitions around block grant funding, the adjustment should've been made.
Okay, but as it stands right now, is what I'm saying is, it needs to be modified if we're gonna-
That's easy, those are easy modifications.
No, no, if we're gonna entertain it, it needs to be modified. Councilwoman Adelizis.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Morris, a few questions that I have with this item. Now, St. Joe's would be the one recommending these prospective victims for housing, because it says a nonprofit hospital-based violence intervention program.
No, if you, I don't mean to truncate your comments, Councilman, I wanna make sure that you're finished, but the ordinance specifically calls for a nonprofit agency that meets certain conditions. All those conditions are around serving victims of violence, so it wouldn't be St. Joseph's. It would be an organization, if you give me a moment, I'll go to the particular page. Is it Section B? Yeah, here it is. A qualified nonprofit hospital-based violence intervention program. By that, it means that the, since these are victims of gun violence and/or stab wounds, all right, they're gonna be treated at a hospital, so the organization needs to have a partnership with a hospital.
So, and I guess you're here representing St. Joe's, or is this-
No.
Okay, but you do work at St. Joe's, does St. Joe's have a nonprofit hospital-based violence intervention program that they work with?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and how many do we have, how many do you guys have, one?
There's only one in the state of New Jersey, well, there's one in Patterson, there's one in Newark, trying to think of wherever there's a victims' violence program. They're all sponsored by the Attorney General's Office here.
So, I'm looking at now, there is a project, Affordable Housing, that St. Joe's has worked with NJCDC. That I don't know if that receives city funding, but I think it does have an abatement. Now, does St. Joe's plan to have available rooms without an ordinance in place, but if this is an initiative, do they have, in that eighty or sixty unit, whatever it was, is there plans to have allocated rooms?
There are fifty, there are a total of fifty-six units in that particular project. There are ten units that are set aside for tenants with special needs, all right, and so-
Anyone for gunshot, because this is very specific to gunshot victims and stabbings.
Right.
So does that project have any rooms allocated on Barclay Street, which is affordable housing with an abatement, that specifically goes to gunshot?
Victims of gunshot violence and stab wounds will be available to rent those apartments, as with anyone else. The difference between the project and St. Joe's, and the developers we're looking to address here, is St. Joe's doesn't discriminate at all. And this is really to address those landlords who actively discriminate against victims of violence. And because they, they're under the belief that if someone is a victim of violence, that that violence travels with them. And as a result, they don't wanna rent to them. St. Joseph's is not under that belief, as a charitable, mission-driven organization.
And I'm sure they don't, but once again, when we look at discrimination, and when it comes to fair housing and opportunities, the Attorney General has a division that's supposed to investigate those matters and hold people accountable when it comes to anyone discriminating. So if anyone is getting discriminated, there are laws and divisions in place that the Attorney General's office has. My only question is this, right, so we have that affordable housing project that is not mandated to put exact amount of apartments for gunshot stab wound victims. So now the question I have, what if I get a domestic violence victim saying I need a place to live? Why is domestic violence not allocated for the ladies that are beaten, they don't have this avenue? So we're specifically targeting one group of victims, and then we're discriminating, right? If I'm a council person, and I get a domestic violence person that has nowhere else to go, she has to go back into the house of the same person that beat her, right? And we're just specifically stating that there. So how do we choose just those victims and not other victims of violence?
I appreciate your argument, Councilmen, but you're incorrect. There are currently a myriad of laws on the book that address the housing needs of domestic violence victims.
In Patterson, do we have an ordinance allocating rooms aside, or even apartments?
There are state and federal enabling legislation that address domestic violence victims. There is no legislation, whether on the state, federal, or local level, that addresses victims of traumatic violence.
Oh, Corporation Council, do we have anything on the city ordinance where we allocate funding for other victims of violence?
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Council members, why is it that you have to interrupt every time your colleagues are speaking? Councilman, please proceed, and I apologize for my colleagues.
There's no apology.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yeah, just one, if there's any city ordinances that are similar to this, that are making developers allocate to other victims of violence?
I'm not aware of any offhand, but I will note for this ordinance that I believe it's expansive enough in the definition of a victim of violence, that it may include a victim of domestic violence, and that's something that we kind of expanded upon to define victim of violence to Pattersonians, people that reside in the city, the violence that has to occur in the city, and it's a knife or gunshot wound, which, you know, unfortunately, may be involved in a domestic situation. But to answer your question, I'm not aware of any, I can certainly undertake a review and get that to you.
And if I may, Councilman, if you read the first whereas of the orders, you'll see victims of domestic violence are addressed in this ordinance.
So if you look at the fifth whereas, one, two, three, four, five, six, I'm sorry, six whereas, it says, "For the purpose of this ordinance, traumatic violence, which is to support victims of traumatic violence on the-" it says, "For the purpose of this ordinance, traumatic violence, which is to support victims of traumatic violence on the title, will be defined as suffering from a knife or gunshot wound."
That is correct, but that does not mean that it excludes any of the other victims that are named in the order. It's just saying for the purpose of this ordinance, it's providing you a definition by which you can identify victims of traumatic violence. It does not mean that the ordinance is only specific to those victims.
Just to fish up, but I'm going to go to a lawyer here. I'm not a lawyer, but when it says for the purpose of this ordinance, traumatic violence will be defined. So then when you go down to the next whereas, it states, the money portion, the nonprofit qualified intervention program, which primary purpose is to provide services to victims of traumatic violence, which was just defined on the whereas prior as gunshot and knife wounds. Corporation Council, am I correct? For this ordinance, it looks like these apartments will only be allocated, or the fund will be allocated for gunshot or knife, am I correct?
That's correct, and former Councilman Morris's statement on the first whereas clause, it's just reciting generally the policy of Patterson. But I do think, based off the Patterson Healing Collective's mission, which this ordinance is specifically addressing, that definition of traumatic violence is appropriate. If there was some other ordinance that the city council wanted to do for victims of domestic violence, which I think would also be a good idea, I think we could do something like that. But for the purposes of the Patterson Healing Collective and St. Joe's, I think this definition of traumatic violence is appropriate.
And if I may, councilman, through the council president and of course, through the Corporation Council, the fact that there are federal and enabling legislation which addresses the other victims that you've mentioned, if there was enabling federal or state legislation for victims of traumatic violence, we would not need this. We would just depend on the enabling legislation from the federal and state. The fact that legislation is absent on both the federal and state level, is why we need a local ordinance to do that. It is my hopes that other communities will model this ordinance when they determine that this ordinance addresses indeed.
So why does the council, why doesn't the council support a resolution to our state legislatures to pass a law enabling state law and federal law for gunshot?
Because we're addressing Patterson residents. Because I have a great amount of confidence in this local body to get this done in an expeditious manner. I don't have the same level of confidence in the state legislature in so much that the state legislature will have to take, will have competing interests with suburban communities and urban communities. We need to take care of our own house and our own backyard if we have the ability to do so, and this ordinance allows us to do that.
So councilmembers, I want to pass this comment. This was given to us right before the meeting.
No, 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 no. This went to committee. And it was vetted in committee.
Okay, in committee.
And it's here now.
Hold on, hold on. See, this is what I don't like.
No.
Just listen to me for a minute. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Was this part of the packet?
No.
Okay, was this part of the packet that went to us on Friday?
The title was on the agenda on Friday.
I don't want her to say it again.
The draft was given to us during the course of the meeting today.
So my point is, in the interest of us reading this and having an actual, you know, a healthy discussion on this matter, we need to basically read this?
But Council President, ask them why. This was given.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. Wait, wait, with all due respect, I have to, hold on. Councilman Jackson is next, by the way, next. I'm one of nine. And I'm telling you, this was brought up, actually, Councilman Morris asked me for a copy, he said, "We don't have a copy." They had to go and get a copy.
Well, that's because I requested it.
I understand, but it doesn't change the fact that we didn't get this before the meeting.
I'm trying to answer what happened, and you're telling me
No, but what happened, what I'm saying is, the comment that I'm passing right now is, let's make the changes that we need to make, right? We need to discuss this, and in order to have a healthy discussion, I got to be able to read this. Because I'm picking and choosing certain things from here, and I haven't been able to actually read the whole thing. I don't think it's fair. You know, putting me, this is not fair to me and to some of my colleagues. Yes, it went through committee, I'm not opposing it. But I don't think, you know, I don't think it's beneficial for this to be entertained right now. It should be entertained at the next workshop. And you should make the changes that you need to make to this, to this ordinance.
Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
So first, part of my concern is that from what I'm, the temperature that I'm gauging now is there are only two councilmembers that are that feel indifferent to this being on. One, it's long overdue. Long overdue. I have to commend Councilman Morris, who's paying close attention to a lot of my presentations. In fact, Councilman Morris, let me help bring to your recollection the presentation I did on Jersey City. When they have developers that come into the city of Jersey City, how they require 20% putback into their community, where they actually require developers to build $25 million schools there. And these are developers that are not receiving such large concessions, such as the Riverside Terrace development. So that's an example. I heard one of the councilmembers ask for an example. The other thing is, where we have to be very mindful, this council body, you know, during that time, I think that was my first year here, my first term, in my first few months, where we collectively got together to, when the $144 million in tax credits was first introduced, and we came up with that project labor agreement, right? And to ensure that Patterson's, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Mims, I want you to hear this. Because we, Councilman Morris is correct, there was legislation put in place, project labor agreements that required certain developers to hire locally. Well, right now, we got a project going on where we gave away 17 acres of land. I'm going to continue to resonate these facts, because we gave away 17 acres of land. So, Councilman President, how is that not a concession relative or equivalent to 200,000? In fact, it far exceeds 17 acres of land, which if you measure it, please don't interrupt. If you measure it based on what the value was of the armory for $3 million for one acre, if you multiply that by 17, it's over $50 million. I think there should be multiple spaces made available to these victims. Lastly, I'll say this. I think, councilman, it's concerning, because when you really delve into the numbers and you look at the populations that's being impacted most by these particular crimes, that's possibly why certain people are reluctant to entertain this. In fact, when you look at these numbers of violent crimes that have been growing and been out of control in our communities, we have this administration, and I will acknowledge not just this administration, but we're talking about this administration has failed to put fail safes in place to try to help curb violent crimes. In fact, if you look at the numbers, it's been stated all over the national news, where Patterson has now led the nation in violent crimes such as this in daytime areas. In fact, Councilman Kalik and I shared an experience where a bullet went through the wall of someone's home while they were there innocently, just casually hanging out in the house, and was struck by a bullet. And that was 12 o'clock in the afternoon, and hours later, they came back to do it again, where we lost a life. So, this is very, this needs to be done as quickly and as expeditiously as possible. Do I think that we negate the responsibility of the council? No, but we've done this on multiple occasions before. And the fact that there's amendments that need to be made before it moves forward for a vote should not derail it from getting before the council. In fact, I'll say this in closing. I'll say, as you have said, in many instances where I've stood extremely firm on many instances, if you don't like it, you have the ability to vote no against it. And let's put it forward for a vote and see how the council body feels about this legislation. We need to make sure that we're doing things for Patterson people.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council President, which is your permission?
Councilman Morris, hold on a minute. So this is what we have before us. You have something that was reviewed by a committee that has four members. We're a body of nine. All I'm saying is, I've never said I was against it. And based on the language that is in the body right now, it doesn't state that the city is giving a developer something of value. It specifically says in the seventh whereas, it says, it says, "Who also accepts city's funding in excess of $200,000." We agree that needs to be changed, right, to express something of value in excess of whatever amount you guys decide. It could still be the $200,000. So, I don't appreciate my colleagues saying something that I didn't say. I'm interpreting what I have before me. Says $200,000 in funding. It doesn't say a piece of land, yes, the city gives developers things of value, such as a pilot, an abatement, or land. I never stated, that's not what this document says right now. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Does it say that in this document right now? Corporation Council?
Make the amendment, or equivalent.
Yeah, but don't say that I said that we don't give.
It doesn't define that, and that's why I said, you know, the legal review is pending, once you work out some of these.
Thank you, I just want the courtesy from my colleagues. Hold on, hold on. I haven't finished. If you're going to inform the public, don't accuse me of something that I didn't say. I'm interpreting what's in here right now. Now, second, second, second. With all due respect, Council Morris, you were a councilman at one time, yourself. Not against this at all.
16 years.
Yes, long time. And I always respected what you did here in the council. Always. All I'm saying is, we're a body of nine. It wasn't the fault of Councilwoman Mims that this was presented to us at the meeting. Not even before the meeting, it was presented at the meeting. If you look at the documents here that we have, and tell me if I'm wrong, I want one of you, I'm challenging my eight council colleagues. We have scanned copies here in our system that is usually updated, you know, often, even before the meeting. That document is not there. Councilman Morris, you saw the time that this document was brought to us. It was during, or maybe after, the sewer presentation. All I'm asking my colleagues is for courtesy. Never said I was against it. All I'm saying is, two weeks is not, we need to read this. It's like having someone discuss a contract that you haven't read.
Council President? Council President, I just want to address
Hold on a minute. So, Councilwoman Davila, I know Councilman Jackson knows what's going on, but Councilwoman Davila?
So what I want to say, because I've been part of the conversations, I've been part of the Patterson Healing Collective along with Councilwoman Mims and Cotton. And Morris, you've been there day one, right? And obviously, you wrote this, right? And it's gone through legal. I just heard Corporation Council indicate that it needed a little more research. And to be fair to all of us, we're nine. We should have an opportunity to have the other councilmembers that are not fully aware, okay, and that some may not understand the specifics of it, to have an opportunity. So I'm in agreement that it should go give you this time
Two weeks.
Two, no, to our next workshop, and then take it from there.
Next workshop.
I just heard our legal just indicate something, that's why.
The only part, the only part
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President.
I haven't given you the floor. There's a lot of people ask for the floor. Councilman Delissis asks for the floor?
Again?
Councilwoman Mims? Councilwoman Melas, he was courteous to give you the floor.
Thank you, no, because he had a row of questions. He had a row of questions, I thought that he would finish already. Council President, the only thing that was here, and I think Councilman Morris alluded to it, it was to strike the part of the $200,000, where it's coming and who's going to put it, or whatever. And that could be amended today and not even go back and forth on it. Because the only part, the only part that was questioned is the one that you raised. And that one could be
That's the only part that I read. That's what I'm telling you, I got to read the whole document, councilman.
Councilman, and let me say this, councilman.
I got to read the whole document, analyze it, do research.
You've been analyzing, you've been reading the document, I've been watching you from here, that you've been reading the document up and down. And to point that out, okay, to point that out
He's telling me I read the document.
Yeah, no, but you pointed out that's $100,000, that means you re-edited. So, my thing is, my thing is, it was put as a title in the agenda. We've done this before. And before the document gets to us, we put a title in the agenda, knowing that it's going to be a pending discussion on it.
I don't see the rush, councilman, to be honest. Yes, it's needed, we're going to do it, councilman. We're going to do it. All I'm asking is, this only went to committee. Four people had the benefit of the discussion.
Two committees went.
Which committee did it went to? Oh, that was when I was out?
Yeah.
This went to
I've been trying to speak, but you're not giving the
So this went to finance?
If I can speak, I'm fired, but I'll wait.
And last but not least, you know, this is an ordinance in the local municipal, in the municipal This is an ordinance in the local municipal government. Recommending a resolution for the state, and I agree with Councilman Morris that the faith of the state will be shifted to other places. So, if that's the only part that is unquestionable here, that was already vetted to committee, and Mr. Powell agreed on it.
Councilmembers, I'm asking just for the courtesy. Just for courtesy. What is the, why is it that this cannot, wait, what's the issue?
We could discuss it also in the first meeting.
Like, why, I understand this is needed. I don't think a project, I don't think a project gets developed in a week.
In a week.
I don't think a project gets developed in a week. Councilman Morris, can I ask you a question?
Certainly can.
Is this going to apply to any projects already in existence?
Yes.
No, you cannot go retro.
This is not intended to be retroactive.
Correct. So this, for example, any projects that we, based on the discussion that we have, of the only, maybe I read maybe three paragraphs, not the whole document, like my councilman stated. Anyone that's contemplating, if we're going to give something to any developer, it could be an abatement, whatever you want to call it. I don't think this is going to happen probably within the next two weeks. So all I'm asking is for courtesy. I thought we were supposed to work here together. Some of us express the same concern. And no one said that, none of us said that we were against this. Just give us the courtesy, that's all we ask. And again, I was not in finance, but if I would have gotten this on Friday, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Correct, it was supposed to be, but it wasn't. If I would have bought, you know, Bitcoin when it was a dollar, I would have been a millionaire right now, and I didn't. So that's the point that I'm trying to make.
But we have to hold the administration accountable.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council President.
It's others before you, Councilman Mims.
I'm sorry.
I've been waiting very patiently. Councilwoman Cotton is first, and I'll go after her. Councilwoman Cotton?
I just want to say to Corporation Council, BA, I've been trying to get developers to set aside 10% of their units to affordable. Not only for what we're talking about. If anybody sees victims, or I see it. I see it all the time. I see that where people can't get in housing because something had happened to them 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, they can't get You know, so many laws need to be changed. Councilman, there's so many laws that need to be changed that's affected a lot of people, not only in Patterson, but throughout this country. So, to put something in place to help people that that things happen to, and sometimes it's not, you know, there was a carjacking on my block, whoever think, you know, that could have been me. It's just so much stuff happening, and we have to start thinking about people if they want to try to get their lives together, you know, live somewhere decent, live somewhere nice, you know, you have to be able to do that, and regardless of what their records look like, people always deserve a second chance. I don't care what anyone says, you must give people a second chance, so this would help, and I also want Corporation Council and BA to look into some other pieces for affordable. Sometimes people don't want to do affordable because of the paperwork and the amount of red tape that the government and the amount of red tape that the government puts you through, just to get this done. So this is gonna help people. I see it every other day. I see it, I hear it, I hear families, I hear, you know, it affects the children, it affects everyone. So, you know, I think the Corporation Council need to do what he needs to do to get it going. And that's all we need to do, just to get it going. And also, Corporation Council, look into what I requested to, about the other affordables. And, and I think that it'll help us with Health and Human Services. Our stuff is so outdated, it doesn't, like, we still in dinosaur years in this city. We're in dinosaur years. We need to get up to the 20th century. And there's so much stuff on the books, and you know, Councilman, that needs to come off and needs to be looked at, needs to be changed. And we need to start doing that. And, and the rent leveling piece is one of my important things that is important here right now, that we need to take a look at that rent leveling board to put this back in place to help people here. So with that being said, you know, we gotta start thinking about people's lives and how it affects them. So, Council President, oh, he got up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. So, um, I'm next. So let me, let me just bring some clarity. This is not a new document. This document has been going on probably at least a month, Councilwoman Morris, am I correct? At least, oh, probably a month or even more, maybe five weeks. When, when, more than that. When the document first was created, based on the language that was in the document and based on the conversation with the Director of Community Development and Legal, the wording was supposed to be changed. So the language that Council President is referring to was supposed to be adjusted as well. That wasn't done. But that was a part of, but they have some adjustments that are happening in, in the legal department, which is fine. But that was a part of the recommendation to ensure that the language matched the title. That was the conversation. Today, when I came in, and Madam Clerk knows, they did their due diligence. When I came in, I looked to see in our tablet, I looked, there was no, I didn't see the document. And I asked, where is the document? That's why they made the copies and gave it, because this document has been circulating for at least six weeks. This is not a document we just slapped on the table tonight. There's been economic development, which there are economic development committee meeting, there are four council members. Finance meeting, there are as well, in the finance committee, there are four council members as well. I know due to schedules and stuff, everybody wasn't in the meeting, but two committees this went through. And there was a lot of back and forth dialogue because the original language had to be amended. That wording was supposed to be amended, you're absolutely correct, Council President, but it was a part of the original discussion, and legal was working on that. So I understand all the concerns. I'm not even saying do it here, do it, but I just want to bring clarity so that people understand that the original discussion, the original document had the, it had funding from the federal government. That could not be done. So the wording got a change, it got adjusted and changed. So we have to understand, in the city of Patterson, whether some know it or not, there are shootings happening almost every single day. In the same, in the city of Patterson. Every single day.
Multiple.
Eh, multiple, sometimes four in a day, every single day. And this is impacting heavily certain populations of the community. I mean, it's every day. I mean, if you have the Ring Doorbell, you are wrong. Because every time your Ring goes, the alert goes off, you're hearing the shooting, you get the information or whatever. Not that you say, well, this is fact, you wait and see, and then all of a sudden, social media, yep, it's, it's going on. We have to be able as legislators to legislate and work coll, you know, collaboratively. I understand maybe whatever the pushback is, but we as a legislative body, as council members, we have to legislate, and then the administration has to do their due diligence to identify how to make it happen. We have worked with the administration. This is, this ordinance of impacts residents of the city of Patterson. They are residents, they live here. We're not asking for them to get anything free, they're gonna pay their rent, they're gonna pay. And so I just wanted to put it on record that it just let, tonight, where was it? I asked, that's how you got it, cuz I asked. Where is the document that goes with item number 32? But I believe the administration didn't wanna do it. That's why it wasn't here. So I wanna put that on the record, that this is not a new document. It has been vetted through economic development and finance.
Thank you. Councilwoman Deles, and then I'm gonna say something. Thank you, Council President, and Councilman Morris. I apologize, cuz I didn't receive this now, and I'm fine tuning, going through, and I will be going through it more.
No apologies necessary, Councilman.
So I'm, I'm a visual person, right? So say a developer comes in tomorrow, wants to build 15 units for the grandparents raising grandchildren, a need in our community. Just say they wanna develop, they wanna get a tax abatement. So with this ordinance, if it's adopted, that means that building, out of the, the, out of the 16 or 17 units, two of them have to be set aside for gunshot or stabbed victims in a grandparents for grand, grandparents raising grandchildren facility. Is that correct?
Councilman, that is correct. And I think where some of the hesitancy is, is just folks not understanding that as times change, different groups get discriminated against. A few years ago, if you were black, you wouldn't be able to rent. Not because you couldn't be, pay the rent, not because you weren't working, not because you weren't a good person, but simply because you were black. There's were time if you were Latino, you couldn't rent. Middle Eastern, you couldn't rent. If you were a woman head of household, landlords didn't wanna rent to you. So as the time changes, people get discriminated against for different reason, right? You could be a transsexual, at this point, nobody's gonna wanna rent to you. You could be in a wheelchair, some folks won't wanna rent to you. Now, simply because you have the unfortunate circumstance to be walking down the street, a drive-by shooting occurs, you get shot, you end up in the hospital, and you wanna rent an apartment, and someone determines that you are a victim. And they're so afraid that you're going to bring that with you, that they don't wanna rent to you. The fact is, since this ordinance does call for a qualified nonprofit hospital-based violence intervention program to advocate that these tenants are more than likely to be better tenants than anyone else, because they will provide tenant support services. They will do the pre-qualification and screening to make sure that they're good tenants. They will work directly with the managers of these facilities on behalf of the tenants. They will act as an advocate for landlord disputes. The purpose is, is to ensure that these victims are stellar tenants. But they gotta be given the opportunity.
So, thank you. So once again, and, and this is where I'm, I'm questioning, right? So once again, you're, we're prioritizing a certain group, a certain victim group, right? You're right, there's still, there's still people, African Americans that get discriminated. There's still Middle Easterns that get discriminated, but we're not addressing that here. The New Jersey Attorney General's Office has those laws in place. But I just wanna go another thing.
Councilman.
So, Council President, this, I, I need two seconds with this, because there are some things in here that should be highlighted, right? For example, we, lead or die. A big project like that goes through, you have, if I'm not mistaken, you have to allocate a certain amount, a, a senior complex. If, if, if someone wants to build a 55 and older, you have to set aside units for someone that may be 19 or 20 years old. And the whole premise of this building, it's for seniors.
But Councilman, you're missing a very salient point to the ordinance, right? No one is required or mandated to do anything. There's simply, you have a choice. If you want the largesse of the city, in other words, the city is gonna provide you a certain qualified value. In this case, in the ordinance, it says $200,000 or something to the value. I realize that that needs to be tweaked. If you want that, then you do this. If you don't want that, then you don't have to do this. You do have a choice. It's as simple as that.
Thank you, Councilmember. And lastly, Section C, you wrote this, a special circumstance. Councilmembers, we're gonna discuss this again, right? Legal needs more time to tweak this, to do the research. We're gonna pull it, I'm gonna pull it. We're gonna give you the time that you need to research this, to tweak it. Maybe the committee could suggest the language that you're gonna put on, and it's gonna be brought back, right? We probably don't need the same lengthy discussion, cuz we already discussed it tonight. But we're just gonna pull it, it's not gonna go to the next meeting, we're just gonna pull it.
So are we pulling it to add to the next workshop on the 18?
Workshop, yes, yes.
So we're tabling it to the 18?
Yes.
Okay, cuz you said pulling it, so.
We're, we're tabling it. We just wanna give the Corporation Council more time, go ahead.
May I, Council President, thank you. Um, I will note, you know, that a lot has been said about legal review and whatnot. I sent an email on Monday, April 26, saying that, please note, this document is still a work in progress and subject to final legal review once all the details are worked out. And I think that was made abundantly clear, which is why legal did not send this up to the clerk to be presented to the entire council. Because from our perspective, we can only do legal review once the details are worked out, which includes ensuring the appropriate determinations and definitions for financing, and also includes this very legislative process where all these important voices and concerns are heard. Once that is done, we can undertake a legal review and hopefully bless this. And I will say, you know, to the extent that comments about the administration were made related to the legal department, I am staunchly in favor of this. And I would love to see a way forward on it.
And, and the main thing is, Councilwoman Morris and council colleagues, we wanna make sure that we have a document that it will be hard to challenge, that it could be enforced. You know, we just don't wanna pass something today just to, so it could come out in the newspaper. I think that could wait. We just wanna make sure that what we pass on this council is enforceable and it cannot be challenged. Or it could be challenged, but they will not be successful in their challenge.
Council President, if I may, you know, I am not here to advocate that something be done in an expeditious manner. I am simply here to walk the council through the ordinance and the tenants of the ordinance. That is my only role. And I do believe Councilwoman, uh, Deles was gonna refer to Section C with regard to special circumstances when I was making a reference to a choice. But that choice still exists, Councilman, and if you read the last line, it only if the developer chooses to take advantage of the funds, that they will be held accountable for providing on this particular set aside.
Got it.
So there is a choice.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Morris.
Last comment.
So, so this item, this, this item's gonna be pulled. This item's gonna be pulled, we're not gonna discuss it further cuz we already spent like two hours on an item that.
Just a suggestion.
You know, I could've pulled from the beginning, but I just wanted to allow the discussion to continue with Councilwoman Morris and some of my colleagues. So thank you, Councilwoman Morris, for coming.
Thank you, Council President, for bringing back the fond memories of leaving this chamber near midnight.
Council President.
So we have time.
It's nice seeing you, Councilman.
Councilman, you're gonna keep it brief.
No, well, yeah, very brief. Well, most, cuz there's a lot of things that happen where I think council members and members of the legislative body aren't fully aware of certain, how things, provisions and how things work. Any person, a member of the public, is entitled to write legislation, they can sponsor legislation. You know, I would like that, considering the work and legwork that Councilman, former Councilman has put on, that his name be put here as the, as the sponsor and all the other names be added as co-sponsor. That's a suggestion I would make. Hey, listen, man, you put the work in, so, you know, it should be acknowledged that way.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Take care, get home safely. Get some rest. I'll think about you as I'm eating my dinner.
Council President, Council President, may I make a request?
Sure.
A brief request, to the extent that your colleagues in the legislative body have comments about this, I would respectfully request that it be submitted to us this week. And any details regarding financing also be submitted to us this week so that we can undertake an expeditious review.
So the person that has sponsored, and I'm sure you have taken notes of the comments that were passed, one of them is, you have to clarify the $200,000, that it has to be anything of value provided by the city. And you know the details, you heard. And I'm sure Councilwoman Mims was gonna assist you, since she has taken the lead on this. But thank you, thank you for at least letting the council know that they need to give you the information by a certain time. Thank you. We have Community Development Director here.
Director.
So we have some items here.
Hey, Council President, is that all we have left? CD?
You have item number 10. Let's start with that, that's the first one on the community development.
So item number 10. I have a spreadsheet, if you'd like to see it.
Excuse me?
I have a spreadsheet of the evaluations, you usually ask for that.
So what do we have here?
This is a, an amendment to the budget.
An amendment to the budget.
To 2020's budget.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions pertaining to this one?
No, Council President, if I may, through, through the chair, I just wanna say this, this madam chair had a meeting on Friday, had the full committee there, we reviewed all, all of these items. I just wanna make a point of something on item number 10, where it says that it's a, um, a change in the 2020 program year, correct?
Yes.
Director, I know that in committee, we discussed, well, why are we giving certain entities, you know, monies, why not give it to others? And specifically, the director mentioned that this, these amounts were given to entities that owned their.
Yes.
Buildings.
Public facilities.
So when you look at nonprofits who do not own their building, they cannot apply for the CDBG monies because this specifically has to do with maintenance, right, facilities?
It's facility improvements.
With facilities, yeah. So I just wanted to make that mention.
We only received two applications when we put the ad in the paper.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, Council President, I'm, what's this? What is this?
That's the spreadsheet for this resolution. These are the two entities that applied.
Oh, okay, yeah, we, we have.
You asked for that one, we met on Friday.
All right.
So Barbara, when, when you advertised, when you advertised this, did you specify the amount of funds that were available?
Yes, I do.
Was it 262?
262 from 2020.
Got it.
132 for 2019. 1,909,545 for E, for CDBG round three. And the balance of ESG round two, 128, 20,781.60.
So councilmembers, do you have any issues with this?
I just, I just want our director to just point out, we didn't have much time left for this money to be allocated.
The, the COVID money has to be spent by the end of.
No, not the COVID money, I'm talking about 10.
Number 10.
I'm sorry, yes, this money has to be spent by June 30. And we actually asked these agencies to give us a letter requesting to use the money. So we're giving them extension until December 31.
To December of this, of this year.
Yes, and it's gone.
Do you wanna put that in consent, Council President, or?
Councilwoman Mendez.
No, no, let us, wait a second.
I didn't hear you.
No, no, but we have until December 31.
Yes.
30th of this year, 2021, to spend this.
These funds, yes.
Right.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mendez.
That plays a big role in this because we don't wanna send no money back.
Councilwoman, are you done or not yet?
Consent.
Well, Councilwoman Mendez has a question.
Just a quick question, how many other entity applied to this, to this funding?
Only two.
Only those two?
She gave me the two.
All right, so, so this goes in consent, Madam Clerk.
Council President.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Director.
Yes.
How many entities was asked to submit that letter that you're referencing?
Uh, only those two. Only those two applied. They thought they had to spend the money by June 30. We, we put the ad in the paper in November. We asked HUD, can we have a little bit more time? They submitted their application, we asked them to submit a letter to allow them to spend until November, I'm sorry, until December 31. That's it, they're done.
So, so the request for the notice or letter was done after?
After.
They had applied?
Yes.
Understood.
Thank you, so let's go to the next one, number eleven.
Council President, so number ten is going on consent?
Yes.
Um, if I may say, eleven and twelve can be on consent. This is for two.
Subordination.
Yes.
Go ahead, Director.
Subordination request from two homeowners that receive funds from the First Time Home Buyer Program. They wanna refinance their loans.
Right. So number thirteen?
Number thirteen is to hire a consultant. I have the score, the recommendations, and no, Councilman Jackson always asks for them. I didn't make a lot of copies, you can keep them if you like.
Would you make copies of?
She asked for the recommendations and the scores.
Okay. Those are not part of the package? No. These are just the scores, but.
Council President, if I may, with item thirteen, uh, to the director?
Yes.
This is the same, um, group
Yep.
that we, we've used in the past, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Director, if I may, Council President. Uh, this is the same, um, um, real estate strategy, it's the same organization, same company that helped save us
With the home, with the home audit that we had a few years ago, yes.
Of eight million dollars.
Yes.
Yes. Consent, that could be consent too.
I, I would like to have it on regular. I need more time to go over and make sure that I have my input into the number thirteen.
So Madam Clerk, we're putting this on regular, thirteen on regular. Now, number, number.
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen, I have a question. Madam, Madam Clerk. Actually, no, to Barbara.
Yes.
Number fourteen.
I actually have another spreadsheet.
Council President, can I, I, I'm, I'm looking at. Did something change from our meeting on, on, um? Yeah, she told you when you was in the meeting. No, but I wasn't told.
Okay, yeah, we changed it.
Uh, Director, you can come back to the mic. So why, why, why was it changed when we discussed it as a committee and it was presented to us as the application?
It was the application that was approved
Right.
from this, Community Development did a recommendation after the scores. You'll see the scores from
Okay.
the individual reviewers. And when we met on Friday, Councilwoman Cotton suggested that we change the amount because, um, the entity that was getting the most money should not because we could give it to other people. We should revise it.
Didn't we have that, but we had that discussion in the meeting.
Hold on, hold on a minute.
We had looked at mental health.
Hold on, hold on a minute.
Yes, we do have money for mental health.
Councilwoman Cotton, so you just passed a, a statement?
If you wanna take it off, take it off.
No, it's not about taking it off.
There was an application received, actually two applications for the one point nine million.
Right.
One agency asked for four hundred and eighty to do full distribution. Actually, that's not true. There was more than two applications for that money. There was four applications received for that grant.
Thank you, Senator.
The administration, looking at the past, um, performances of these agencies, determined that they are not moving forward, so we didn't recommend them receiving funding.
Right.
The only agency that was moving forward was the one that requested four hundred and eighty thousand for full distribution.
Okay, so the recommendation?
Is to provide four hundred and eighty thousand.
Four hundred and eighty thousand.
For full distribution.
The resolution states what?
Two hundred.
But why, if that was not?
And this was the recommendation of the committee?
No, it's not.
Chair, that's not, was not.
Well, let me finish, let's, okay.
I wanna hear the chair.
All right, then, let her go on and then I'll go on.
Okay, so, Council?
Who's the chair of that committee?
I am.
That's what I just said, I wanna hear from the chair.
Okay, um, if I may say, Barbara, Director, that some of the people that applied for the funding, um, had not spent the funding from the other round.
Yes.
Uh, and you still had to spend that, cuz that's a little long, I mean, we ain't got much time left for that. We only got two months left. Um, and even the one that requested that amount had not even finished spending their allotment.
They, they had not fi, finished spending, but they spent a great deal of the money.
Half?
Yes.
Yeah, half.
No, 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 she said great deal, not half.
No, it's half, Barbara.
Barbara, how much have they spent?
He spent, he received two hundred thousand and he spent a hundred and fifteen, maybe?
Spent?
Yes, spent.
Not billed to you, but spent?
Spent, spent.
Okay.
That, that you, that you reimbursed?
No, we have not reimbursed for all of it. He has spent it though.
It doesn't work that way, though.
He spent, and we actually have proof that he spent it. We just haven't processed the reimbursement. That comes from us processing to the accounting control.
And how much time do this entity have to spend the rest?
No, no, this round.
Hold, hold on a minute, not this allocation. We're talking about the previous, don't, please.
This entity has until June thirtieth. We can ask for an extension, which we probably will
Okay.
until December thirty-first, and that's it for all of them.
Okay. Is this the case with all the agencies, or there's other agencies?
No, this is the case with all the agencies.
Are they, um,
Providing that?
Are they spending at the same rate, or some of them have failed to, to spend the money?
Some have not even signed a contract.
Wow.
It's been ten months, eleven months, they haven't even signed an agreement.
So this is what I'm saying, council members, you know, I myself have worked with, you know, entities, uh, you know, at the county. And it is the job of CD and Human Services to monitor funding that is allocated for agencies.
Yep.
If you could recall, many times in the city of Patterson, we are often reading the newspaper how the city loses money, in the past I'm talking about, have lost CDBG funding because some agencies don't spend the money, but then they let them know too late that the funding were not, they were not, that they were not able to spend the funding. That's why monitoring is important. So the administration received for this, well, how many people applied?
Four.
Four people, out of the four?
We recommended one.
You recommended one. The, why, why the other three were not recommended?
Because they haven't signed the contract, they haven't started drawing down any of the funds, and they didn't have any money to, to upfront.
So, so all four of them, all four of them was allocated the same funding for previous years?
Previous, previous grant. From the previous grant.
What I mean by the same funding, not the same amount?
No.
Same funding source?
Previous grant, yes.
Same funding source?
Yes.
And only one of them has spent more than fifty percent of the money? The other ones haven't even started spending the money, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, you recommended, the administration, who recommended?
My office recommended.
The office recommended that?
After reviewing the scores, yes, we recommended.
And this money can only be used for this purpose, correct?
Yes, that's true.
Council President?
So my, my thing is this, we have to be mindful of some actions, the actions that we take. I understand that we would like to see more agencies, more agencies get funding, but we also have to find a way to educate. This is a conversation that was had maybe three years ago. I remember Councilman McCoy talking about this often, that the agencies need to have the capacity, the training, to be able to actually make use of this funding. They have to be able to, to bill us correctly, you know, follow the guidelines to spend the money. Am I, am I wrong, Barbara?
No, you're absolutely right.
So we need to educate them. If there is a non-for-profit, it is their job to prepare themselves to be able to apply and actually perform the services.
Yes.
So all I'm saying is, this, this, based on the recommendation of the administration, this should have been four hundred and eighty,
Yes.
not two hundred. What are we gonna do with the rest of the money?
We would have to re-advertise, which we're doing probably tomorrow.
No, that's if, that's if.
Council President?
We still had a balance regard, we still had a balance left over, a million forty-seven. We still have to advertise.
Okay, so you wanna advertise for that, all right. Councilwoman Davila.
So what I wanted to say is, in the meeting, okay, cuz we had a very lengthy and a healthy conversation. And we discussed the reason, specifically with this one and with the amount. And when the chair said, well, we should cut it, I said no. Councilman colleague said no.
Yes.
So when I left there, I left there in a committee that it was gonna move forward. And the reasoning, she had her program monitors there who specifically discussed how certain entities had not drawn down, had not provided anything. And the one entity that was being recommended was because they can substantiate, they put money ahead. They can show proof that they're feeding five hundred families
Yes.
uh, a month, okay, that they're putting upfront twenty-five thousand dollars, and they have yet to put in there for reimbursement.
Right.
Councilwoman, our chair, she indicated, well, you know, we need to train other entities to do that, but that is not their.
We don't do that.
That's not what community development does, right? And so, and I'm not saying that that's not something that we should do. We definitely should be, you know, providing those services to those small, um, entities. But the fortunate thing with these smaller entities is that they do not have the means to upfront. And these programs, um, specifically, this is what the HUD requirements are, right? So I left there with that. So I don't know why this was changed, okay?
I'll tell you why.
Well, no, no, this was changed, no, because it, it was a conversation that was had. And so if the person applies for, and puts in for it
Yes.
and now it comes to the committee, and we as a committee, I leave and now I come back and I see it changed, I wanna know what's the reasoning that we didn't discuss?
She stated that at the beginning.
No, 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 what's the reason why the chair didn't discuss that?
She said that, at the beginning, she stated at the beginning.
If I may say, Barbara, I believe that we talked about mental illness.
Yes.
We talked about it deeply. And I, and, and, and you said that we can use some of this money for mental illness. I don't know about anybody sitting here, but I'm getting those, mental illness is hurting our city.
Yes, no, and we have a million forty-seven.
And that's what made me think that we need to allocate some money for mental illness too. Now, it was two, you said you didn't wanna change it, there was two that said we needed to change it. So, so now.
Did you say that, Councilwoman Mims? Did you say that?
Council members, but you don't wait.
I'm explaining what I'm thinking.
Council members, you don't wait, you don't wait for a process to finish.
Right.
Right, for a process to finish? And because the outcome, whatever the outcome was, now you wanna change the funding for another purpose? Um, I don't think, I don't think that's, I don't think that should be done.
No, legally, can that Corporation Council?
Hold on, hold on, Councilwoman Davila.
Councilwoman Morris.
Hold on a minute.
Councilwoman Morris did it many times.
No, no, no.
Hold on a minute, council members, council members, council members, please. We're trying to address the situation, we're not trying to point fingers here of why something was removed.
I would like to just answer why
Please.
why she's thinking that Councilman Morris did it. The first year that I came back to the city, Councilman Morris did change my budget. I was not happy. We, I sat in that chair where Javier, I'm sorry, where Javier is sitting, I'm sorry to point. Sat, sat there, but the reason why he changed is because one of the entities applied, but they applied on the wrong form. And he thought that that was wrong of me to deny them the, the ability to apply because they took the wrong form. I explained to him, we already vetted this. You cannot just change arbitrarily change the budget. We already know what we did. He said, I understand, we're gonna take a little off of this, a little off of that, which was DPD, DPW, and we gave this entity forty thousand dollars. Well, eight months later, I wind up taking thirty thousand back because the entity was not ready.
Got it.
And I had to do another budget amendment.
I wanna address Corporation Council on this.
So, so, so real quick, Barbara, let's say that we will go through this. Don't you have to send a budget amendment of, of the use of the funding to, to the? So that would delay the process even longer. How long does it take to do an amendment?
It's really you guys. Once I get on the, once I get on your agenda, it could take me a month, and by the time I get it to HUD, it's another two months.
But that's what I'm saying, council members, we, we have to prepare. We can't react after an entity is awarded or is recommending
Yeah, but.
an award. So my recommendation is, and it's not mine, it's your recommendation. I believe that we should have set your recommendation. Which, which was your recommendation initially?
Mine, four hundred and eighty thousand for this entity and a hun, one million forty-seven to go out to bid for, go out for proposals for mental health, senior services, youth services, and food pantry.
Okay.
So Corporation Council, based on that information, my recommendation, not my recommendation, I accept their recommendation, their initial recommendation, to allocate the funding that was basically recommended by them, which was reviewed by the committee? You do have a committee, right?
Yes, we have a review committee.
The monitors?
No, we have a review committee, I just gave you a list.
No, 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 I understand, it's, it's right here, it's right here. But I just wanna put it on the record. When I'm speaking is because we, you know, public is watching also. Um, and I wanna put it on the record. So Corporation Council, the amount originally was four hundred and eighty thousand, recommended by the administration, recommended by the monitors. Um, we gotta stick to that recommendation, that's my opinion.
Council President?
So, I, you didn't let me address the Corporation Council?
I'm sorry, you could, yes.
But what I.
Councilwoman Davila.
So what I wanted to just say, and again, you know, the committee as well, there was a recommendation to bring it to the workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, the change didn't happen. So the only question I would have to legal is, I apply for a bid, right? I, I don't know if you call it that, but, you know, I go ahead and I apply, and it's a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant, and I meet a whole bunch of people. I meet the four hundred and eighty, there's a review done, and now there's a recommendation to come. So now it goes through a process, right, and it moves forward. Legally, right, if I applied for that amount, can you then come back and you say, no? And it was already a recommendation done. I know that finally we vote on it, so we do have a say. Legally, can that be done?
Uh, thank you for your question, Councilwoman. Um, it, once it goes through the process in which the administration makes a recommendation, then it becomes within the purview of the legislature, i.e. the council members to decide on that. To the extent that there's some disagreement within the committee, that doesn't prevent the proposals from going before the entire council, and then the legislative process, uh, plays out, uh, depending on whether it's a two hundred thousand dollar or four hundred and eighty thousand. So however much there may be disagreement in the committee, nothing is finalized until the council votes upon it. And my understanding is there are no rights vested in the entity applying for that money um, until such time as it, there, there's approval for it. So they apply, it goes through the process, they may get it, they may not, um, and that process is subject to change throughout.
Yes, but, but the, the only thing, the only thing I gotta say, though, I, I don't see how a, a council member arbitrarily changing an amount, right? It went through a process, this is like, it's like, in general, it's just like the purchasing agent. It's like a purchasing agent changing a bid after he goes out and somebody already submitting a bid. Um, the recommend, hold on a minute, the recommendation was already submitted. Barbara, in your experience, how many years you, you've been in business doing this? I wanna, I wanna hear her, please, how many years?
I've actually worked for the city for thirty-four years.
Uh, but, do, doing this process?
Doing this particular process, about fifteen.
Fifteen? Now, let me, your opinion, Barbara. It is a process, an agency could actually, I know we could vote on it, but an agency, an agency could actually question this process
Yes.
in court, because they've been evaluated, right? In court, because they've been evaluated, right? You're supposed to give, that's why you you put in this committee, people that are not, I I would say that I'm biased, right?
Right.
They're supposed to evaluate, because I've been, I've been part of an evaluation committee for two different grants. You basically read the applications and you assign a score based on the criteria that they must meet. Am I correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Now, after reviewing this, the whole group get together, they evaluate all the applications and all the scores. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. You guys determined that the only agency, the only entity that applied that was able to fulfill the requirement was this entity.
Yes.
And your recommendation, based on the funding and the timeframe to use this funding, was four hundred and eighty thousand, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I just don't undersee, I don't understand why, you know, council colleagues would just change an amount without having all the facts. The only facts that they have is that one entity got four hundred and eighty and the rest didn't get any, the other three.
Council President.
That is not true, so what what took place?
Council President.
Councilwoman Mims.
So.
I want to, I want to hear Councilwoman Mims.
Yes. Uh, um, Director, just a request. I know that you do your publications to the newspaper. A lot of people are saying that they don't see the publications. Can you send that through email, the dates that it's going out, what the amounts are? Send it through, um, maybe put on the access channel on the web, send it to the council members so that if it's a flyer, we can circulate it if you want. Because a lot of people complain that they don't know the dates. I'm not, it's not because of your diligence, because you do.
I think we had this conversation when we were in the, in my office on Friday. I said, moving forward, we're going to send you every councilman.
I know, I know, I'm just putting it in our record, because that was a part of the discussion.
And definitely we'll be giving it to the clerk so she can put on the access channel.
Want to put it on record, that we will make sure, because a lot of people, they do say, I didn't see it. I didn't hear about it or whatever. So, um, if we can do that and, you know, try to do it in in different languages, that would be great to make sure that the community gets that.
Currently, we only advertise in the Especielito and the Arab Voice.
Okay.
The Bergen Record and the Herald News. So we don't, because the advertising costs a lot of money. The the Arab Voice is a thousand dollars, thirteen hundred dollars just for one little ad. And it's very expensive.
Barbara, can I ask you a question? After you finish, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and just to add, there was a a great dialogue regarding, um, a lot of learning, especially with some other entities that are doing really great now, that had some concerns, which, um, you know, and and I think those are some of the things that, it's not really our responsibility as council people, but we did reach out to those entities. And because of that reach out, they're doing much better.
Yes.
So maybe identifying like what resources, what help. Councilwoman Cotton and I just did this great nonprofit seminar, which was great. And I think it'll be helpful moving forward for those entities that have never applied, that now they'll look into applying for these funds and knowing, because a lot of times you look, they don't have an application. So that's the biggest part, you have to apply and know what what the needs are, so.
Yes.
Can can I ask you a question, Barbara? So what would HUD do if they know that this is our practice here? You think they would be okay with this?
Uh, they haven't been okay with this for a while.
They wouldn't, right? Just us, just changing things on the spot.
No.
Because they they have a process in place.
Yes.
So all I'm saying is, council members, not to keep, you know, kicking that that horse, is to make sure that we don't do this in the future, because it just doesn't look right.
I'm going to ask a legal question.
Council President.
Councilwoman Jackson.
So first of all, I can't, um, rest. And while this, uh, the the notion of impropriety is taking place, first and foremost, um, in spite of the process, the council has to find a vote on what we are to select. It is not an open, public bidding process. You made a comparison to, it's not. It's not an open, public bidding process.
It's an application process.
It's an application process. And the director uses utilizes a great deal of discretion that she also can rule in other, in other, in other ways. For example, I'm giving an example. I have an entity in the first ward that submitted an application. It happened to be during the time when the pandemic.
Round one.
When the pandemic struck. The security guard in the, in the ground floor instructed the person who was coming to drop off the application at that time that the building was closed and no one was, had access. It was on the final day in which the applications was being received. So when they told me, I said, no, that's not true, go back. And I called the director, by the time I reached her, she said the deadline had passed. Now, that person with the application, they paid an a grant writer to to get involved, to write a grant, was done on time, was there for the submission, and it wasn't allowed because it was given wrong information by a city employee, which in turn, we have cameras, that person should have been able to submit that application. The director has the discretion to do that. She chose not to.
I timestamp every application, I can't roll the clock back, so.
It's not about rolling the clock back, it is about they were there when it was, when it was allowed.
But I still have to stamp every application. That can be challenged.
That process is done by you. That's your your choice in to handle that, handle that process the way it is.
That HUD tells us to receive applications that were. You must timestamp every application.
Okay, and in it, in in, on their hearing, the videotape would have been able to be utilized at, please.
Councilwoman, I didn't say anything, I just pressed the button.
So, so with that being said, with that being said, the council has full discretion if we see other entities. Because, Director, don't you send out emails to certain entities?
I do not. You asked me that three times, I do not.
So none of these entities receive emails?
No, none of them.
Okay, oh, I, that's not the impression that I have. But, um, you know, I just, first of all, there needs to be an a, an overall effort to make sure that these entities that's rendering services directly to the population as being excluded. For example, I don't see in this list the hundred thousand dollars in COVID from that, from Oasis that was returned as well.
Yes, that was, this is.
On this list?
No, that's not on this list, because we haven't actually done that one yet. That's another resolution I have to present to you.
So the point is, the point is, that's a, that's a, we we have, we have homegrown grassroots entities.
I advertised what I had available at the time, this was November. That's the next resolution you're going to be getting, because I have a lot of entities that did not utilize any of the money. So I have to advertise again. And you only have until December.
Yeah.
The only point that I'm making, Director, and I would like, you know, a level of clarity. And I respect the fact that, um, you know, you you're protecting your yourself. But I, I mean, I was, I've been around for quite some time, in fact, I was a recipient. When Owen Tompkins was the director, he made effort to get into the community, make sure that members of the community was recipients. And I don't recall, you know, I know there there was a great deal of discrepancies in between. But during that tenure, when, when there was an effort to make sure, when there was other provisions put in place, whether it's training, whether it's, and I'm not talking about partnering with larger entities. We have to have something in place where we're ensuring that those who are grass lev- ground, ground level grassroots who are, who do know, who won't return a hundred thousand dollars because they they won't ever say, oh, I, we can't identify the families. You know, these entities, they're they're eas- they can easily identify the families. Their challenge is is in other areas, whether it's someone helping with the writing, maybe it's the funding, you know. When we, and again, I'm going to send another request, um, Council President, if 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 you can entertain it. But Corporation Counsel, you know, there needs to be an audit done on, uh, the entity that was overseeing the, uh, the newly minted, uh, dispatch center. Because there's all well over thirty to forty million dollars that was squandered that that money could have been utilized and put in into various pots to allow people to draw down on it and pay that back. But by being able to utilize and access these funds. If you see entities, they're rendering service, but they they're having difficulty getting funded. So it is our job, I disagree with Council President, it is our job, not just as a governing body, but as an administration, to make sure that we're providing levels of, uh, of assistance for these entities that are here, ground level grassroots, rendering services to the community. This is my perspective, but, uh, thank you, Director.
So all I want to say, Director, all I ask of you is to do your job as as as, as you know how to do it, follow the guidelines from HUD. I don't want you to put us in a situation, uh, that would harm the city by putting funding in jeopardy.
Yes.
Um, you, you know, you know the process. And that's all I ask. I just question the process. If if my colleagues would have a great reason for for reducing it by two hundred or two hundred eighty, whatever the amount is, then I just wanted to hear the reason. But four agencies applied, you guys recommended one, you had a valid reason, based on what you said, for not awarding it to the three. We have a time limit, we don't want to give money back to to HUD. We, the 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 community needs the service, and that's why I'm bringing it up. That's that's all. I don't know if you agree with me or not.
No, I agree, I agree.
That, this is going to go on regular. And I'm glad you agree with me, Barbara, that, you know, that was your recommendation.
Councilwoman, uh, Jackson, if your client, your your agency still wants to apply, we're going to be advertising again. They should just make it on time, please.
Uh, Council President.
Council President.
So it's going to go on regular. For four hundred, four hundred and eighty thousand, well, whatever the award was that you recommended.
Four eighty.
Council President, if I, if I make a quick comment, I I just, you know, should receive a text that. I I just want to make a comment, I know that, Director, listen, you you are very capable to do your job. You you've been, and, you know, you have a lot of experience in what you do, we trust you. Uh, but I also do believe, just to put on record, that we have to find a way to educate, help other entity to be able to apply uh, for those grants. It's really, uh, it it's really sad that we only see the same people applying and getting all the funding, which is something that, there's a lot of question out there, but we understand that they do their job, they do their diligence. But I think that in our side, we have to find a way to be able to help those entity that are providing service to our community. And all they, all they need is a a better structure to be able to apply. I do believe that we have to put some effort into that, because I'm looking forward to see some new entity getting a lot of those funding, uh, and not the same entity over, over and over. Thank you, Council President.
I just want to respond to that. I would love to help.
Sure.
An agency.
Yeah.
Uh, apply better, that that's definitely our, um, objective. Our goal is to help anyone that is qualified, and you have to be qualified, um, to apply for these funds. We we are not looking to give it to the same agencies, but apparently these same agencies are the only ones that seem to be able to meet the guidelines. It's not that I'm saying I don't want to help anyone, but we only have eight staff members. We can't take on all of the entities' requirements to become a nonprofit to apply for these funds. We have to monitor them. It takes us at least eight months before the next project is due, which, because you changed the fiscal year, my fiscal year has changed, it's shortened. So I I got COVID one, COVID three, regular CDBG, regular, um, twenty CDBG, twenty nineteen CDBG, and now twenty one. I have more money than I can throw away. And it's only that. The eight.
That sounds powerful.
Staff members in my department are struggling to meet the guidelines that HUD is requiring. So we can't just sit and try to hold hands. You really need to have someone else, not our agency, because we are monitors.
Uh, Barbara, hold on, hold on a minute, council members. Madam Clerk, they're going to continue with the discussion, let's put this on regular for the next meeting. Um, Corporation Counsel, as you, as Barbara stated.
The original one that was.
We're going to go with her recommendation. Um, Councilwoman Mims, uh, take over, Councilwoman Jackson, you have the floor, I'm going to, uh.
I have a question. I have a question on fourteen, Mr. President, before you leave. Am I, um, getting an amended resolution for number fourteen? Not the one I have tonight.
Another one you have.
Okay, thank you.
She got the original.
So.
She has the original?
She should.
I have the budget page, only the budget page.
Director, Councilwoman Jackson, I only have one question, very quickly. So the mayor spends a great deal of money on doing robocalls, where he's randomly spewing out things about, uh, crime rate, things of that nature. We have a Facebook page, city has a Facebook page, we have a website, which I'm sure, I'm I'm, I'm sure it's advertised on the city's website. But are these items, um, capable of being advertised in a new, more, um, you know, uh, current, with a new current model as opposed to just doing newspaper advertisements? Have we, has it been advertised on the city, on the, on the face, social media pages?
It's not on social media, but it is on the city's website.
Well, social media pages is one. It should be included on the mayor's robocall, when he's making these calls out the barriers. I mean, it, there needs to be more of an effort just to bring more, um, attention to the the accessibility of of this funding. And, uh, you know, there's so many different ways, whether it's text messages, we give it to the council members, and we can put it on our perspective pages.
We had that conversation on Friday. We will be getting them. Council President.
Thank, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Cotton.
Um, I need Corporation Counsel or Madam Clerk. Um, when you put the agenda out, what, when do you post the agenda? I'm asking, I'm not sure.
The work, the workshop agenda is not given out to the public until a couple minutes before the workshop. The workshop agenda.
So, so in other words, what I'm trying to say is that, I remember one time, Madam Clerk, I wanted to take a resolution, uh, to show someone. I remember asking you, and you said, I can't let you take it because it's not public record yet. It's not public record until we as council members see it.
It should not be distributed.
But what I find out is that council people are showing stuff, Corporation Counsel, before it's supposed to be shown. I clearly remember you telling me, I can't let you take this because I can't let you put it out there until we discuss it. So, huh? No, but I'm saying it happened, so that that, this last item that we talked about was put out there before today. So it was put out there before today, so that's why I'm saying.
And on social media.
And on social media. That's all, I'm just saying, I'm asking.
Can we get clarity on, when you say put it out there, was was the resolution out there or just like the information?
Resolu- no, I was saying she in the resolution, I'm not sure.
How, I I'm sorry, because when you make statement like, like that, you have to have proof, and you have to have proof.
I have proof.
When you make statements that a resolution was put forth and left.
I didn't say put forth.
No, 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 you said that it was out before this meeting, okay, before the workshop, and Council President, Councilwoman Mims, just stated, and it was on social media. So please provide that information, because they were going out to say, say it, the tooth will weigh.
Go to social media, but I'm just saying that, but that I don't want to, I remember, Madam Clerk, I asked you for something one time, and you said, I can't let you take it until, until.
The council.
The council sees it.
Yes.
You said that. And I couldn't even, I couldn't even discuss it with nobody who I wanted to, because you, I took your word, what you said.
It becomes a public record once it comes in the chamber, in the meeting, a workshop like that.
That's it.
So I don't have the practice of distributing it to, not even the department head.
Right.
But I would ask.
That's why. Yeah, so, so that's why, that's why I said, um, and and that's why, when I, yeah, yeah. It was posted on social media how much they were getting.
Yeah, it was posted how much they were getting.
Yeah. But I just want to say, um, because I remember.
You're correct.
I remember, Madam Clerk, and that's why I stopped, I stopped, because I remember when I wanted to do resolution, you said, I can't give it to you, Councilwoman, because the council members have to look at it first and they have to vote on it, or not even vote on it.
You keep saying that, but I'm just saying this to make, to to clarify. You have specifically said that this resolution was given out.
Okay, not say resolution. Not say resolution, but the information was given out before we, before. This, maybe not the resolution, but the information was given out before we, the whole body looked at it.
So, so let me say this, Councilwoman Mims did not say, say that. Councilwoman Cotton, uh, made the statement. And I said that the information was posted with the dollar amount on social media. So what happens is, even though it could be something you apply for, just a recommendation to anyone, be, it, we should wait until after it comes to the council and is vetted for approval, um, to ensure. Was Ming talking to me? Oh, oh, um, un- until that happens, because the council had not even saw it, right? We know that workshop agenda is not publicized, correct, Madam Clerk? It's not publicized.
Now you know. Now I understand what you're speaking about, Counsel, and I didn't need to cut you off. Councilwoman, the post that you're you're discussing is that a entity says, oh, you know, this is the great work that we do, something that they've always done. And secondly, it said, and we have applied for new monies. They have the right to do that, they didn't say they're getting it, they said they've applied for it.
But, but they done took it, they done took it off.
Right, because I had a discussion with them.
Okay, but, but. Councilwoman.
I wasn't done, Council President.
So, Councilwoman Mims, Councilwoman Mims is not done, can we keep quiet, please?
Yeah, the word, the wording was adjusted, but just, you know, and it's for anyone, not just for this one in particular. But before the council, it comes before the council is vetted, um, you know, just to en- any entity, because it causes, when people see COVID dollars, they don't know the CDBG, they don't know all of that. They quickly connect it to the sixty three point seven million dollars. Those are the calls that come through, because they don't know CDBG, they don't know that. So when the, when things are out like that, they don't know, you know? But clarity came, it was, it was amended and adjusted, so that was just it, but it it happens, you know, it just.
Well, I want to just say thank you for the clarification, because when you said that social media and she's saying the in- information was put out there, you know, I mean, I sit in a, in a committee that I left with a number, right? As I was leaving, that I was in another office, and you said, it's being changed, I said, who changed it? And then I said, we'll have a discussion, but we didn't go into detail, you know, we didn't, I was walking out. So I didn't know, but with that said, thank you for the clarification of what you were specifically, because this council, and I can tell you right now, I can say it here, all right? Anything that's discussed in a committee is stated in committee. But it's interesting, though, at the same time, because there's been many a times where there's been other council members that have sat in committees and then gone out there, and before we even discussed anything in workshop, it was already put out there. But with that said, Council President, thank you very much.
Let's not prolong it, listen, sometimes it happens, right?
We've done.
There is, we deal with the state. The state sometimes let you know how much you might be getting before it gets approved by the legislature. This is not new. Uh, I'm not saying that we should tell the entities, that's not what I'm implying, but it has happened. We deal with the state often, the state tells sometimes some of these entities, tell, give us an idea of how much we're getting, an idea. But it's not official, I see your point, Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Cotton, it's not official until we approve it. But it happens at different levels, just so you know. Um, so this is going to go, this is going to go on regular. Correct, and I I'm in agreement with you, that's, that's, yes. So fourteen on regular.
Yes, I have that, thirteen and fourteen, correct?
Yes, thirteen and fourteen. Yes, 13 and 14.
Right.
Madam Clerk, we have
Are we moving down to 16, or?
Oh, 16, yeah, 16.
Number 8.
16 and 17 should go on consent.
16 and 17, consent.
You want 17 on consent, Councilwoman Davila? I think you had an issue last time with that one. That's Los Primos, whoever that is.
We cannot, if there are anything to discuss with the other Corporation Council, if we really need to discuss before we want to
Councilwoman, 16, we're on 16 and 17. Those are going to go on consent, and if I don't hear anything from anyone.
Number 8, can we do number 8?
Excuse me?
Number 8, can we do number 8?
No, we didn't do number 8 yet.
Not yet, we didn't.
Could we do number 8, Madam Clerk?
Okay. So we're keeping 16 and 17 on consent.
Yes.
18 is for the clerk's office, this has to do with the DocuWare, the imaging system that we have, and this contract expires at the end of June.
Number 8.
Number 8, yeah, that's the one for, for the clerk's office, yes, it can be consent.
Consent, Council President?
Okay, consent.
Thank you. Moving over to
So the next one will be number 31?
Thirty
Number 31 on regular.
Velez, number 31.
Yes.
Is there any objection on Broadway?
Yes, that's what Councilman Velez said.
Is there not Broadway?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is there any comment? We call them all time, right? Would they call me in person?
Yes.
Well, there's some, there's some business going, 37 years back, so. Does anyone have a name in the Broadway?
Sure.
Corporation Council, can you
I'd, Councilwoman Cotton. Okay, I'd add her there.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So number
Councilwoman Velez.
Number 34 goes on regular.
34, regular.
33. I wasn't around last week, does it go on regular? Anybody has any comments?
I don't have a comment.
Actually, was this presented by administration?
No.
So you want to have a discussion on this?
Not last week, no.
Huh?
I mean, it was discussed before, but not last week.
You know, every single time, we didn't discuss this, so we just
Well, we don't have to have the same discussion, we want to know how we're moving, because I asked the administration how, what we're doing with this property. So, and I went on vacation after that. So what are we doing, like, do we have a plan for this property, or are we doing what?
Council President, as Director Powell has noted before, for properties like this, and he presented in the memo, there are a couple options. Our preferred option is to wait until we're able to foreclose, then to go through the process of turning the property over, whether it hasn't, needs to have an environmental review, whether, then that includes an LSRP, and then being able to auction the property, so that the city benefits from the greatest possible revenue.
What, yeah, but the No, no, what we're saying is this, it's not just about this, this, this property. Corporation Council, where are we, not just about this property, where are we with the request to hire an entity to help us out with the foreclosure proceedings for all the properties that we have city held liens? Not this one, in general, where are we?
In general, thank you, Council President, we do have our RFP that I believe is still outstanding, I think it's set to close any day now, so I've been working with Harry in purchasing to get that going. It's already out there, and as soon as it closes, we'll be able to undertake the next steps.
Javier, do you have a list of city held liens? Old city held liens?
Yes.
Okay, is there a lot of them? A lot of properties that we have multiple city liens?
It wasn't a lot, no.
So the comments that our previous CFO often made about we having prop, we having city held liens in our old system that we cannot, I guess, open, we're having a problem with this whole system, that was inaccurate?
Yes, I'm not sure what the comment was.
KVS. She said there was a lot of liens there, city held liens that we're not, we were not able to
So when we went over from KVS to Admins, there was about 300 liens that there was an issue with, but that they haven't fixed.
That we haven't fixed?
That, it has been fixed.
It has, how many you think we have, more or less, roughly?
I have to look.
And some of those properties have multiple liens, right? We could probably try to foreclose on some of them. Okay.
Council President?
So let's go back to this one, Councilwoman Jackson.
Well, I have a question along the lines of where you, your questioning was, Mr. CFO, there's a property on the corner of Belmont and North Eighth, just North Eighth. Yeah, it used to be, it was a former funeral home, there was church, there was a, there was discussion about possibly doing something similar to offer it to a community group, such as, at the time, it was Men Stand Up. I don't think you were on at the time, Councilwoman Cotton was the president, Councilwoman Cotton was the president at that time, but can you please do it, you know, give us a report on that property, see if there's any city held liens on that property as well? Because I think it was on the list, it was, it was a list, remember Director Powell gave us a list, and it, some of that list, there was some properties that was deemed to be demolished, they were looking to utilize the equipment
Oh, the list was
That we spent almost a million dollars on, it has not been utilized as yet, maybe once or twice. But anyway, relative to this property, Council President, council members, you know, my belief, one, this section of the First Ward definitely needs some attention. You know, we have a partnership that we've engaged, where we're looking to do some phenomenal things in that area, and the administration has definitely put all of its purse strings in, in the upper side, so to speak, of the First Ward, and you know, the residents on this side feel, feel as if, if you're not from those sides of the tracks, there's nothing to be, you know, nothing to be said for on this side. This property has been an eyesore and vacancy for well over 30 years. Now, with that being said Still waiting. With that being said, it will be incredibly irresponsible of us, because I have an email that I'm going to make sure
I have an email I'm going to make sure I give to all of you, where the director was in line with the communication, and I have to, because I sent the request about this property to the director, and he sent the request through, so I have the email where I sent the request. But if you look at what happened with the lead or die property, it was, that project was poorly managed, there's still portions of it that have not been, you know, excavated, the basements are still there, the, it hasn't been abated, and the city took on a great deal of debt, and it took on a lot of time. We're talking about putting a property right online. If you look at the Armory Project, we spent, the initial bid was $750,000, they came back to the table for 1.2, 1.3, and then ultimately, we had to spend another $200,000, $300,000 because that portion of the property collapsed. Another poorly managed property. One, relative to taxpayers getting this thing back on the line, back on the tax rolls as quickly as possible, but more importantly for me, it's about curing that eyesore. I get, I cringe every time I ride across Lafayette Street Bridge, and I have to look on the right-hand side at an illegally maintained lot, where you have trucks and cranes parked on a non-paved surface, so they're consistently breaking the law, they're storing large equipment there, it's in a, you know, it should not be stored there the way it is, no enforcement, and then right across the street is this property. It's, it's falling down, it's dilapidated, it's been spray painted on, and it's unfortunate because my personal belief is, especially the director, is just waiting for this thing to fall down on someone possibly, and/or, you know, he doesn't have to drive past this eyesore every day because he doesn't live here. There's something that needs to be done, the council needs to take a proactive step towards curing some of these ills, and this is the first one, let's make it happen.
So, so Councilman, so I'm guessing here, I wasn't here last week, so this item got on the agenda because you brought it to the agenda?
Correct.
Right, you submitted it. But my question to administrative, to Corporation Council is, even if the council acts, right, this needs to be executed by the administration. What I mean the administration is, you need a tax collector involved, it needs to be advertised, it's a lengthy process. I see, I see what you're saying, Councilman, but at the same time
It's not a lengthy process, it's been through all of that.
No, no, but hear me out.
It's been a few years.
I understand.
Been through how many assignments?
I don't, yeah, but I don't understand, like, you know, the administration should sit down and, and look at, you know, look into this.
Council President, you and I both know, we all know, that the administration is not interested in working collaboratively with the First Ward council person, so the residents are suffering. We had a discussion here several weeks ago.
Yep.
You pulled the item.
Let me ask the
You gave, you, you specifically, you gave the director a timeline to come back with something, they've come back with nothing, but the same results, and I was expecting specifically that I would be able to get your support and support. This is now a council measure, this is not, we don't have to wait for the administration, we'll be waiting forever.
We haven't finished yet the discussion, so the question that I'm going to ask is Nothing has been done with this property for 30 years, and you guys have only been here for three. You have a council member stating that we could legally, basically sell the lien, which is going to bring some, you know, revenues to the city, and the reason I'm taking pause is because we talk about this so many times, it's not even funny. So in finance, we're at a point that we were just waiting for the CFO and finance members, correct me if I'm wrong, she wanted to check to see if we have any obligation, if someone was, if someone was to foreclose on this, right? Because all we're doing is selling the lien, is that correct?
We're selling
The lien.
The rights to the lien.
Well, we're selling the lien, that's, then they have the right after that, right? We're selling all the liens at a discounted amount.
Correct.
Then from there, they could proceed, I don't know how long it takes, I don't understand the process in detail, they could proceed to do a foreclosure proceeding on this.
And while they're doing so
They have to pay taxes.
They must remain compliant.
So, all I ask the administration is to submit a plan of what is their plan with this administration, I mean, with this property.
A month ago.
I did.
As the President.
And we were given three options, not a plan, but three options. We could either foreclose ourselves, which I've been asking, not for this property, but for anything, we haven't done any foreclosure proceeding in the last three years. I've been asking why we have, we always talking about relief to the taxpayers, right? I think a way to bring relief is to try to collect on those properties that have not been paying taxes in a long time. We have some of those, don't know how many, but we have some of those, and this is one of them. So three years later, we still don't have a list of properties that we're going to foreclose on? Thank God, that Corporation Council, after we made a recommendation, we're going to, you know, we have an RFP out there, the CFO have a list of properties that we could probably foreclose on, but we shouldn't have to ask for three years. That's the problem that we have in this city. We're supposed to, you know, we often cry that we got to work together, but it's only when the administration needs something, that's when we need to work together. And it's frustrating.
Mary.
So, Councilwoman Jackson, council colleagues, I don't know how you want to move with this. We have a property here for many years, we have legal counsel here, if we could legally move forward with this, then I need to hear from Corporation Council. If we cannot move forward, then I'm not going to recommend that moving it forward, I'm not going to be that council member, and that's not me. So I need to hear from Corporation Council.
So, Council President, before Corporation Council answers, okay, I just want to reiterate and put on record again, how many times in the last thirty
We know.
No, 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 I just want to say, because we were told legally, we have the right, we can do this, to move forward, because it's been through a process of various assignment sales.
Can I, can I
Go ahead, Councilwoman Jackson.
So Corporation Council, I know, I don't know if you're fully engulfed in this, this piece here, but it is, it is not that you don't have the purview to weigh in on legal matters, but this item in particular falls under the obligation of our tax collector. She, it actually requires her signature. So I spoke with her over a month ago, just when she, when she, you know, touched down, she was unaware of it, she did the due diligence to check with the signature, she told me clearly, she said, "Listen, the council could do whatever it wants to do, Council President, please listen to this," because, she said, "The council could do whatever it wants to do, but this requires my signature, and I'm not putting my license on the line for anyone." And I said respectfully, "I completely agree. I'm not asking, I'm just, you know, calling you because I did send a request to have it put on the agenda." That was the first night that I had it put on the agenda. So she, she said, "I don't care what you do, but it doesn't matter, it needs my signature, and I'm not signing nothing out I can't do legally." So she did the due diligence, and she came back, said, you know, it's, you know, she had, it's been vetted, and it's, and it's capable
Right.
Of happening. Now, she left, she said, "It falls back, Council President." She specifically said it falls back on the hands of the legislative body. Didn't say we have to go back to the administration and ask them again. You know, we've been playing this, this, this dance, playing this song, doing this dance for quite some time. You know, there's multiple properties, there's the property, the empty, the previous factory on the corner of North Seventh and Clinton Street, that's another example. There's another one on, well, the house that I just asked the CFO about. Once we get through this one here and find out if this one is a success, we've allowed the administration, not just this one, but previous as well, to make attempts at doing this before, and it's been gross failures, so.
So, Councilman, can I ask you a question? So this is going to be open for the tax collector to negotiate with whoever?
Correct.
How does this work? Because he mentions a minimum bid. Who determined the minimum bid?
It's set by state statute.
So what percentage is it?
Five.
Five percent of the assessed value?
No, I don't know what
That's what it is.
Yeah.
It says minimum bid $100,000. The assessed value on the property is
Those figures have to be readjusted, because the time that has elapsed
But that's what I asked you last time, the tax collector needs to, you know, adjust his numbers?
Correct. This is, this is a draft that I've been forcing on the workshop agenda.
So, let me, let me, let me hear from Corporation Council. Corporation Council, I need to hear from you.
What do you want to know specifically, Council President? Because I've emailed both our on-staff tax attorney on this already, and I'm in communication with my second assistant right now on this issue as well to get some clarity. I know Councilman Jackson asked this result to be prepared, and I noticed it's not signed off on by legal, so I just want to make sure I understand all the parameters, including the tax assessor and collector's purview on this before we give the green light.
So this is, this is something we don't do often, right? This is something we don't do often, that's why I'm asking for an opinion, because I don't see why the administration is not supportive of the measure, that's why I'm asking for a legal opinion, because I could ask my colleagues if they want to move forward, but I would think it would be responsible of me not to ask the question. I often ask the question for a legal opinion, and if you're not ready to give a legal opinion, and I'm not saying that Councilman Jackson is not right to put this through, I just don't understand why this administration doesn't want to, you know, if you have a better plan for the property, then they let us know, but it just can't remain there doing anything.
Council President, you've been saying this for a month already.
I know, I've been saying this for a month already.
Right back.
But Corporation Council just said that he has to check with his, you know
Listen, he can do that
Councilman, can I just say, Councilman, anything that we vote on, Councilman, Councilman, the job of Corporation Council, anything that we vote on here, they have to review before we act on it.
I didn't draft this legislation.
They haven't reviewed it.
I didn't draft this.[1796.62]
You heard it from me?
He hasn't reviewed it, but his staff has. All it takes is for him to be abreast of it. All these matters are legally done, this is not.
I need, before I act on any resolution on this council.
We're going to hold it again?
Hold on, Councilman, the responsible thing to do is, if I don't hear from Corporation Counsel, I need to hear from him. He needs to review everything that we act on, on this council, and correct me if I'm wrong. Anything that we act on on this council, we need to get a, uh, it needs to be reviewed by legal. Isn't that the process? That's the process, correct?
Yes, particularly with something like this, and, and Councilman Jackson may be right on the way forward here. But, you know, like I said, I'd like to have it blessed by my experts on this. So that if this is the way forward, it, it, there's no challenges or anything that could claw it back.
I don't want to be repetitious, but like I said, we were told that legally, because this has been put out there so many times, that this could be done. But again, Madam BA.
Yes, Council President, I think the question is whether it's the best option for the city. And if we're talking about a property that, and especially since we're moving now with having outside counsel to, to help us, the RFP is out to go through foreclosures. We want to make sure that this is the best possible outcome for the city. And I don't know if you can compare something that could possibly go out for auction for over a million something dollars with rushing a plan with a minimum bid of a hundred thousand dollars. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's the best use of this tool for the residents and taxpayers of the city.
Hold on, hold on, Councilman, hold on. But, but this is what I said, and, and if I didn't recommend us getting an entity to come here, we wouldn't be doing it either.
But Council President, this was on our radar, and as you might remember, we lost a, uh, attorney who was, who specialized in this during COVID, who was going to be helping in this realm with foreclosures. And, you know, that's where we stand today. And we also didn't know how much money we would be having to, to go out and have a special counsel to do this. This is when, we didn't know what our tax revenue was. So when we talk about this, it's been three, three years, that's not necessarily the case.
Madam BA, listen.
We've had, we've been in COVID for the past year.
You guys create the budget.
Yes, and we also didn't know what the revenue was going to be.
In some of those departments, and we could pay for, for, uh, the legal counsel that we need.
Well, I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're here now, and we're able to move forward on this, and that's why we've all come together. But I don't think this is something that, um, you know, in, in talking about this as an issue, it doesn't mean we, we don't have a plan to tackle foreclosures. Like you said, the CFO has already provided you with a list, the Corporation Counsel has already gone to RFP.
Can you say the list again?
So where, where's that plan, Council President? You, you specifically, you, you asked to have a plan presented. Now, it's, it's not a fair depiction to give.
She just stated they're going to do foreclosure proceeding on this, that's what she's saying.
No, she didn't, no, she did not. She did not say that. They're not prepared to do a foreclosure proceeding.
This is one of the properties that we would look to, to foreclose on.
Look to do.
And so we would examine everything about it. Well, part of it is, you know, part of it is that there is also an environmental component to this.
Correct.
So it would likely.
We're incapable of.
Excuse me, as the director had said, for properties like this, we would use the template of lead or die, that we would foreclose, we would do the LSRP, we would go to auction. That means everything's on the table, it provides us for the, the highest possible value for a property and a space.
Understood, and it sounds great, but what, what's so disrespectful is, is that we've been asking for a while now. And you just said we might look, like, you know, we, we're going to look to foreclose on it.
Well, I, I don't want to speak for what the, the counsel that we might end up getting from the RFP. If that counsel comes to us and says, this is not the best use for this, maybe you should just go ahead and sell the lien right now.
That's not, I don't think that's their job. Their job is to, to, to see if we foreclose on it. That's not the job, that's not the job of the counsel, of Corporation Counsel.
Advising consent when we have a real estate attorney.
Talking about a third-party counsel.
That's not, no, hold on, hold on. We're not hiring that entity to come here and tell us what is the best use for the property, no. We're, we're hiring a, a specialist, let's say.
An expert to assist us.
Foreclosure proceedings.
Yes.
Right, they're going to analyze the liens that we have and determine if we could do a foreclosure proceeding on this property. Now, it is the job of the administration and, and, and Economic Development Director to already have done the research on this, and I'm sure, maybe he has, maybe he hasn't, I don't know. And see what we could do to remediate this, this whole situation. And even if we do the foreclosure proceedings, let's say, what guarantee us that this property will be sold? That's another situation.
Council President, this, this property has been on the sale list for the last twenty years.
And in part.
It's been, correct, it's been in an open public auction for the last twenty years.
The other thing that we, that you, you, you're not, that's, that's being negated is the fact that this could possibly be a multimillion dollar abatement. So, uh, if you look at the, the track record of what's been done with the other properties, I mean, maybe they plan, maybe there's a plan to start a fire here, I don't know. But if you're going to demolition the property, first of all, that has to be, that's an expense that we have to incur. Then we have to abate the property. So it's going to wind up sitting here for another ten years, as opposed to us holding someone accountable for doing that. And guess what? If they don't do it, it reverts back, right back to the same status, where there's still another opportunity. But in the meantime, we're collecting ratables, we're collecting taxes, dollars right away, I mean, listen.
Council President, just, the one point is incorrect. We wouldn't necessarily have to abate the property, but we would likely follow the same process we did with lead or die, that have an LSRP, so that we have an understanding of what the environmental challenges is. We talk about the fact that it's been vacant, that no one's even bought a lien on it. If I were an investor and I didn't know what the environmental impact was, because there was no such study, I wouldn't take a risk on that either. So by doing this, similar with what lead or die is, when it's public, when we know what the LSRP report is, then you can go forward with an auction.
But the, the interesting part, feel this, this conversation we're having right now? We've been talking about, you brought up this property several times in, in a meeting in the past. And nothing has been provided to us at all.
Nothing in economic.
And you can say, and you can try to make a case.
It's the council's purview.
And you could make a case and say, look, this property's been there for thirty years, we only been here for three, yeah. But this council haven't been here for thirty years, this council's been here for three, and we want action, right?
And I understand that, Council President, and I think that's why we're going through projects like the Armory, like lead or die. This can be one of the next ones on the list, it's not like, you know, that we've been sitting here not doing anything.
Yeah, the residents can afford, we want to move responsibly as soon as possible. We can't afford to just say we're going to leave it for later, because what, something that I noticed, and this is my personal opinion based on what I've seen, we, what, now we, I'm not going to take credit for that. The administration have put in so much effort in Hinchcliffe, that sometimes they forget about everything else. And I have told this to the Economic Development Director. When something doesn't get done, all I hear is, well, I've been so busy with Hinchcliffe. No, we have a whole city to deal with, it's not, it's not just Hinchcliffe. A, a place that, you know, I'm happy is getting done, but it's not going to generate any ratables.
That this property will make more money in ratables than Hinchcliffe.
So all I need from the administration is just, you know, everything doesn't just revolve around Hinchcliffe. We have the rest of the city to, to deal with.
Agreed, I'm agreed.
Thank you, thank you. Yes.
You know, since we're on, on this topic, you know, um, I, I really want this council also to know, um, you know, our, Madam BA, um, as you can see, and even in today's meeting, you know, when it's being addressed, either she's making some type of movement, or, you know, or just jumping on. And I really want us, I want everyone on this council to know that I copied all of you, blind copied you on an email to address the BA and, um, her not answering, um, the personnel committee specifically, um, and her response. And you go on like this, but I told you that I was going to mention this here.
You could mention it, but could we finish the agenda?
No, 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 because, no, the other two items, just so you know. I know, no, no, because I, I, I'm not going to do them in my closing remarks. Excuse me?
She would like to respond, Councilwoman.
So, so, in, in the response, I sent an email, I have my assistant during the day, I don't send emails, I had her. I drafted it, I sent it to her to send to the BA, and I said, put the personnel committee and have the rest of the, the council members to be aware. To be addressing a matter where, you know, very dismissive, and to not respond to me as the chair, as a councilwoman, and just respond to my secretary, you know, that to me, I found it unacceptable. And since I was not addressed appropriately, I felt that I needed this to be addressed as a council. You know, um, I'm sorry? What did you say? No, 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 I know it wasn't about me, but it said you're speaking to me, and then, so, so I'm saying this to say this. We, the personnel committee, are as important as DPW Public Safety, and I expressed that to her not only in my phone call, but through the email as well. Secondly, we request the presence of our BA to be at our meeting so she could address, okay, our concerns that we should be discussing in a committee and not on an open, um, uh, council meeting. So from here on in, I'm going to put everything on record on the council, because if we are not being respected as a council, as a committee, the personnel committee, then I'm going to address every situation, and I'm really going to request and now be part of to have a committee, a committee of the whole. I think we need to do it, because at that point, she must respond to us. This is not, I don't have to respond to you, because that is what she said to me last week, and it was offensive, I put it in writing. And her response, to not respond to me and to respond to the secretary to say, I'm sorry, the councilwoman feels that way, and leave it at that, it was wrong.
Madam BA.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Well, first of all, I'd like to address this, this larger issue, that the councilwoman is, is misconstruing and, um, not appropriately respond, or not appropriately detailing the conversation. What the council president had called about, or the chairwoman had called about, was why I was not at the personnel committee meeting. I have said it repeatedly, that I cannot attend another evening meeting, that I have family obligations, that I am here on Tuesday nights until twelve in the morning, that I have made myself available during the day, and that the councilwoman chooses not to do that for the personnel committee meetings. So I send, we, we provide appropriate, uh, reports. I have staff who are there, and it is a personnel committee meeting, the director of personnel is there. And most times, an assistant business administrator is there, who happened to be on vacation last week. So, and then in terms of my conversation with the councilwoman, she said, this committee is exactly the same as every other committee. And I said, councilwoman, that is not true, it is not exactly the same, because we, we do not have legislation that we have to review, that we're moving on in a timely manner to the next meeting. I said, what we do provide for you are the reports, and I do my best to answer your questions, and my team is there to answer your questions. But I, and I have made myself available during the day, and I confirm that. And councilwoman, if you have your secretary send me an email, I am going to respond to her. If you would like to send me an email, I can respond to you. Other council members do it all the time. It was, it was your, your assistant send me an email with the, with the memo. I don't think that was, it was not disrespectful, I was responding to who I got the email from. And so I will reiterate again, let's find a time, a common time that we can meet during the day and have these conversations. I'd be happy to join.
Council President?
Speaker Jackson.
So first and foremost, Madam BA, let's not fail to acknowledge that these meetings were being held during your work hours, and even then, you found way not to attend. You found ways to make excuses, that you had other important things to do, whether it was the governor's functions. You're being paid by the residents of the city of Patterson. You're not being paid to show up at press conferences, you're not being paid to attend state, uh, hosted seminars and or meetings. You're being paid by the residents of Patterson.
Yes, Councilman, and none of those are true.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I did not interrupt you. Um, the councilwoman, who's not being paid a full-time salary, she was taking time from her lunch break to come down here, and we all have families. We all have other obligations, we all have other commitments. Um, in particular, my, all my children have either softball, or martial arts, or tumbling during the hour of five o'clock. And there's times that I have to take them to Essex County, because this municipality fails to render those activities. So I make, I, there's many times that my children have to wait, and they don't get to attend class, but I show up here. And there's times that I can't make it as well, but I've never said to the chairwoman, um, hey, that's tough. Or I've apologized to her, said, look, ma'am, I'm sorry I can't make it. But the attitude that you have given, and I will attest to it, because it has been on display for quite some time, even from the argument that took place between you and Madam Sharon during one of our personnel committee meetings. So your, your decorum, your, uh, your posturing is not one of which is of public service. You know, I know this is your first position in, in the public sector and service position, where your obligation is to the taxpayers. Now, you may feel another way, you may feel that you can, um, create and make your own, your own path, your own rules, but that's not how this works. With whatever committee that this council decides it needs to put together to, 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 um, to provide oversight, it is, that committee is necessary. Now, in difference of what your opinion is, because this committee has no importance, this committee's role, that's, that's what you implied, that was the implication.
That's not what I said, sir.
I'm sorry, please, once again, I did not interrupt you, which I make it a common practice not to interrupt you. But this committee's role is to make sure that it stays within the confines of the budgetary restrictions. So when we find, and we have to be informed on social media, that there's employees under your department that are receiving paychecks in excess of eight to nine thousand dollars per pay period, and we decide that it's necessary to put forward a committee to have, to put, provide that oversight, then this, it's, it's within the purview of this council to do so. And it is your obligation to fulfill the council's requests. Now, Council President, you know, we've known each other for quite some time, and I have to tell you, um, very disappointed, because you make a lot of statements, and you, you, um, you're failing to fulfill those, those statements that you make. We talked about, even from the standpoint of a committee of the whole. You know, I, I started drafting some lists of some failures, from my perspective, of course. And I sent them over to Councilwoman, um, Davila, and her take on it was, well, it's not enough. And it was an ext, pretty extensive list. The last committee.
I didn't say it wasn't enough, that's not what I said.
Oh, you said it should be more, okay, um, I apologize. But the last, um, committee of the whole that was held, it was over something very simple. A seventeen thousand dollar check, only seventeen thousand dollars, that this council felt the need to be responsible. We can list a number of things, from the poorly allocated tax credits, in which you consistently talk about this council has, I'm just making, giving some examples.
It has nothing to do with us.
It has, everything that takes place has to do with this council, especially when it comes to being fiscally responsible. Especially when it comes to holding the administration accountable. When you have a BA who's at, who's able to tell the council, you know, I'm not coming, that is, that, that is a grave concern. And I'll, I'll just make this last reference, and only because I find it extremely relevant. Whenever you work for the public, your time, your tenure, your commitment, your obligation belongs to the public. If you go into a meeting that you regard as being private, as per se, a cabinet meeting, and you make a statement within that meeting as such, because I've asked, I, I've asked the BA on a number of numerous occasions, did you or did you not make the statement that if you don't get a raise to one hundred fifty thousand, that you was going to resign? She is yet to answer the question. Now, the public is entitled to that answer. She didn't make that statement at her dining room table with her family. She made it in a meeting that had intent to oversee public dollars. This is important, we cannot continue to kick the can down the road.
Council, Council President?
We got it, yeah. Um, could we finish the agenda, then?
Yeah, 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 no, 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 I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to say that, and, and I'm going to say it again. Many a times I've seen, um, council members have their assistant, for whatever reason, okay, send, and Council President, you know, during the day, we're working, right? And if there's something that has urgency or whatever, we'll have our assistant do it for us. This is practice that we've done, I mean, since I've been here, I'm going here on eight years. I've seen. I've seen the administration, let me just put it that way, to not pinpoint on, on, on the specific of today, respond back to the individual who sent, who, who drafted the memo. So all I'm saying is this, to not be addressed. Secondly, to, to basically be dismissive, because that's what it was, and it is true. I did call, around 5:14, um, we're waiting, and I did call and just ask where you were, or where the, the BA was, because there was no assistant, and I said, "Well, you didn't send an assistant," and your response was, "I don't have to." And the second thing, the second, the second thing-
Councilwoman?
The second, no, the reason, no, no, no. I need to put this on here because I-
It's not your turn. Councilwoman, it's 12:17.
Yep, and it's not accurate.
Listen, I gave you the courtesy. We're speaking on something that's not on the agenda. I understand, listen, you have to, this is, no, it's a workshop, but it's not on the agenda. Let's finish the agenda items.
All right, Council President. I'm gonna leave it at that.
We need to address this because, Madam BA, you did undermine the importance of the Personnel Committee. It is part of the structure of the city, the Personnel Committee. Just because, and this is the problem that we have in, that we have in with the administration, and I stated this in a previous meeting. Even when I was in the school district, we were, we were ran by the state, they gave us the courtesy there. They made us feel that, they gave us respect and they laid us, basically, they took our recommendations into account. And they would not do things that we were against as a, as a, as a body, and they could have, right? Here, we're, we feel so disrespected that you first go to the state before you even discuss it with the council, even with new positions that never existed before. You go to the state first, and somehow I hold the state also, uh, you know, this should be a shame that they're entertaining this. They should ask, okay, is the council, everyone okay with this? Because ultimately, I don't want to receive any phone calls when we decide to start cutting budget line items. And we are. We've been, we've been disrespected tremendously in this council. Always being disrespected.
Council President, I would, if I can speak.
Sure.
I would suggest that that's the opposite of what we're trying to do. That that's why we have full budget hearings. We go through the entire process, and when there are, when there are changes, that's why we do come to Finance Committee. That's why we like to come to Personnel Committee. That's why we have the Public Safety Director, when he had changes with civilianizing. We, we are trying to follow this process. I think the disagreement is when there is this idea that, not that I'm not listening, but that I'm not doing necessarily, that the administration isn't doing.
Give you two examples just to keep it brief.
And I'm just, I'm just saying it about this meeting in particular, for Personnel Committee. If I'm not showing up, all of a sudden, that's being disrespectful.
And I, listen, no.
When you're not asking me, when I am available, when I'm working, in the past, can, if I can just finish, over the past pay period, I worked 106 hours. So the implication that I am not being a public servant, or that I am not choosing or doing my job. I have other parts of my job that I have to do, and I have family obligations. I'm trying to do a little bit of everything, and I, I don't want to be constantly told that just because I'm not abiding by the regulations that are being set by the council and by the councilwoman person in particular, that I am being disrespectful, because that's not true.
So Madam BA, those, you know, we are nine body, nine council members here. Can't control what my council colleagues say. I did tell you one time, myself, because I don't lie. That's one thing you're gonna find out from me. And I take responsibility for what I say, even if my colleagues don't like it. I did tell you one time that you have two assistant BAs, that if you cannot make it to a committee meeting, you could send your assistant BAs, but they have to be prepared to answer the questions. And even in Personnel, for, for example, although you might want her there to answer, I did, I'm not the chair, but I did tell you one time that you could have your assistants come to Personnel, but they have to be prepared. Uh, no, no, prepare to answer, and if they don't have the answer there, but it shouldn't be a habit that you go to a meeting and you cannot provide one answer, you know? But I did tell you, and I agree with you, listen, you have two assistant BAs. If you cannot make it, so this is not coming from me. If you cannot make it to some meetings, you could send, as long as they're prepared, to, to serve that function. That's that.
Thank you, Council President, because that, that is true. And I haven't missed a council meeting in the entire year that I've been here. And this week, when the councilwoman asked me, "Why didn't I send the other one?" She wouldn't have had the information. She, she's not the one who deals with the personnel issues. So that's why there was no one there this week.
Let me give you just two brief examples, and I gave you this before, to see why I'm still, it still bothers me. Just like you feel a certain way because you put in all these hours, we also decided to do budget hearings. In one of those budget hearings, we stated that we didn't agree with having a community liaison or something in recreation. It was part of that discussion. The next thing we know is that you transfer that person anyway. You created the position in there, transferred that person there. Then you made room in your mayor's office, and you hire somebody to almost perform the function. So now you have two people in the city that are almost doing the same thing when you always have one, right? I thought, I thought we had that conversation, but because you feel, and this is where we get offended, because the law says that you're the hiring authority. Sometimes you happen to forget that you need us in a lot of other things. And, 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 and this is where the working relationship and then the public have the perception that we cannot work with the administration. And I told the mayor, "It's a mayor. From day one, I'm willing to work with you." But the issue with you is this. When we approve something that you, you know, submit, we're working with you. The minute that we're asking you to make some changes in order to support what you're submitting, we're not working with you. And instead of you convincing us that it's a good project, you start calling a lot of people throughout the city to try to convince us. That's not the way we should work.
But Council President, I think when you're talking about budget hearings, there's always a little bit of give and take. You always give suggestions. We try to do some of them. We try to, we know that there are other ones. But that one was something that the mayor and the Director of Recreation had already discussed.
So the mayor of Recreation-
It wasn't necessarily me sitting there and doing it.
Correct. Not blaming you, talking about the administration, Madam BA. So now, given that point, I asked the administration to provide us, because we have a budget, um, is it introduction?
It'll be introduction in, in late May.
So I asked you to give us a list of all the employees in every department, and I asked my council colleagues to entertain me because it's disrespectful to come here every night and be disrespected often. Uh, the actions that have been taken without even giving us the courtesy of a conversation when new positions are created, that we take action and start removing things. Start cutting the budget. Start cutting the budget.
But, but Council President, that's actually why we came to Personnel Committee. It was to discuss those actions.
Madam BA, you don't post the position out there. This is, this is what's so disrespectful, Madam BA. You don't post the position out there. Already, it's already posted. You already went to the state. And we had this conversation before, maybe two months ago, where we asked you that before you, you request for waivers from the state, at least let us know. That way we could have some input. Not permission, input.
But this is, it's going on at the same time.
Council President?
None of those have been approved by the state. That's what we were showing, telling you, what we were gonna be presenting. That's what we were giving to them. It's, we were doing it the same process. We were trying to, to exactly-
So going forward, Madam BA, to fix this going forward, second time, third time that we have said this already, before you go get some waivers for new positions that never existed before, we have a conversation. Those were not discussing budget hearing, Madam BA.
That's right. That's why we came to Personnel. That's why the CFO was here.
The position was posted already. Madam BA, the position was posted.
It was not posted at that time. It was not.
It was not?
No.
Okay.
We were, we were in the waiver process.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna finish the agenda. Um, number 35 and 36, Madam Clerk. Put those on regular, actually, those are first reading ordinances.
33. What is the pledge of the council with 33?
No, no, 33, no, 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 no.
Well, I only-
I need, I ask for a legal opinion. This cannot go on regular.
That's not regular. It's a first reading ordinance. So either we put it for first reading or we remove it.
We're talking about 33, 33, 33.
Holy craps.
33, I mean, if, if, if Corporation Counsel tells me that he still needs to review this for the legality of it, I'm, I'm not touching it. I'm not. So that doesn't get on the agenda.
Okay, so we take it off?
Okay, so Council President, 30, 30.
So Mike, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm Council President. I doesn't act on anything without asking for him to review it and give me the green light. I don't act on anything. Since I've been here three years, I understand. He haven't, he haven't given it. Um, Corporation Counsel, have you given me a green light on this item on number 33?
I, I have not.
Regarding the legality?
I have not.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, that doesn't get on the regular agenda. It gets pulled.
I'm taking it off. Thank you.
Yeah. 35 and 36.
Sure. Council President, 35 and 36. We've, we've been working on the DPW Committee with, along with Corporation Counsel and the, uh, and the Director, and I, I'm very sure that we, we all agree on this, and we try, we, we want to increase the, the penalty for people that are coming into our city, uh, and dump garbage in our community and all kind of debris, um, setting a minimum of $2,500 and a maximum of $10,000. This is really gonna stop a lot of the people that are coming outside from Patterson, that are coming into dumping garbage in our community. And I definitely look to see this on first reading on the next regular meeting.
Uh, thank you, um-
Don't you have the whole, I saw the beautiful tag that the change?
So we put the, we move it forward. First reading.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Legal would provide us with the, um, the corrected version? Can we just have a draft?
Yeah, I mean, this is, uh, this has gone through our review, and I've spoken with Councilman Mendez about it. I even attended, I think, the DPW meeting just to pop in, say hello, and answer any questions on that. So, um, Madam Clerk, if you want to send me an email, I'll have, uh, the attorney that worked on this clean it up and submit it.
And have it ready for this, for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Sure. If there's all, all the other item on the agenda, motion to adjourn, uh, Council President. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. President? Roll call to close the workshop session of May 4th, 2021. Councilwoman May 5th?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just have a couple, um, things that I need to announce, but I, I want to ask the Bureau, Corporation Counsel, again, about what I said about affordable housing for new developments coming in, in here and, um, setting aside a certain amount, a percentage of the, of the units. The next item is, um, um, oh, for the summer camp, it's not summer camp, but, um, it's a camp given by the Patterson Police Community Policing. Uh, it's called Anti-Violence After School Program. Uh, it's at School 28, and it's from 3:00 to 7:00. Uh, starting, it started this week and go all the way to June 10th, but it's, it's at School 28, and then the next school is at the Full Service Community School, which is on Market Street, on the corner of Madison and Market Street. So please, the age that they're looking for, for School 28 is 11 through 18. The next age is, um, for Full Service, Full, Full Service Community School is age 13 to 18. So if you haven't, uh, um, signed your children up, please do sign them up for this. I also want to say too that, um-
That passed.
Huh?
That didn't, that didn't happen.
They didn't do it?
That one didn't happen.
Were they not, they're not starting it?
Council Counselors?
I'm sorry, no, I want her to-
No, this is, um, Teen Mom and Teen Pregnancy Program, so.
Right, right. It's, it's in co, in conjunction with the Patterson Police Department, but they didn't, they were not able to do it.
This one?
That one you have in your hand.
This is Teen Pregnancy, right.
That's correct. It's sponsored by the Police Department.
That's a shame that, you know, it was, but it was really gonna be at the Lighthouse in Hawthorne. I don't know how many people- I went there. It was, yeah.
Councilmember, what, what? Listen, this is being televised.
I know.
You have the floor, and we having a back and forth conversation?
Yeah. She said it didn't start it. So, but this program did start. Um, the After School Program for the kids did start, May 3rd, to school, at School 28, uh, and at the Full Service Community School. So please, if you can, take them there. Also, I just want to say that, um, and I said to, um, Corporation Counsel, um, some of the things that I'm looking for, and also I'm asking again about the Health Department, Health and Human Services, to start with that rent leveling, um, because there's so many things that needs to be changed there. We have, I have asked over and over and over to, 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 to get that done. I see that we have a, a memo, uh, from the BA, um, about streets to be paved. So I'll make sure I give you that list, um, that I have. And also, I would just like to say to, to everyone, um, and everyone who participated with me this weekend with my fish fry. Um, it was very good. The fundraiser for me, and I want to thank my council, council colleague here. Councilwoman Davila came, um, Councilwoman Mims came, um, the mayor came. Uh, and it was just a, um, a little bit of support, um, for me. I just want to say also too that this coming Sunday is Mother's Day. Um, and I want to wish all of you out there a happy, happy Mother's Day. And I just want to say to the community that, um, you must do your best to stay safe. And there's, there's a lot of things that's going on around us, and, um, just be more mindful. Even with our children, uh, I find that, um, a lot of them, a lot of our children are still, you know, doing virtual learning, and it's getting very, very difficult for them. Uh, and I can say that because my daughter's a schoolteacher, and I hear her on the phone with the parents and with the children, uh, with this virtual learning. So please, whatever you can do, um, out there, please do. Next Saturday, the 15th, we're gonna have a event at Montgomery Park. Wrigley Park is called Women Empowerment, um, Career Day. Uh, we're gonna have so many different activities, so please. You coming in? And so please come out. With that being said, Madam BA, Madam Clerk, our Secretary Sophia, our Chief of Staff, Della Fisher, my Councilwoman, Marissa Davila, I want to wish you all a happy Mother's Day coming up this time of year. God bless you on TV land. Have a good night. God bless you.
Your vote, Councilwoman? Did you say your vote is yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even say, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Uh, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, and so, before I, I vote, uh, welcome back, Council President. I see you got a nice little town going on. All right, to my colleagues, um, you know, I, I sometimes become really passionate on things that I believe on, and so, uh, I want to excuse the fact that, you know, I took the opportunity, although not in the, in the commit, in the agenda, to discuss this because it was, it was really, really bothering me. I felt that a disrespect to a council person is a disrespect to the body as a whole. And I think that, you know, that is something that, um, needs to be considered. And I agree with Council President, you want us to work. The administration wants us to work with you, then you also have to work with us. Um, to all the mothers out there, um, I wish you the best Mother's Day. Um, Mother's Day no longer is, um, as special as it used to be when my mother was alive. Um, but I know she's in heaven and no longer suffering. And to my sisters, thank you for all the support. Uh, to Jeanette and Myra, I've, I've, I don't know why, but it's been the last month or so that I've been saying, "I don't know what I would do without you." Um, to my best friends, to Commissioner Martinez, Dr. Baral, Karen, um, you know, great mothers out there. To all the ladies, you know, in my life that have impacted one way or another. Um, I appreciate you, and, um, I wish you the best. To my son, who I wish, uh, would be looking at these meetings so he can understand the reason why I come home late. He will call and say, "Why are you not home yet?" Uh-huh. Anyway, but with that said, just, just thank you so much. Um, good night, Patterson. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I was just gonna vote a quick yes and keep it moving, but, um, Councilwoman Davila said something that made me, uh, realize that I may need to say a few words, so. Because, Councilwoman, I can't remember a time since this administration has come in when I have not been disrespected. The BA chose to, her initial, uh, attack was to write a letter to the editor. I guess because I was a graduate of an HBCU. Maybe it was thought that I was unable to take, you know, take pen to paper as well as others. And once that, once that rebuttal came out, there was never another response in that manner. But I have been disrespected consistently, and then, and the only thing that I've done has been a starch advocate, was right for the, for our community. So when the first hire of this, this administration was a non-credentialed, non-resident, which is illegal, by the way, and, um, Corporation Counsel, I'm gonna find the legislation that talks about that anytime, uh, this administration makes a hire, it's a non-resident, that a resident of the city and/or anyone can actually file a lawsuit against the municipality. So we'll address that later. But when a non-resident was hired over a 25-year tenured, uh, resident- But when a non-resident was hired over a 25-year tenured resident who worked for the city for 25 years, who was not only credentialed, who had a college degree in architectural design engineering, who held the position of, or held the credentials of zoning, zoning officer, planner, he, he was a certified zoning officer, certified planner, and we hired someone outside of that spectrum, I received that, that backlash. When I advocated totally for the staff in the clerk's office to receive their just due, $10,000 increase, when I advocated for various members of this, or employees of this administration. I do what I do because I'm, I tasked myself to be here to make sure that the residents and the employees, primarily the residents, aren't mistreated. And I challenged anyone, the BA, the mayor, fellow councilmembers. You know, I've heard there be, there was some comments of some impropriety. You know, even this whole hoax of a witch hunt for, from the, the Attorney General's Office. I carried one ballot. I can list thousands of potential illegal activities that have taken place, but the carrying of one ballot is being spotlighted. So with that being said, Councilwoman Davila, you know, if it's, if it's the sentiment that when one councilperson is disrespected, that the body is disrespected, I'm asking you, my council colleagues, then where have you been? Where have you, where do you stand when your colleague has been consistently disrespected? You know, I don't, I'm not included in any of the fanfare, maybe because I'm not in agreement. But from the perspective of doing the right thing for the public, it shouldn't be who's wrong, who's right. It should be, you know, a concerted effort to bring more clarity to a person, to get them to, to see, see things in your, in your, in your way, your light, anyway. Madam Clerk, I appreciate the opportunity. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. And before my vote, I would like to just take this time again to thanks all the Third War residents for participating in our town hall meeting yesterday. Last night, it was a great meeting. Also, we have all the residents out of the Third War that also were participating. We have, we have a very good discussion in, in terms of public safety. The condition was going on with Eastside Park. You know, I'm looking forward to have that meeting with the director, with the DPW, the director, to bring control into the Eastside Park and make sure that we get the job done on that area. There was a lot of discussion also in terms of recycling and the lack of service that our residents, not only the Third War, are receiving from this administration. And I think that definitely we have to stop, you know, bringing excuses when we, as a taxpayer, are paying for services. And that's the reason why, Madam BA, I recommend, you know, us to move into this idea of a staffing agency for, you know, those moment where we need those five, six employees. That's something regular in the market right now, and many of the company are using that. And I'm very sure there are municipalities there that are using that. So I want, I want you to please look into that and start implementing those, changing to stop bringing those excuses that we don't have the staff, that we don't have the personnel. The DPW, the Recycling Department have all the resources they need to, you know, perform and provide those services to our community, and it's not happening. And I'm putting this recommendation on the table, and I hope that the administration take this into consideration. Also, to all our, my team leaders at the Third War, I really want to thank you all for the great support and, and the job we, you know, we have in a team leader in every district to bring back, you know, our Neighborhood Watch group in every block. I think that we have as a community, you know, we have our side, our part of responsibility to, you know, control our community. And the voice is in, the power is in the people. And we need to speak up, we need to come together, and we need to demand the better services in our community. You know, we spoke about all the public safety issues that we facing. So I'm looking forward to have that, those meetings. I'm looking forward to have our cleanup campaign. We'll start on Park Avenue, Breland Avenue, East 30th. So we're gonna continue through all the different park around. So let's get ready. We need, definitely need to educate our community, but we need to speak up our voice. We pay taxes in this city, and we demand, and we deserve better services. So with that being said, Council President, you know, I definitely, I was in a rush to finish this meeting because it was only two item on the agenda, but I just want to let you know, you know how I feel about the hiring process of this administration. And I'm being, I'm gonna be very open. Just don't count on me for that vote to support a budget. The hiring process that I see, you know, in this administration is something, is so questionable. And, and, and communication, working in collaboration is key for us to move the city forward. But this council, I think when the administration have to go in front of the state before this governing body, I see that as a problem. And, and, and I'm definitely gonna, gonna continue, you know, making my recommendation, hoping that we find solution to the problem that affecting our community, because I'm just here to serve the resident of the city of Patterson. With that being said, last but not least, to all the women in the room, Happy Mother's Day. I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Councilman.
And Madam Clerk, please take the day off tomorrow, just kidding.
Oh, thank you.
So my vote is yes. Good evening, Patterson.
Thank you. Mr. President, your vote.
So wow, it's pretty late today. Normally, I could have complained and said, look, I just got back from vacation and, and look what, you know, waiting for me. But at least we got some things done that we've been asking for, for a while. I'm feeling good about it. Tired, but feeling great. Sometimes we just have outcry. We want to, we want to move the cities forward, and we want to work together. And it's just a shame that we spend so much time and effort basically asking for things that we shouldn't be fighting for. I watched many council meetings for many years, and I didn't see what goes on here from both sides, from both sides. I'm not gonna say it's just from one side. And we, we need to respect one another, not just among the council, but it needs to go both ways. I always want to put myself in other people's shoes, and, you know, we shouldn't. People don't have to take our views either. But sometimes we get to the point that we don't know what else to do. I'm not suggesting that it's justifiable, what goes, what goes on. But I think in the interest of working together, you know, a courtesy conversation goes a long way. He's not asking for permission, just a courtesy. Listen, we're planning to do this. If one of us don't agree, go to sit down. A lot of times, just, it's just the demeanor. Those, those, and let me just say this last thing. Those who have dealt with me a long time, and you laughing, Councilwoman, because you know me, a lot of times you tell me, let's do this, and I'll be like, no, we're not doing it. And you give me my space, then I go to you, I say, you know what, let's do it. But the minute, if you give me an attitude, you know I'm not doing it. So you gotta understand personalities, right? I learned that when I was on the board event. Councilman, Commissioner Irvin at the time, he learned how to deal with all the personalities. That's why he was great, you know, a good president at the time. He learned how to, you know, deal with different personalities. And my recommendation is, you know, we all gotta learn to deal with different personalities. And, and he's not personal. So with that being said, yes, I was on vacation. I have a tan, but it's not from the beach or the pool. Last four times that I've been to Dominican Republic, I have brought back my swimming trunks, brand new. I did not get a chance to go out to the beach or to the pool. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is five in favor, four absent. Workshop session of May 4th, 2021 is hereby closed. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.